Live from Burbank, the media capital of the world.
To participate in the general public comment period, please call now at 818-238-3335. For any scheduled public hearings, please call when prompted to speak if you want the comment to be part of the record. Speaking times will be determined by the total number of public comment cards and callers in the queue at the start of each public comment period. For one to 20 total speakers, each speaker will receive up to three minutes. For 21 to 39 total speakers, each speaker will receive up to two minutes. And for 40-plus total speakers, each speaker will receive up to one minute. No additional comment cards or calls will be accepted once the public comment period begins.
Good evening and welcome to a joint meeting of the Burbank City Council and the Housing Authority on Tuesday, January 14, 2025. Welcome to our first meeting of 2025, everybody. All right. Please join me for a moment of reflection, and this moment is intended to begin our meeting with a positive and collective support for our beloved community. The City Council welcomes everyone joining us this evening. We encourage you to take a moment to reflect on our community and the work we will be doing tonight. Although each of us has our own unique reasons for being here, we're united in our passion for our wonderful city. As we pause, let us consider our individual contributions and what they mean to those around us. Let us find solace in knowing that by working together with a shared spirit of community and partnership, we will always act responsibly for the betterment of our community. And in addition to that this evening, I would like to request a moment of silence for all of those who have been affected by our tragic wildfires across Los Angeles County. We in Burbank are incredibly fortunate, however, we're deeply saddened and extend our support to our neighboring cities who face devastation. We mourn alongside the rest of LA County for all those who have lost their lives in this tragedy. And our hearts go out to those who have lost their precious homes and have been displaced. The magnitude of devastation is truly heartbreaking. And on a note of hope, I want to thank all the good Samaritans, our neighbors, friends, and volunteers who have sprung into action seeking to support one another during this time. And finally, I would be remiss if we didn't extend our deepest gratitude to our first responders in Burbank and beyond, who are ensuring our community recovers from the windstorms and who are also lending a hand fighting the Palisades and Eaton fires and keeping our neighbors safe. So let's take a moment to think about all of them today. Thank you, everybody. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Madam City Clerk, please conduct the roll.
Councilmember Anthony?
Here.
Councilmember Mullins?
Here.
Councilmember Rosati?
I'm here.
Vice Mayor Takahashi?
Here.
Ed Baer Perez?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, everyone. Tonight, there will be five periods of public comment. Members of the public may comment in person or by phone during the general public comment period and must submit cards or call before the comment period begins. Our first comment period is for general public comment on any matter concerning our city business or any agenda item. If you're here in person and wish to speak during the general public comment, you should have submitted your yellow public comment card to address the council. If you haven't done so, do so now. If you would like to participate in the general public comment over the phone, call now at 818-238-3335. That's 818-238-3335. Callers will be placed in a queue until the public comment period begins, at which time no additional calls will be taken. Additional comment periods will be available following the reports to council this evening, and we have two lovely interpreters here in the front row who have offered their services tonight. They are speaking Spanish and Armenian. If you need help, please seek them out now. And if I don't hear anything by the time public comment begins, then I will let them go home. Thank you both for being here tonight. Now, we have five announcements this evening.
Following our announcements for January 14, 2025. For the latest weather-related updates and resources, visit burbankca.gov/redflagupdates. To stay even more prepared, sign up for the city's emergency response system, Alert Burbank, at readyburbank.org, and receive timely notifications in the event of an emergency and critical information. Stay safe, Burbank. The 2025 homeless count has been postponed until further notice due to the ongoing wildfire emergencies in Southern California. More information, including new dates, will be shared as soon as possible. For questions, contact the Burbank homeless team at 818-238-5182. The Safer Streets Burbank Community Workshop scheduled for January 16 has been postponed. A new date will be announced and communicated shortly. Join us for the City Council's special goal-setting meeting on Thursday, January 23, 2025, in the Community Services Building from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. The goal-setting process helps the council shape a vision for the future by exploring community challenges and opportunities, defining strategic direction, and setting clear priorities. Find full meeting details on the city's website. In light of the recent wildfire events, it's important to take proactive steps to make your home more resilient during fire emergencies. Homeowners looking to retrofit their homes against wildfires can visit the city website for a list of low-cost ways to better protect their homes during a fire emergency. Additionally, the Building and Safety Division is temporarily allowing homeowners to complete the listed fire retrofit work to harden their homes against wildfires prior to permit issuance. Visit the city website for additional details. The Burbank Fire Department is at capacity and cannot accept any more donations at this time. If interested in donating goods or volunteering, check out the city's website at burbankca.gov/redflagupdates for a list of ways that you can help. This concludes the announcements for this evening.
All right. Now, normally, we would move on to council presentations on the agenda. And while we have several council presentations that are fun and exciting, out of respect and due to the ongoing wildfires and devastation taking place in our nearby communities, these presentations have been postponed to a later date, and we hope to have the folks who are normally here for those, including a presentation on our Rosefloat, join us because we know many of them have been affected and are coming from outside communities. So we appreciate your understanding and thank you all for joining us as we navigate this challenging time. Now, Mr. City Manager, do you have anything to report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I do. I'd like to call up our Fire Chief, Danny Alvarez, along with our General Manager of our utility, Mondip Samra, to provide updates on the LA wildfires and as they relate to the city of Burbank.
Thank you. Chief Alvarez, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Perez, Vice Mayor Takahashi, Council, Danny Alvarez, Fire Chief. Last Tuesday, January 7, the Los Angeles region experienced a significant wind event that affected Burbank and the surrounding communities. This historic event has resulted in devastating losses across the region. While Burbank has fared relatively well, we acknowledge the tremendous losses that many people have directly or indirectly experienced due to the tragic windstorm and fires of the past week. We also recognize the impact these events have had on Burbank residents, businesses, and city staff. I'm here tonight to brief council on what took place during the wind event and provide a status update on where we're at right now. Beginning last Tuesday morning, the Fire Department began implementing up-staffing procedures in anticipation of the wind event by adding a patrol, which was utilized as a rapid-response unit, and a fourth firefighter to Engines 15 and 16, and we also placed a seventh engine in service. This up-staffing proved to be essential, as the Fire Department responded to 181 calls for service in the 24-hour period from Tuesday morning at 9:00 a.m. to Wednesday morning at 9:00 a.m. And for perspective, in a 24-hour period, we usually average 32 calls during that period. The challenge of this significant increase in call volume was further compounded by the fact that the department's dispatch center, Verdugo Fire Communications, went into emergency dispatch mode, at which point individual agencies, including the Burbank Fire Department, assumed dispatch responsibilities for their own units. As the city continued to experience more wind-related calls for service, the decision was made to activate our Emergency Operations Center with members from Fire, Burbank Water and Power, Public Works, Parks, Burbank PD, and the City Manager all present. Activating the Emergency Operations Center was a pivotal moment in our ability to respond effectively to this very dynamic event. The collaboration and coordination at the Emergency Operations Center allowed us to quickly triage and prioritize how we deployed resources throughout the city, which reduced reflex time for interdepartmental assistance and ensured the most efficient and effective use of city resources. In addition to our efforts in the city of Burbank, the Fire Department has provided assistance to the Eaton Fire and the Palisades Fire, as well as supporting a pre-positioned strike team for the region for the current red flag warning that we're in, all while still maintaining full staffing in the city of Burbank. And I'd just like to take a moment to acknowledge and share my heartfelt gratitude and appreciation for our staff's willingness to step up and meet the moment when they have been needed, not only in Burbank, but throughout the region. Many of our firefighters have worked several days in a row and worked through exhaustion and high stress, doing so without question or without complaint, to ensure that our city is protected and to ensure that we can provide regional support to our neighboring communities. Additionally, our administrative staff have worked diligently to keep the community informed through our social media and have fielded hundreds of calls from the public over the last week answering questions from concerned citizens. And I'll just say that that all hands-on deck and that tremendous work that's been done by city staff extends far beyond the Fire Department. It's truly been a citywide effort of people doing some remarkable work under extenuating in difficult circumstances. As far as our current status, we're currently in another red flag warning due to winds and low humidity. We anticipate the red flag warning lasting until at least 6:00 p.m. tomorrow for the city of Burbank. We are closely monitoring the weather and will augment our staffing as the situation requires. I would like to take this opportunity to remind everyone, if you haven't already done so, to sign up for Alert Burbank, which is our emergency notification system. Please register to ensure you receive all pertinent notifications from the city of Burbank. You can visit our city website or the Fire Department website to sign up. Over the last week, we have seen the tremendous generosity of our community, as we've received several donations from the public for fire victims and first responders. We have been delivering most of those donations to the Santa Anita Race Track, where an aid center for fire victims was established. However, as you saw in the earlier announcement, at this time, we are at capacity and can no longer accept donations. We encourage anyone looking to make a donation, they can visit our website, where we'll continue to update those donation locations, or they can visit the city of Pasadena's website at www.cityofpasadena.net/eteenfire, where they have a fillable donation form for those that are interested, and that'll help facilitate the donations and ensure that they get to the right places. We'll also continue to update any locations accepting donations that we become aware of on our website and on social media. There are currently, and I'd just like to wrap up by sharing that there are currently no evacuation orders or warnings for the city of Burbank. There have not been over the last week. However, should the need arise, we will communicate that information via Alert Burbank as well as on social media. That's the end of my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Colleagues, if you have any brief questions? Councilwoman Rosati?
Thank you, Chief. I just want to say how proud I am of all of our departments and the work that you guys have done. Through the process, we were getting updates regularly, and I know many people worked throughout the night, so I just want to say thank you. There are a couple of questions that come to me over and over, and one of them was, our fire hydrants, are they able to pump water out of our fire hydrants? And the other question was, do we have an evacuation process for the hillside?
Yeah. As far as the water, the hydrants, I'll pass it on to Burbank Water and Power. As far as evacuation, so any evacuation situation is going to be incident-driven, and so we will communicate that via social media as well as Alert Burbank. So we don't have a specific evacuation plan. However, we have evacuated residents along the hillside on various occasions due to wildfires in that area. And the reason why we don't put a specific plan and say this is what it'll look like every single time is because these are dynamic incidents, and it depends on the type of incident, location, where we're going to be accessing fire apparatus and responding vehicles, as compared to where we want people to exit through. So that's a very dynamic situation that is incident-driven and very specific to that incident. Yes, sir.
Councilwoman Mullins?
Well, first of all, really, I'm speechless of everything that you have done, you and your team. And I do really my sincerest appreciation for all city staff. I know you mentioned it was a team effort. This is everybody from Parks and Recreation, Public Works, Water and Power, Fire, Police, the entire organization. I mean, without all of you, but of course, the leadership of putting out our fires and being out there and watching our hills, very much appreciated. Every positive feedback was given to our city staff, to everything that was done immediately in the city, and everybody got together to protect our beautiful city. So thank you, thank you, thank you. Couldn't say it enough. And I will be asking for some things at the end of the meeting, as far as updates, reports, and a lot of the questions that the community asks, and so I'll be asking for additional agenda items at the end of this meeting. But I wanted to tell you thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Any other questions for the chief? Councilwoman Anthony?
I just thank you for mentioning the Emergency Operational Center and activating that. I wanted to give just a shout out to our city manager for captaining this ship the last week. I heard you stayed here overnight Tuesday, up all night.
It was just another usual Tuesday night. I've been trained well.
Well, thank you. Thank you for doing that. And I know your family's been personally affected. I'm glad to know that they're safe now. But thank you for taking care of all of these people, 105,000 folks. We appreciate you.
Councilwoman Takahashi? Vice Mayor Takahashi?
It's like 2025. Takes a while to remember to write that, remember. Yes. 181 calls in 24 hours, and that is such a heroic, not to belabor the word, but heroic feat, and so appreciative to everyone who was willing to give their time and energy and continues to do so in your department. And then you as the leader of all that and keeping everybody's morale up and keeping everything coordinated, and also the coordination with all the other departments. And as you mentioned, that this is a team effort and the coordination with the other cities, too. I think a lot of the times, these processes happen so fast behind the scenes that we, as a community members, are not aware of just how much is happening. So I appreciate you kind of lining up a little bit more detail of what has happened so the community can hear what was going on, and that you really have a clear, solid plan on what to do immediately when an emergency happens and working together. So thank you for that and for everything that you're, I mean, not just that, but everything that you and your department do for our community. I'm so proud. I personally think we have the best fire department, just in the whole area.
Thank you.
One more question, Chief Alvarez. We have been getting some questions from our community. We are so grateful we're not impacted by one of the fires, but we are in the valley, in basin, getting all the smoke and debris and everything from our neighbors. Have there been any recommendations about air quality and ways to protect ourselves?
Yeah, I would refer them to AQMD. They're the subject matter experts in that space, so they can go to the AQMD website and see what the air ratings are and probably get some recommendations, but that would be their best resource.
Thank you, Chief. And it goes without saying, thank you for everything that you all have done. And I have a special shout out for Eric Baumgartner, our Emergency Management Administrator. Thank you for everything, the tireless updates, morning, night, noon, and for keeping, you are the most calm, collected person I have seen out there. Thank you for everything you do, and I just, a big shout out to you personally and to all of our staff. Thank you.
I feel like I'm in the Oscar and I forgot to mention one department that really helped put out the information faster than we can ever imagine, RPIO Office, Jonathan, thank you, and Mary, and the whole team. So I know, I don't want it's just specific names, but definitely people got the information faster than, you know, we expected. So thank you for doing that.
All right. Thank you, Chief Alvarez. Welcome, Ms. Samra, our Director of Water and Power.
Good evening, Mondip Samra, General Manager of Burbank Water and Power. I'm going to give a brief update on the windstorms and how they impacted BWP. Before I go into the details, I do want to thank all the frontline workers, police, fire, electric crews, our water crews, our security guards, everyone that came together to really remedy and fix a lot of the issues that we saw with this windstorm. And one of the priorities at BWP as well as the city is to provide safety to our residents and to our customers. So how we address a lot of these issues is we react in a proactive approach, looking at safety, turning on power when we can, when it's safe to do so, and continuing to provide safe and reliable power and water to our customers. So I'm going to start with giving a brief update on the electric side, and as I do that, I'm also going to show some slides. So on the electric side, I think a lot of us saw some of the poles that were broken. There are four poles that broke here in the city of Burbank. We have 11,000, over 11,000 poles in the city. We do replace about 250 annually, but these four poles broke as a result of the windstorm. They were replaced, all of them, by Sunday. That is quick action of our electric crews. We do have a 24/7 electric crew. They were there. We did have additional staffing on site to prepare for the winds, too, so they could react very quickly to the incidents. Overall, just like fire, we got a lot of calls. Since last Tuesday, we had 998 calls on 311. That's just 311 and reporting incidents. As of today, all but 28 have been resolved. That is people working 24/7, making sure that power gets on, issues are resolved. So I did want to highlight that. I do want to now take some time to show the video and just some slides of some of the work that the electric crew worked on. So this is one of the poles that broke. You had a bucket truck holding it up. That is quick thinking from the side of our electric crew. Here are some of the other things with the electric crew going out and fixing some of the poles and on the hillside. And here's a video of the winds, and you can see how quickly things fall and land on the power lines. This is kind of the destructive weather that our crews had to work in, and this is part of their job. They had to work in that weather and resolve the issue there. On the security side, I do want to also mention that we have 24/7 security at BWP, so when calls don't go to 311, sometimes they go directly to BWP. We did have several hundred inquiries that were separate from 311 going in to our security office as well, and they alerted BWP staff immediately to resolve those issues. And on the Energy Control Center, we had, just to talk about some outages, we had over 17,000 outages throughout the city. That represents about 32% of our customers. Luckily, most of those were resolved within 24 hours, and the bulk of the outages happened Tuesday night and Wednesday morning. They were mostly resolved by the next day. A few lingering outages occurred during the wind areas where we couldn't reach some of the customers because it was too windy to resolve those, but as of today, most of them have been resolved. Also, a reminder, if anyone does have any power outages or to report any outages, the best way to do so is to call 818-238-3778. I did post two videos on LinkedIn and some on Instagram to kind of post how to do this as well. On the power plant side, we did not lose any service to Magnolia Power Project. It stayed online and continued to provide reliable power to Burbank customers. And I know a lot of questions have been asked about the water system, so I'm going to address that right now. For the water system, I do want to highlight that during this recent windstorm, the water in Burbank continues to be safe to drink and does not need to be boiled. We never had any issues with our water during this windstorm. There's been a lot of discussion on fire hydrants, water pressure, and ability to fight fires. So I'm going to just repeat what a lot of water utilities have put out there. One of the basic functions of a public water system is to provide fire protection, and the purpose is to protect lives and structures. However, it is important to understand that public water systems are not designed to fight wildfires. So the fires that we saw in the Palisades and Eaton Canyon, that's a wildfire. Our hydrants are really for large structures, one or two structures and a couple of homes. The water pressure is not there to fight a wildfire. That's why you have the airplanes that come in with the water tanks to fight those fires. However, in rare circumstances, we can't use our reservoirs, so the fire truck can go up there, get a hose, and use our reservoir to fight a fire if they need to, but that is in very rare circumstances. That did happen fairly recently, but that is not common practice. And I think, just want to also add that with BWP, we do have a very resilient team. They work 24/7. I was out there. I saw the team, you know, working 20-hour days, 18-hour days, really working hard to restore power to customers and also to maintain quality water for our customers. And just lastly, as Mayor had mentioned, too, our thoughts are with our neighbors and the fires, and we really hope that things get resolved quickly. Any questions?
Vice Mayor Takahashi?
Thank you so much for that update. Yeah, a lot of questions in the community about water, and seeing the other communities going through what they're going through and wondering if it's going to happen here. So I think folks are curious, like, if it does come to a point where the water is not drinkable or we need to boil it, how would we know? How would the community know? And what do they look for for that alert so that they, when there's no information, it's hard to know what to do? So how do they know when it's time?
Well, you know, I could provide, we do provide the alerts, and we do provide, we'll be on our email, we have an email alert system. We'll send out emails to our customers as well, those that are registered. We'll post it on our website. We will advertise it every which way that we can. That is going to be the best way, and also through media. A lot of this happened through the news, so that's probably what we would do. But one of the things that we did in reaction to LA County, the LA County order that was for LADWP, and then also the Pasadena order, was send out something to the public saying ours is safe to drink. We also posted it on our website as well.
Councilwoman Anthony?
I'm not sure if we've mentioned it or if we're going to mention it later. If residents want to sign up to get on the email list and the alerts and all that stuff, can they do that through the MyBurbank311 app or the website? Like, how would, if someone wants to sign up so that if they're getting texts from the county about a different region that isn't Burbank and they're getting confused?
You know, I will follow up on that because I'm not quite sure. So maybe Jonathan knows.
Because there was a little bit of confusing information sent out by not us.
That is correct, Councilmember. Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, members of the council, Jonathan Jones, Public Information Office, readyburbank.org. You can sign up for our emergency. You can sign up for our emergency alert system, readyburbank.org. And coming soon to the 311 app, you'll be able to click right there and it'll take you to our alert signups. That's great. You can also sign up for our email notification system on the city website, burbankca.gov. We have 15,000 subscribers there. That's been a great tool for us, getting stuff out there. Please follow us on social as well, @BurbankCA, @BurbankCA, excuse me.
Sorry, Mary?
Mary is our social media maestro. I think that answers the question, yeah?
There, there would be one more source I would suggest, which you all have done a fabulous job. If you have any questions about this, literally stemming from where you can donate to, if we have water supply, you can go to burbankca.gov/redflagupdates. PIO has put a dedicated resource there of all the things you could possibly ask.
Everything that we know about what's going on is on there. So please, burbankca.gov, go on there. It's the first thing you see. You cannot miss it. Red flag updates.
Thank you, Jonathan, and thank you again. These folks have also been up night and day, making sure we all have our updates.
It's our pleasure.
Any other questions?
I just, you know, we gave a lot of love to the chief, which he deserved, but I also want to give the same level of love to BWP because you, your team, you and your team have been out there since it started. And you showed the videos and the pictures, which I think were really important to see, but what we didn't see in those pictures were the people up, up there, like physically, and they were during the winds. And so they, you know, it's risky, that job, and so they put themselves at risk for the entire community and really appreciate that. So just wanted to do a quick roundup. I wanted to thank the fire department, the BWP, Police Department, Public Works, Parks and Rec, PIO, all the staff, city manager, assistant city manager, everybody worked together. And I just want to make sure that everybody gets the love they deserve and continues to get the appreciation. So thank you, Madam Mayor, for allowing me to say that.
Of course. And if you didn't think we were, now you know, we're incredibly grateful. We really are. And then really thank you all for shouting out our unsung heroes and folks who haven't, haven't really gotten the praise they deserve. I know you mentioned a quick list there, our Parks and Rec staff. We have a lot of arborists there. We have a lot of folks who are dealing with, with trees and folks often don't think that involves Parks and Rec. They were out there also all night, our frontline staff. So big shout out to everybody that was out there.
I just wanted to say, a lot of different folks out there who don't live in Burbank have reached out to me, have posted on social media about what's happening in other cities and other county areas. I just want to remind the public that for years, this council, the council prior to us, we have done the work to ensure our public facilities are safe, the, the updating of our power lines, the defensible space ordinances, the fire mitigation plans that we have, the things that we have done for years, for decades in this city. You may not think about it every single day, but when it happens and when you see how well we are able to respond, it's because it has done years of work to get to this point and we are the beneficiaries of that decades of hard work and changes to the city code and the way we run things here. And so I am, I am so very proud that our predecessors have left us with a safe city and it is now our responsibility to move forward and keep it safe.
Absolutely. And on that note, thank you to everybody involved. Thank you to everybody looking to volunteer and we will continue to update you on everything happening throughout the week. All right, moving on. Mr. City Attorney, will you please report on closed session?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of the City Council, and for the benefit of the public, the City Council met this afternoon at 4:00 PM to discuss one item of existing litigation pursuant to Government Code, Section 54956.9D1, in the matter of Caddick versus the City of Burbank, which is personal injury matter. The City Council took no reportable action this evening.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. And now is a time for general public comment. I'll be calling out the speaker's name as well as the person who is next in line to speak. In order to keep public comment moving in a timely fashion, we have the designated seat up here in the front. We've added a nice new cover in case you haven't noticed, and if you'd like to take a look, you can take a seat right there when you're up next. A timer is available on the podium and this is also the last call for anybody who needs an interpreter, or I will be releasing staff this evening. Seeing none, thank you both for being here and you're welcome to go home. Now, persons may choose to use the first period of public comment to address an agendized report, but will not be able to speak on that item following this segment. Please make sure to state your name for the record and correct me if I get your name wrong. The general public comment period is now beginning. No additional cards or calls will be accepted. Madam City Clerk, how many cards and callers do we have?
Madam Mayor, we have 13 in-person speakers and we have eight on the telephone.
Great. So that is 21. Thank you. Normally I get the whole number. You made me do math today. All right. So given that we have 21 speakers, we will be, wow, we are right on the cuff. Everybody will have two minutes to speak and share their, their concerns. And the time limit for, that's going to be two minutes. And so we will go ahead and begin. And when we have completed in-person comment, we'll move on to the calls. All right. Our first speaker is Ron Backs, followed by Jim Roy.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. I was going to go at a slightly lower pace, so I gave the cross. I was hoping for three minutes, so I'll have to rush some of this. At the December 17th, 2024 City Council meeting, I presented how if a person had 1.2 million to invest, they could put it in a bank savings account and earn $40,000 per month, or a rental property and earn $2,560 maximum. The analysis showed that a typical housing provider is providing a social need while foregoing more lucrative and easier to manage investment opportunities. Don't punish us for being charitable. True, established housing providers such as myself benefit from Proposition 13 restricting property taxes. However, I suspect the majority of them, like me, keep rents low as a for sharing of that, to retain tenants. No clear thinking housing provider would force out a good tenant. Restoring a property to rentable condition is very expensive and time consuming and stressful. My current costs to turn around one property are north of $67,000. Not counting lost rent, now it's six months. The increase in rent I anticipate will result in the recovery of the cost of turnover taking six and a half years. In reality, inflation reduces buying power, so it will take a lot longer to recover the total, the true cost. This discourages provoking a repeat, especially when history suggests the property will require turnover again within that time period, meaning this cost will not be fully reviewed. And I will be back on the 28th to go with episode three of this mini-series. And the other part, I have 20 seconds. The leaves on a normal time, I don't know there's a restriction with a number of green barrels you can put out, so imagine my surprise when I was dragging barrels across the street and I got the letter, the talk from the truck driver of not. I've got piles of leaves, wind blows the leaves into a corner.
Thank you, Mr. Backs.
I'm surprised the chief left.
We, we got the gist of the, the last part. Thank you, Mr. Backs. All right. Our next speaker is Jim Roy, followed by Eliza Diaz.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, thank you very much for allowing me to speak. I am here on behalf of State Senator Caroline Menjivar and just wanted to speak about a few of the things that are happening at a state level. First of all, Department of Motor Vehicles has waived all fees if someone has lost their ID, their registration to their car, anything that goes through DMV that you would need to have replaced, that they will charge you for, they are waiving those charges for now. Also, some things were brought up about, you know, as you had mentioned, Burbank, thank God, is very fortunate in the fact that there was not any direct damage done to the city of Burbank. However, FEMA is accepting any sort of, if a business lost revenue as a result of this fire tangentially because something happened in Pacific Palisades or Altadena, that claim can be made through them. So any business in Burbank that wants to do so, that feels that they have lost business that is not covered by insurance, they can make a FEMA claim. Some of the things that I would just like to offer up is that we have been compiling a, what we feel to be a very broad list of things that can help the community and all of our constituents throughout this, this crisis. So if anyone has any questions about different groups, please send them our way, or if you're unsure of anything, go ahead and send to, to our offices. We would be more than happy to, to help. One thing that did just come up during the meeting right now, the air quality issue. I was on a meeting with AQMD and, I'm sorry.
Thank you for your comment. We'll make sure to look out for the resources. I know Senator Caroline Menjivar has shared some, a lot of them on her website. Next, I have Eliza Diaz, followed by Ashley Ramsey.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Eliza Diaz. No, it's okay. I'm here just as a resident of Burbank, a longtime resident. I graduated from Burbank High School just a couple of blocks from here. My question specifically, or my concern specifically is for the housing authority. So I am concerned as a renter and hopefully one day a homeowner in Burbank, if I'm able to make that dream a reality. I'm concerned how all of the housing structures that were unfortunately burned during the tragic fires, how that will exacerbate the current existing housing crisis in Los Angeles. And I'm sure you're all already aware of all of the price gouging that has been, you know, readily seen online for rental prices, for housing. I'm sure it will affect insurance for properties and so that's mostly the concern that I wanted to bring up, to see if there are any measures that will be, you know, taken place or any plans to be able to address that so that we can hopefully just make that a priority for residents in Burbank currently and also any future residents of people who are displaced and may, you know, be looking for new homes. So that's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Ashley Ramsey, followed by Mark Scroggs.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Ashley Ramsey. I've been a Burbank resident for almost eight years now. And I first want to just thank all of our staff, the fire department, police department, BWP. Thank you so much. It's, I mean, I know you've been working nonstop. And I also want to thank council, especially Mayor Perez, for your consistent updates, your communication to our community. I know I'm very appreciative of having a very present leadership during this time. So thank you so much for, for all your updates. I have been encouraged by our community, by the greater LA community. We've all come together to really support our most vulnerable neighbors. And with that, unfortunately, we've also seen people taking advantage of displaced families. We've seen major price hikes in rental properties throughout Los Angeles, even right here in Burbank. And I, there was communication that was sent out about these illegal increases to our residents, so thank you for doing that. Many people have quite literally lost everything and they need rental protections. They don't need to think about where they're going to sleep. They need these protections now. And I really, I'm asking that City Council enact a rent freeze. I'm asking that City Council enact an emergency moratorium on no-fault evictions. We need to help our most vulnerable, vulnerable neighbors at this time and Burbank needs to be that city that says, hey, we're here to support you in your time of need and I hope that you will enact these things. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comment. Next, we have Mark Scroggs, followed by Dan Kay.
Good evening, everyone. Eight days ago, I started working on a plan after talking with Representative Mullins, the Vice Mayor, the Burbank Economic People and the Valley Economic People about brainstorming entertainment people on things we can do. Then everything happened. So we're, I'm going to bring that up later, but I just wanted to mention that. Last week and, and yesterday, my family and I were part of the many, many people who volunteered and donated our time here and elsewhere. A lot of the locations here gave their space. We were at the Gary Marshall Theater. I know that we were people who were dropping things off at all sorts of little, like the Jewish Federation, whatever. Yesterday, we tried to go to Santa Anita with a load that was rejected elsewhere because they were full and those people were frazzled and they need a, need a big thank you also. We ended up at Tequila's where we had lunch and it was very good, but they were taking stuff. So some people are taking new stuff. I recommend calling the place before you go there because people were just giving lists just to get people out of there. And, but people were very helpful. Along with that, and she just mentioned it a minute ago, you know, people here always talk about the weather, the mountains, the ocean, all that sort of stuff about being here. But really, it's about the people. You can see there's a lot of really good people here. A lot of people have been doing stuff that you never expected. And the, during the earthquakes in 94, there was a little bit, a lot of that, this is like a new level. You know, except for maybe the looters, the drone flyers, the price gougers. Those people are a whole different group. But this is a great tool for us is, you know, I know the Valley Economic People are going to talk about what to do to rebuild, but the people here, you know, we don't talk about that. You know, you'd want to keep business here and keep people here. A lot of people are going to move. I know that. I don't blame them. I saw a few people today on Facebook who I know who've lost everything, like screw it, we're leaving. So I just wanted to mention that. And also, is my old man on the yard yelling, oh, shoot. I was going to say, I'm going to say, pull over for emergency vehicles and be careful if you're smoking outside.
Thank you, Mr. Scroggs. That's your time. Next, we have Dan Kay, followed by Joe Pimienta.
Good evening, City Council, City Staff, and fellow Burbank residents. I want to start off by saying that my heart goes out to everyone affected by this terrible tragedy. Countless, countless families uprooted and people displaced and it, it's truly sad. But I also want to thank City Staff who have done an amazing job, everyone, Burbank Water and Power, Fire, Forestry Clearing the Trees. It's been really amazing to see, so thank you. I also want to thank City Council, specifically Mayor Perez. You've, you've been very active on social media, giving, giving us messages of optimism and also letting us know what's going on. Vice Mayor Takahashi, your public town, virtual town hall was, was really great to let the citizens of Burbank know what, what's going on. So I appreciate all of that. Thank you. We are already in a housing crisis, an affordable housing crisis. What's happened from these fires is over 10,000 structures have been destroyed, 150,000 people displaced. We're going to have tens of thousands of families looking for new housing and we're already in a dire situation. This is a situation ripe for price gouging, happening on a massive scale and it's already happening. I've included in the back of this packet that I've provided to you, it's 10 pages of, of over 500 occurrences of, of price gouging. And I printed this out last night and as of today, it's now at 900 confirmed cases and going up. Here's about 35 organizations, not just tenant unions, but Keep LA House, Public Council, Sage, along with many tenants' unions and many other organizations calling for an immediate rent freeze and eviction moratorium on all no-fault evictions and nonpayments of rent because we are in an emergency and I'm asking council to please take action.
Thank you for your comment. And thank you for sharing the packets. Our next speaker is Joe Pimienta, followed by Kevin Morris.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, Vice Mayor, everyone at staff and everybody present in the chamber. I do want to continue what, what the previous speaker was saying. I also want to acknowledge gratitude to not only everyone in the city who, who has been keeping us constantly updated, but also to all the people that have been volunteering in different organizations, all the, all the people that have been helping out those in dire need. I want to, they should also be recognized for the amazing work that they are doing because that is what good people do and that is what citizens do for each other. There really is no good segue, so I'm just going to run it, jump right into it. We do- We do urge City Council to please enact a rent freeze and an eviction moratorium as an emergency agenda item. Simply, this is an opportunity to protect vulnerable renters against the few bad actors that are taking advantage of the situation, who are trying to maximize profits by displacing current residents and raising the price of housing to an exponential, if not offensive, amount. So please take that into consideration, please put measures in place. You know that it will help, and as we all like to think of it, you can get in front of this, because as we have seen previously with rent evictions, these things will happen, and a lot of more people will get hurt, but it can be prevented if you take action immediately. Other than that, just as well, just once again, thank you for all your work, and just in case someone hasn't said it, Happy New Year.
Thank you, Happy New Year, Joe. Our next speaker is Kevin Morris, followed by Jared Cavagnolo.
Good evening, Mayor Perez, Vice Mayor Takahashi. I want to first echo the gratitude that you've both received. Mayor Perez, thank you for your social media updates, your optimism in sharing information to keep the community safe, I really appreciate that. Vice Mayor Takahashi, thank you as well for your virtual town hall, and just fielding questions and giving data and giving resources to the community. Thank you both. Alongside that gratitude, I also want to share it with the Burbank Fire Department, the Burbank Police Department, BWP, and all of our city services. Thank you. As you look ahead to next Tuesday's goal-setting meeting, I urge you to learn from this disaster, from these disastrous fires. We must realize that climate change is going to be a rising cost and toll on our community. I'm thankful that Burbank has been spared thus far, but we need to continue to bolster our community, make sure that we are strengthening against climate change. This year is 2025, and Burbank 2035 has its own general plan for air quality and climate change elements. This reminds us of the urgent need that we have in the next 10 years for greenhouse emissions to be reduced, improved urban heat, as well as bolstering disaster preparedness. But 10 years feels like it's too far. Climate change is quite immediate. So, I am pleased asking you, for next week's goal-setting meeting, to please take forth what previous Council has done in creating amazing goals for housing and sustainability, but please, with all goals, can you include something on climate resilience and change into the priorities that we have for the next year to set us up for 2025 and to meet our 2035 plans? Thank you again.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Jared Cavagnolo, followed by David Donahue.
Good evening, members of Council. The packet you're receiving right now is clear evidence of the aforementioned rental price gouging that's occurring in Burbank since the fires began. Multiple instances of rent increases in excess of 10%, which is illegal, and a few in which the rent was initially raised over that 10% figure just to be brought down slightly, in I guess a way that technically meets the letter of the law, if not the spirit of it, not to mention any sense of morality or charity during a time when so many people are being displaced and are in great need. As mentioned already by some previous commentators, this is a problem throughout the area. You've got 900 units on that spreadsheet that Dan mentioned. Many municipalities are already in the process of trying to address it through emergency no-fault eviction moratoria and rent freezes, and Burbank should be no exception. As Mayor Perez, you mentioned in your opening comment tonight, as Vice Mayor Takahashi stressed in the virtual town hall last week, this is a time for our community to come together the way our first responders and city staff have not only ensured the safety of our own residents, but assisted our neighboring communities, the way our restaurants and businesses are offering discounts to people affected by the fires, and the way our residents have engaged in just an outpouring of volunteering and donations. It's not a time for some landlords to profit from the desperation and misery of people who have lost their homes and had their lives upended. Rent freeze and no-fault eviction moratorium are necessary not just to prevent illegal rent increases, but also actions by property managers that could result in vulnerable Burbank residents being displaced in a state of emergency. I believe it was campaign materials from Mr. Rizzotti that I received last year stating that housing is a human right, and I'd hope that everyone here can agree with that sentiment. If so, please take action to ensure that it's more than just an ideal, but the actual reality our community faces. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is David Donahue, followed by Martin Perlmutter.
Good evening, Mayor Perez, Vice Mayor Takahashi, Councilmembers and Staff. My name is David Donahue, a Burbank resident and business owner. A lot of things have been said in appreciation to our first responders, and I definitely echo all of those. One of the things that I kind of inadvertently stumbled into was the amazing work being done at the Los Angeles Equestrian Center, our neighbors. Led by, what is it, the unofficial mayor of the Rancho, Liz Radley, and also with other volunteers by the name of Carla Jo Bailey, in coordination with the staff of the Los Angeles Equestrian Center have done some amazing work, and I want to share this with you. With this wildfire event, 365 horses had to be evacuated. 365 are located at the Equestrian Center today. Every morning, every midday, for lunch, every evening, 30 to 60 volunteers staffed that, their own time. Right now, we're trying to put together coordinators to help get food to them. 30 to 60 people every day, weekends, it's a lot bigger. We're also trying to prevent people just going there with carrots and apples, which out of the goodness of their heart they want to do, but it is the worst thing to do, because it's like chocolate, as Liz liked to say. It's like chocolate. You give a kid some chocolate, of course they're going to eat it, they're going to just stuff themselves, and that's what horses do, but people are actually going through the stalls. Well, have a carrot, you must need it, I'm here to help you. Don't. Support what Liz Radley is doing, support what the Los Angeles Equestrian Center is doing, and if we can do anything to help them, I would ask the city to help our neighbors. And so with that, thank you again to our first responders, to Council, to our city staff for all the great work during this emergency.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Martin Perlmutter, followed by Dustin Blankenship.
Council, Mayor, Vice Mayor, I have a couple of matters, I've been storing them up since Christmas. First, on the matter of housing for those who've been displaced by the fire, I need the Council's assistance, and Councilmember Rizzotti, I understand you can assist with this. I spoke to a senior member of Senator Schiff's office this evening, they're ready to propagate any information we can offer in the way of housing information about availability, and I've got to assume that between AVA and Avalon and other private homeowners, there's a lot of housing that's hanging around. So there are needy people, and there's a mechanism for getting this word out widely, let's collaborate on that. Second matter, these are not related, trees. We had some problems last year with trees, right, with the city getting litigated and so on. I feel like, and this is a Council issue, I feel like we're missing some mayonnaise, some glue to keep the pieces of tuna fish together. The people of the city, parks and recreation, we've had some, and sustainability, the Sustainability Commission, this hasn't worked out perfectly, right? So I'm thinking that maybe we could create, or at your wisdom, decide to create, some sort of body, some sort of Citizens Commission, that's charged with facilitating the communication between Parks and Rec, which is doing a strategic study this year of all the trees in the city, right, and they're fully funded for the year, and the people like Niagara Street, you know, Aleppo Pines, who get pissed off about, you know, decisions that are made about trees. I myself am disturbed about the plan to remove the big ficus trees on Magnolia. I understand there's trip and fall issues and litigation that could arise with that and so on, but I think it's a question for the Commonwealth, for all of us together, so Council could get involved in this game in some way to facilitate communications. Last item, 10 seconds. Nuclear war, I'm going to give this letter to City Clerk, this is from Ted Lieu and Ed Markey, and I think the City Council, although it's always a joke to talk about foreign policy for cities, we should take a position on nuclear war.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Dustin Blankenship, followed by Ally.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Councilmembers. I've lived my entire life in Southern California, and I've seen many wildfires in that time. What our area has been through this past week feels utterly unprecedented. More than 14,000 structures destroyed, thousands of them homes, 150,000 residents forced to evacuate, over 40,000 people have applied for immediate aid from FEMA. There are thousands of people looking for shelter right now, after their entire life has gone up in smoke, after their whole neighborhood disappeared, after everything they worked for and saved for and held dear was lost to the most devastating wildfire we have ever seen. And yet, in this time of tragedy, when we should be coming together, when we should be caring for each other, when we should be holding out our hand to help, we are instead seeing landlords in Burbank, as these fires are still burning, raise the prices on their units by hundreds of dollars. Burbank is not an isolated community, and we are already seeing the pressure on our stressed rental market. Thousands of displaced people are trying to find somewhere to live, and there are landlords in the city trying to profit on their loss. As we see the knock-on effect send prices skyward, I fear seeing landlords trying to force their existing tenants out for a share of that blood money. You must do something to protect the tenants of your community. I, along with others here tonight, are asking for an emergency rent freeze and eviction moratorium for our community while it recovers from these fires. We must put people over profits in this time of need. I also wanted to speak to anyone in the audience, or listening at home. IATSE Local 80 here in Burbank on Olive and Buena Vista has opened as a donation center. If you or anyone you know is in need, please come by the local and see what they have available. If you're looking for somewhere to donate, they are accepting donations, and if you just want to help out, please stop by and volunteer your time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. My last comment card is Ally.
I'm here as a five-year resident and member of the Burbank Tenants Union to call on our City Council to take action for tenants as soon as possible. As community members, our most urgent ask is for an immediate eviction moratorium and rent freeze in the city of Burbank. Even before the fires, we were dealing with an urgent housing crisis. This week, we have documented numerous examples of price gouging in Burbank from predatory landlords. Our communities are being exploited at their worst moments, and our City Council needs to respond accordingly. An eviction moratorium and rent freeze have been advocated for by tenants across the county. BTU was a signatory on a letter to keep LA housed, which I hope all of you have read. I want to add that because substantial tenant protections have not been passed in the city, Burbank is even more unprepared for a crisis at this scale. I urge our City Council to use this time to address the longer-term tenant issues immediately, including no-fault evictions, rental registry, and community stabilization to keep our neighbors housed. Tenants need safety nets to fall back on in case of disasters such as these. Implementing BTU's ordinance will create safety for renters. I would also like to ask our city about our relationship with the Tongva Tribal Council and government. Indigenous communities practice controlled burns on the land as a way of fire prevention. Going forward, indigenous land stewardship is necessary for the survival of our planet. If we haven't already, I want to urge our city officials to establish a working relationship with the Tongva people in order to protect the land. I am also speaking in favor of Mike Van Gorder's appointment to the Planning Commission. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Ms. Clark, do we have callers on the line?
We do, Madam Mayor.
All right, let's send them in.
The first caller is Elon Ruskin.
Hi, Elon, you're on with City Council, you have two minutes.
All right, hello, Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, Council, thanks for taking my call. Elon Ruskin here, I live actually just a few blocks away from the City Hall. First, I'd like to give a shout out to our Emergency Response Team, who I think did a really quite admirable job over the last week, and during the windstorm especially. Fires were contained, power attitudes were brief, the roads are navigable, nothing fell down. A lot of people worked very urgently to keep us all safe, you know, five stars, really. So it's my turn to rant about housing. The wildfires have left many people without homes, and they're going to be looking for new places to live during the years it will take to rebuild, and some of those people may want to come here. I say this a lot, but now, more urgently than ever, it is the time to do everything we can to allow new housing. Price gouging laws can ration the vacancies we have, but they can't make more space. People who've lost homes need new ones. So whatever permitting we can speed up, whatever approvals we can give, whatever costs we can limit, whatever obstruction we can skip, let's do that. If we don't create new vacancies, competition for the scarce existing ones will exclude so many people who want to live here. There's no shortage of people eager to build more homes and apartments in the city. Please let them. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
The next caller is James Ingram.
Hi, James, you're on with City Council, you have two minutes.
All right, City Council, congratulations to Chris Rizzotti on his election, and to Christine Anthony for his reelection. I wanted to say thanks again to our first responders for their amazing job that they've done lately. I wanted to bring up that Burbank offers an amazing CERT course, Community Emergency Response Team training. It's a FEMA program, it's administered through local fire departments, I encourage any members of the public to join. It's certainly not a replacement for our first responders, but it's a great introduction to emergency response, and it can offer a lot of peace of mind. I just wanted to also say that, you know, with the tragedies of all these wildfires, it's a great example of how housing supply and demand works. A lot of these stories of price gouging that we've seen is a tacit admission by people who own properties, that when supply is limited and demand is high, price goes up. I want to encourage Council to recognize that the reverse is true. If we allow more housing supply to be built, it can act as a price suppressant and create naturally affordable housing. I also want to mention that I strongly support Council to put Mike Van Gorder on the Planning Commission. I think he's an experienced member of the housing industry, being a policy analyst and urban planning experience as well. A lot of experience that Burbank could really use in our city government. Thank you.
Thank you for your call.
The next caller is Mary B.
Hi, Mary, you're on with City Council, you have two minutes.
Thank you, Happy New Year, Mayor Perez and Councilmembers. First of all, I concur with the rent freeze and moratorium. People have lost homes, there's not affordable housing, and also rent control is long overdue. When is it coming? Perhaps limit rents based on apartment size? No studio should cost near $2,000, plus ridiculous demands like making three times the year rental amount. No one average makes that much, that's like asking a doctor's salary out of a receptionist. Greedy landlords are pushing out lifetime residents and gentrifying Burbank heavily. Second issue, y'all just pledge allegiance to the flag. There's a severely frayed American flag flying on city property, it's disrespectful to the people, insulting to veterans. I've called multiple times with no action taken. Recently, Paula, a supervisor at either Parks and Rec or Landscaping, I forget, refused to retire, claiming they were pending a severe storm in Burbank on a day where there was none. I offered to replace it myself, and I was threatened with arrest for taking city property. That's my property, my taxes pay for it. She nonchalantly said, they take care of it next week. I don't trust the city to do anything but roll it up and toss her in a trash can at this point, with the way it's being treated. This inaction reflects a lack of respect for the country and for Burbank citizens. We need this corrected immediately, please. That's my time, thank you.
Thank you for your call, and if you could reach out to city staff to let us know where that flag is located, we would really appreciate that. Next caller, please.
The next caller is Brittany Curran.
Good evening, Mayor Perez, City Councilmembers and Staff. Thank you to our first responders, and I do hope everyone I just mentioned is remembering to take care of their own selves through this time, because you're all doing a lot of hard work, and it's very exhausting, and I hope you're finding time for some more kindness and rest, because that will help you help us even more. So that being said, I am a homeowner and longtime resident of Burbank and business owner, and I am calling in today to voice my support for Mike Van Gorder, and would love the Council to pick him for Planning Commission. As a small, human-sized part of our urban landscape myself, having an actual urban planner trained and experienced in the very role he seeks to fill, in turn fills me with a solid sense of confidence and security. My little family and I have always seen Burbank as our forever home, and knowing that Mike Van Gorder also has a young family himself and two little and two little girls who are growing up in the very city that my own future children will grow up in makes me feel like I'm not seen as a statistic, but rather as a neighbor. And also, I want to mention that knowing that he is a musician and a former amateur fighter strongly indicates to me that when it comes to, like, for instance, housing policy development priorities and all the related financials, is that psychologically, there is just a high probability that he approaches these generally more linear principles with a lens of creative problem solving, the musician part, and steadfast mental resilience, the fighter part. I love that he's a staunch union member. I myself have been a staunch union member since the age of 12. Union is sag, by the way, for the record, for any weird child labor concerns, give anyone pause. And shout out to one of my favorite Burbank studio peat buddies during the WGA strike, council member Conventine Anthony. I am still jealous of your strike shirts. Yes, everyone take care of themselves. Thank you for all your hard work, and have a good evening.
Thank you for your call.
Hello?
The next caller is Katie Hutt.
Hi, Katie, you're on with city council. You have two minutes.
Thank you. Sorry, I started a little early. I'm a renter in Burbank, and I urge you guys to implement a temporary rent freeze and eviction moratorium. While we weren't personally affected by the fires, I mean, everybody already talked about it, right? We've seen the prices of online listings, and they're like skyrocketing. And although there are laws to protect us for many people, many families, even a totally legal $100 increase could be the difference between being able to afford a place or not. And as these displaced people, blah, 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 search for housing, the unchecked price gouging is going to make it impossible for people to rebuild here. And after the fire, they've already lost their homes. They might have lost their jobs, their possessions. We can't let them lose their community, too. So many people who lost places are longtime residents of our community. And yeah, we just need to make it affordable for them to live here so that they don't lose their security net in addition to everything else. I can say personally, the renters protections that were put in place in 2020 are what made it possible for a lot of my friends to be able to maintain a life here in Burbank. And I don't see why the devastation from the fires that have affected so many people here, so many of our neighbors, should be treated any differently from the COVID crisis. And please appoint Mike Van Gorder to the Planning Commission. Thank you for your time, guys.
Thank you for your call.
The next caller is Matthew.
Hi, Matthew, you're on with city council. You have two minutes.
Hello, Burbank City Council and staff. My name is Matthew, and I've been a Burbank renter for nearly four years. I'm reaching out to you today in response to the devastating fires that have destroyed entire neighborhoods, including the Palisades Fire and the Eden Fire. I work in the entertainment industry. And on my own personal social media feeds, I saw family after family like lose everything, friends and associates, who's both family members, past personal belongings, and all built equity. As, you know, these displaced families are finding themselves in demand of new housing, it's imperative that we take precautions and preventative measures against the manipulation of the market. I urge Burbank City Council to pass a rent freeze and eviction moratorium. We are already seeing immediate signs of housing-related price gouging, and action must be taken in order to help the victims of the fires and protect the renters of Burbank. And lastly, please appoint Mike Van Gorder to the Planning Commission. His experience and education with housing would make him a great asset to the city of Burbank and its residents. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your call.
The next caller would like to remain anonymous.
Hi, you're on with the Burbank City Council. You have two minutes.
Hi. As a resident in Burbank for three years now, I have already felt rent burdened and close to losing my home because of unsustainable rent increases here. Affordable housing is limited, and has made the people of Burbank become significantly rent burdened. And now, with over 100,000 people displaced from the fires, this will only strain residents more. Keep LA Voice, Tenants Together, debt collective, Burbank Tenants Union, and many other groups are calling for an eviction moratorium and rent freeze. I want to urge Burbank City Council to enact these and create a rental registry to keep track of rent increases. Please enact stronger rental protections before more residents of Burbank are forced into leaving because of unsustainable rent increases due to this environmental tragedy. In the words of council member Rosati, "Housing is a human right." So please keep the despicable behavior of some landlords in mind who are using this disaster to price gouge and are trying to sidestep any penalties by raising rents by only 9.998%, which is ridiculous. Which is why when February comes around and the rent cap is back on the agenda, please deeply consider what renters need and what they ask for in terms of a lower rent cap to prevent landlords from increasing rents at an unsustainable rate. Because once this emergency is over, landlords will use this opportunity to raise up the max percent and above since there isn't an existing rental registry keeping track. The people of Burbank need protecting. Also, please appoint Mike to the Planning Commission. His experience and education with housing would make him a great asset to the city of Burbank and its residents. We need someone with his knowledge of urban funding ADs to assist Burbank in funding housing that could help solve the affordability issue renters face. Thank you.
Thank you for your call.
That was our last caller, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Now is a time for a brief response from city council, the city manager, and/or the city attorney. Mr. City Manager, I see you reaching for the mic.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have a few follow-up items. First, as far as one of the speakers had commented about the CERT disaster training courses, that's something that we'll definitely advertise more of right now so in the coming months. So that's a good resource, so we'll look at advertising that. The other, with the American flag, I'm not sure of the specific circumstances. However, we will follow up. I know we probably need to take a look at all our flags at our facilities after this windstorm. So some of them may not be, some may need to be changed. So we'll take a look at that. I know we're kind of waiting until after tomorrow, you know, after the red flag warning, so we're not having to put one up and then it gets messed up. But we take that seriously. So if it is really bad, well, at the very least, we'll take it down. But we'll be following up on that. So for sure, we do, we want to be respectful to the American flag, so we'll be sure to do that.
Thank you, Mr. City. Thank you. I was just going to comment on that, the feedback that was coming back. But it looks like that ended.
Do I have to repeat myself?
I think we heard you.
Okay, all right, cool. All right, and then a couple other things. We are coming back with the Tree Master Plan in the coming months. One of the things at that time, if council wants us to consider exploring some sort of group oversight, somebody suggested that would probably be the time to do that. And then finally, we did, speaking of nuclear war, we did actually adopt a proclamation in support of the abolition of nuclear weapons a little while back.
Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I wanted to address what was probably the prevailing theme of tonight regarding insecurity of renters and the effect of the wildfires on the rental stock. So there are existing anti-gouging provisions in state law, specifically Penal Code Section 396. We appreciate all of the correspondence and the examples that were provided in emails to council today. We did update the page that Mr. Jones mentioned earlier, the city's alert page, which is currently the top space to click on on the city's homepage, www.burbankca.gov. So there's now a tab on price gouging. It provides reference to the state law requirements for housing. There is a cap of 10% increase for unoccupied housing units. That is what the anti-gouging applies to. There's a 10% cap on that. And there are specifics in the law. In any event, there is enforcement at the state level with the Attorney General, at the county level with the District Attorney. Hockman has been very, new District Attorney Hockman has been very vocal about maximum punishment to people who loot and also under these provisions. Our office stands ready to fully prosecute gouging. We've also been in communication with the Burbank Police Department, who is also welcoming any complaints, preferably in person, so that they can collect evidence of the gouging and also, you know, get more local specifics. So council funded the housing enforcement unit last year. Part of that includes civil enforcement, injunctive relief. But the council also funds a city prosecutor's office annually, and we have prosecutors who can't take those cases. We have followed up on some of the screenshots. I know Mr. Pimienta had sent some screenshots. And some of those prices due to the social media, we've actually seen drop, come down. I noted just a brief count, don't hold me to it, but on this list provided by the Coalition, there are 14 Burbank addresses. So we will follow up on these 14 addresses. I don't want the public to think that all 10 pages are Burbank addresses. My count was 14, but we'll go back through the list to make sure that we personally follow up. And then Mr. Jones or Ms. Leland can supplement my response, but I believe we sent the same information that is now on our price gouging tab out to some 15,000 residents and businesses that indicated they were interested in tenant protection information. So that went out today. As to occupied units, SB 1482, the Tenant Protection Act prohibits rent increases. Is it 8.3 or 8.9% this year? It prohibits rent increases in excess of 8.9, and the rent may not be increased more than twice per year. So anybody who gets an increase that cumulatively exceeds that amount, that's a violation of state law. It's a violation of the city's law. We have a housing enforcement unit, and we are actively reviewing those cases and starting with a warning letter. And we've yet to find a landlord who's been willing to proceed with an increase or an unwarranted renovation or eviction, just cause eviction notice in violation of the law. So so far, we've had 100% compliance with the enforcement cases that have come through our office. So we remain confident that as these cases come forward, we will definitely address them, either on the civil injunctive relief side or on the criminal side. But there are protections for both occupied units and vacant units.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. I believe there's a question to your comment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We also heard restriction on rent eviction. Can you please address our current policy regarding rent eviction?
Well, the law prohibits evictions unless there's just cause. Just cause can be for fault in the case of a breach of a lease or non-payment. Or eviction could be for a no-fault just cause, which includes family move-in, immediate family move-in. Renovation evictions are the most prevalent ones that we've heard of recently. And they have to follow the law, and they are currently allowed. But they require just cause. A renovation eviction requires architectural plans, issued permits, a narrative as to why that work can't be completed in less than 30 days, and three months relocation assistance, all of which have to follow fairly stringent requirements.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Any other staff responses? Okay, the only thing I would ask is if somebody...
Madam Mayor, sorry, if I could. There is a housing enforcement unit phone number.
Thank you.
It is 818-238-5180. Those are Housing Division staff. They do the intake with Housing Assistant, Social Services Supervisor, Habitability Inspection, and they refer the cases to our office.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. I appreciate that phone number going out. The only other question I would have is, can somebody address Mr. Bax's concern about the green bins? I know we have Public Works here. If you can answer his question, that would be greatly appreciated. All righty, any responses from council? Not all at once. Oh, I thought I was going to talk to him directly. Go ahead. Yeah, no, if you'd like to come to the podium in case anybody else has other questions, yeah.
Sure, thanks. Ken Berkman, Public Works Director.
Thank you.
Mayor, council, thanks for the opportunity. If I heard correctly, the issue was all the debris that private homeowners have. We can't have that debris put in piles into the street for the sweepers to pick up because it just messes up the system of sweeping. So it's not only during emergency events like this, it's every day. And our drivers do get out to chat with homeowners about that issue. We need folks to put all their materials in the green bins. And I believe if you call our Public Works yard at 818-238-3800, they can help with possibly some additional pickups or extra green bins. But over the course of time, putting them in the green bins is the right way to go so we can handle those properly and not get it into the sweeper systems.
And if your bin is full, then you can call that number and either have an extra pickup happen in a timely manner or get a second green bin delivered to you.
Yeah, the customer service reps will figure out a good way to take care of the extra debris in a timely manner with you.
Thank you. I hope this answers your question, Mr. Bax. If it doesn't, because it looks like it doesn't, Mr. Berkman is here.
I'll be right there.
Thank you. All righty, responses from council would like to go first. Vice Mayor Takahashi, thank you for the initiative.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for answering those questions. I had a number of those. Thank you. Let's see. Thank you to all the speakers who came tonight to speak. As always, appreciate you coming out, taking your time and your day to share with us your concerns and thoughts and questions in some cases, and thanks to those who called from home. And thank you to all those who sent emails as well and also met in person regarding the things that concern you. It's been a few weeks since we had a council meeting, so I just wanted to express thanks for the past few weeks of communication. Let's see. Mr. Roy is not here anymore, but he mentioned that Senator Menjivar has a list of ways to help and is willing to receive questions. I would love to see if maybe we can connect with his, with her office and see if we can get her contact information on our info page. Be great. Let's see. To Mr. Morris, thank you for coming out a week ahead of time and sharing your thoughts about goal-setting before the meeting. I hope you'll be there as well. But this is an important meeting, and I appreciate your thoughts on that. Mr. Donahue, about the horses, thank you. I've noticed that you've been posting about the horses online. And so if you could send me, would be great if you could send me the information on what they need. And I'll pass it along to staff and post it as well and repost it because it's an important part of our community. And I think folks, I myself, I'm not sure what, how to help. So it'd be helpful to know, beyond carrots and apples and chocolate. It's a horse chocolate. If I could convince my kids carrots were chocolate, that'd be amazing. Let's see. And then to Ally, thank you so much for bringing up the relationship with the indigenous folks. I will definitely, I don't know if we do have, do we have a response to that question about whether we have a relationship with the indigenous folks? Or is that for follow-up?
The city regularly consults with all Native American tribes on every proposed project that's not exempt from SEQA. So it's in state statute, it's actually very frequent communication. I can't say that the interactions go far beyond development, but primarily, it's to respect tribal lands and tribal cultural resources. So there is regular communication on those subjects, So there is regular communication on those subjects, and it's a part of the project review process.
Okay. Well, since we have a relationship already, I think to Ally's point that discussing the fires with them would not be a bad idea, so we'll follow up on that. One of the callers mentioned self-care for staff, and I want to thank the caller who said that. Could you speak a little bit to the opportunities that are available for our staff for self-care? I know we have a number of them, you don't have to give every, list everything, but just kind of a general overview of how we do provide self-care for our staff.
And our management services director is going to answer this way better than me, so I'm going to totally defer to her if I could get. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. And Vice Mayor Takahashi, I just want to make sure I understand the question.
Yeah.
To self-care for employees.
Yeah.
First responders in light of everything that they've gone through. So we are very fortunate to have a really wonderful EAP, our Employee Assistance Program here at the city. It is a really rich benefit for our employees. It actually provides 10 free counseling sessions per issue per year. So if an employee has a number of different issues throughout the year, they're able to access those counseling services for 10 sessions for each issue. It's also available to everybody within their own household. So if you have a spouse or a family member or a child that is experiencing some sort of distress, they can access the EAP services for that as well. I, I don't want to speak out of turn too much for the police and the fire department, but I do know that they also internally have programs. The fire department has a really wonderful wellness program that they've developed in conjunction with our EAP services. They've been doing that for several years, and it is a routine check-in system that they have with the onsite counselors that we have with EAP. And then also, I believe that the police department has, we have a psychological consultant agreement that will do crisis response and sort of short-term to bridge folks into longer-term care. And then I also believe that they have a peer support group as well. So we definitely have several resources available for our first responders, because clearly that's, you know, very important to us as they move forward and recover from what they've experienced the last few weeks.
Great. Thank you so much for sharing that, for the community to know what we've offered them. And then just my last response to the folks who are concerned about folks who are displaced. So a couple days ago, I had a meeting, a regional meeting with the San Fernando Valley COG, and we discussed recovery issue, recovery, coordinated recovery processes, and we did discuss folks finding homes to live in until their homes are either repaired, or they rebuild, or they find another permanent home. And right now, we're kind of in the middle of crisis mode still, so this, most, most of the folks are still just in their crisis location, but we are, they are saying that they're looking for homes, and there's a coordinated process for that. So there, there are maybe some folks who are randomly out there looking for places, but there are coordinated services that know where the folks are who are offering places for low cost or, or no cost, and that's being done coordinated through the, through the valley as well. So if you know somebody who is looking for a place and is unable to find where to go to get help to find a place to live, please send them along to me or staff, or we'll, we'll make sure they get connected to the right organizations that know where those places are that are offered, that are legitimate places to rent, and they're available for them. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Takahashi. Councilor Mullins.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone that came tonight and called. I also want to echo Mr. Pimienta's, thank you for the volunteers. We need to acknowledge them. We've had, and also Mrs. Scrogg, you mentioned, an overwhelming amount of volunteers, an over amount, amount, overwhelming amount of people who have donated supplies and money to help organizations. I'm very aware of the Rotary Club, Zonta Club, a lot of different organizations that have collected goods. I know Tequila, you mentioned Tequila early, also have, they were kind of the center of collecting a lot of goods for, for those who are in need, and they were able to deliver it with the work of home again. So, so many great people in this community who have come together, even though we were not in the middle of this chaos, but we stepped up and everyone has reached out, sent emails, had many people call me and ask me, how could they volunteer? Who needs help? What could we do? So thank you to everyone who participated. Mr. Scrogg, I, I know you, your minutes were cut short, but I do want to say that we will continue our meeting after things are calmed down. We're going to continue our discussion about our media industry and what we can do to help out, so no fear. I'm always available, and we'll meet again, and we're going to have a discussion and hopefully get that meeting starting. I also want to give a shout-out to our Senator Menjivar. Thank you, Roy, for coming and giving information. This is really wonderful with the DMV suspending all fees for those who need their documents. I think that's a great idea. I didn't even think about it, but yes, so many people probably lost their registration, their license, so this is wonderful. So thank you for her doing that and taking the initiative on doing it. As far as everyone that came and talked about housing and gouging, and I think this is on the forefront for all of us, there's been enough discussion in the media about it. There's been a lot of warning for those who will take advantage of individuals who need housing. And in addition to what the vice mayor said, I also, I am aware that Agula, the Apartment Association of Greater Los Angeles, have put out a press release, if you go on their website, asking all the landlords, all the multi-unit buildings to share their vacancies with the association so they can have a pool of available housing to be able to share with those who need housing. And if you look on our website, just looking at rent.com or Zillow or any of those sites, I just did a quick search today, and we have over 350 units vacant in the city of Burbank. And more, okay, the housing expert there is telling me more. I only did a really quick search just to get an idea. I was able to see a long list, but I know Mr. Councilmember Rosati, you probably give us an update on that. So we do have quite a bit of available units in the city of Burbank. So welcome people from Altadena or Pasadena, those who are looking for housing. And I want you to be assured, with the enforcement unit that we put together and we funded, our city attorney is ready and willing to go for anyone who's going to be in violation. So know that they will be taken to court, whatever punishment it is, whatever that we need to do will be handled, that we don't want to see anybody out there taking advantage of people that need to be placed in homes, temporary homes, until they get their life together. So know that we do care, and know that we've had this conversation with our city attorney way even before you started sending us the emails. So thank you for speaking on behalf of the tenants, but we are also doing our job trying to make sure that we are taking care of them. So appreciate everyone that came tonight.
Thank you, Councilor Mullins. Who would like to go next? Councilwoman Anthony.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody, for coming down. I know this is, obviously, it's been consuming our news feeds and our social media, and this is all we're talking about for the last couple of weeks. Unfortunately, these fires and the wind event happened between council meetings. You know, typically, we agendize things at the end, and then it comes back as a report, and then we vote on it, and so to try to respond to some of this stuff is, is tough because it's not, I mean, we don't have the fire on the agenda, right? So, thank you for telling us what's going on, basically, giving us your stories. I didn't know about the horses. There's a lot of things that are trickling down to us. We only have so many resources we can reach out to and hear about, but there's ways of dealing with this. I know we've put some policies in place, we've mentioned them earlier, that are on autopilot, that are dealing with a lot of these issues. However, if we wanted to change policy, if we wanted to do anything different, it would have to be agendized, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Anthony. Councilwoman Rosati.
Thank you all for coming tonight. Regarding the flag, I've seen the flag online, and I've asked the person, where's the location? I have not gotten a response, so I, I've been trying to figure out where this flag-
We, we think it's five points, but we're going to check, but we're going to check all our facilities.
Okay. All right. You know, we, we received a lot of emails. We're, we're in a crisis right now, obviously, and we received a lot of emails about, I, I think it's misinformation. People are not randomly being evicted. People are not randomly facing rent increases beyond the state law. There are protections in place, and I would just ask people, and it's a really tense time, I'm dealing with people from morning till night that have lost everything, and it's a really tense time, and I just ask you to not politicize this event. I know that there's a campaign that's been going on. We've received hundreds of emails that say very similar things. I've had clients calling me saying, am I being evicted? Can I get evicted so they can get more money? No, there are protections in place. So it, it's an extremely tense time, and I just ask everyone just to let, let, let the system play out. There's all the protections in place. The California Association of Realtors, the Board of Realtors, they've all sent out notices about rent hikes and taking advantage of people. I was watching the DA Hockman interview. He's taking it seriously. Our city attorney will take it seriously, but I'm just asking everyone, just, just, it's a really tense time right now, and just, please don't spread misinformation because there's, there's so much other things going on in people's lives. Obviously, we all want to protect everyone, but I think some of the things that have been said are, are not happening and are not true. And, and the people that I've personally have sent and reported, people that I thought were taking advantage with rent hikes, and so there is a mechanism for that, report it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rosati. Okay, my turn. So thank you so much, Jim, Roy, if you're still watching this, I'm sure you are still watching this. So thank you so much. We appreciate Senator Menjivar's support and partnership and all the communication during this crisis. I've seen her up and about around her entire district, and funny enough, I know Mr. Donahue mentioned the Equestrian Center. Senator Menjivar and I were on a call at 11:30 PM on Tuesday when the winds started to talk about how much space there was and the very well-deserving, I may be the mayor of Burbank, but yes, Liz Radley is the mayor of the Rancho, and we, Liz Radley and I were also on a call at midnight to talk about the space at the Equestrian Center. And so I'm really grateful for all the volunteers out there who have been there around the clock. They are doing tireless work and making miracles even when space is limited. So we're very grateful to them, and folks, I think, I'm going to link also what Mr. Scrogg said, if you would like to donate somewhere, that's a great example of, please call in advance, please ask folks what they need, because they may not need carrots, they may not need clothes, they may not be taking used clothes, so please make sure you're calling in advance when you would like to donate, because folks are overwhelmed, and you may be surprised at what items are useful to folks. Having worked in homeless services, a lot of times we got a lot of clothes, a lot of old clothes, but we didn't get tampons, we didn't get diapers, we didn't get respirators, we didn't get any of the items that a lot of folks were actually asking for. So let folks tell you what they need, and make sure to get those donations there, and our fire department, our PIO, will continue to share locations, resources, and places you can volunteer while, as we move forward. Let's see. To the folks who, who talked about the, the price gouging and shared the resources, thank you for sharing this. As you know, our city attorney is taking a look at all of these and will be contacting everyone that is in Burbank. I would also encourage you, and you've seen the emails from our community assistance staff, to share with the Department of Consumer Affairs in the county. They are looking into all of these, and will be moving forward. So please continue to share those resources. Price gouging is definitely happening across the county. It's embarrassing, because it should not be happening. Nobody should be taking advantage of a situation like this. And then, let's see. Oh, somebody else mentioned the CERT course. I know we'll have something coming up again soon, and, and I do want to mention something about the CERT course. So this course is very specific. It offers a lot of training for folks who would like to respond in an emergency situation, obviously not as first responders, but very, very close to folks who can help. And we did find, Mr. Baumgartner shared with me, we did find that the Red Cross was lacking in certified volunteers at the, during this crisis. So if you're interested, even remotely, look into it, God forbid the next crisis, but if we have one, you can be certified and help out immediately rather than folks who aren't. So it's, it's very good to have a certificate if, if you're interested and would like to Mr. Scroggs, thank you so much for always sharing the media and entertainment issues. I have some updates for you about, a call about the, oh my gosh, about the, oh my God, tax credit. Thank you, that's what I'm looking for. About the tax credit. So let's definitely sit down and talk. Thank you for always being our source on media and entertainment. We appreciate you coming on down. And then the final thing I, I will say, oh, sorry, I'm reading my notes here all over the place. Somebody did mention the Tongva issue. We are well-connected, and I also personally have a relationship with their leadership. We have been in talks, and actually, a few years back, way before we were on council, I think you were here, the City of Burbank Library held a presentation in accordance with the Tongva tribe on natural burns and on how they work, why we do them, and how the state of California is working, like Cal Fire is working with indigenous communities to make these burns happen. So please rest assured, it's definitely happening. It mostly happens through Cal Fire because it is connected through the tribal networks. And then the last thing I will say is, we, there's a lot of fear in the community, yes, but we cannot deny that looting, vandalism, arson, and price gouging, along with evictions, are happening. All of these things are happening. We're seeing them in the community. Maybe folks can debate how prevalent they think they are, they can debate how many bad actors, how many good actors, but we can't deny that they're happening. The good news, it's that there are resources out there. Our city has served as a resource. I, I want to commend our CDD staff and our city attorney for creating this housing enforcement unit. It came at a perfect time. And again, that number is 818-238-5180. Please reach out with any concerns, and I think each time you call and you denounce a bad actor, somebody who is raising the rent above the rent cap, above the state cap, because I know it happens, sometimes on purpose, sometimes even on accident, but it happens. So if you see that, make the call, they'll connect with the city attorney directly and receive their warning notice, and like the city attorney mentioned, 100% compliance. So let's keep encouraging that, let's keep it happening, and thank you to everybody for all you have done in the fire efforts and in the efforts to help folks stay housed. That's all I got. Alrighty, um, let's move on to the-
Before we move on, Ma, Madam Mayor, I wanted to point out that the, the Brown Act does allow for urgency action if the public is requesting it, and if council feels so, any agenda item added to the council's agenda today would have to require a four-fifth vote. There are a number of issues that the, that this public has brought to us that I think deserve at least a discussion, maybe not actually change in policy.
Before you keep going, Councilwoman, Mr. City Attorney, is this the appropriate time for this?
Well, you haven't gotten into your business yet, and this is responses to public comments, so it's as good a time as any, if it's going to be on this agenda. The findings are rigorous. They require that there be an emergency situation. I don't know that that's a question, but that there is an immediate need to take action, and that the need to take action came to the local agency subsequent to the posting of the agenda. You'd have to decide whether some of the issues raised are the, the issues that have been before the council for several years, or whether they're new, and, and that there's a need to take action. That is, what we have in place is not sufficient, and the council would have to make those findings, it's by two-thirds vote, but that's four, four votes out of, out of five, you'd have to make that finding before you could engage in any further discussion.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Continue. Just wanted to make sure.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So to that point, the, the simple findings that I'm putting out there is, number one, the, the issue of looting. Although not widespread in Burbank, we do have a lot of commercial corridors that I feel could possibly be targeted. I would like to discuss a possibly increasing patrols in those areas. Second, we have a number of- Second, we have a number of city and Burbank Unified employees who could possibly have been affected by these fires. And for the purpose of conducting city business and keeping the schools open, allowing for motel subsidies, I'd like to discuss that as well. The, the issue of price gouging and all of those other issues, I think we could talk about it, not necessarily move forward with anything specific. But in order to discuss it, we simply need a four-fifths vote. I feel the findings are there for some very narrow, specific issues. And that's what I'd like to ask.
Councilor Mullins, first I'm going to ask for some clarity, just on at least the first item, the police patrols, because I don't know that we necessarily need an agenda item for that.
Well, for starters, I would just say that I don't need any further authority from the council to undertake enforcement of the anti-gouging and to enforce the tenant protections. I haven't heard of any looting, nor have we seen any cases referred to us from BPD. So you, you need some evidence, or your colleagues, rather, would need some evidence to support your motion.
I'll let Councilor Mullins go for your question and then I'm going to let the captain share with us, I think, some, some data and facts on, on that.
That was going to be, thank you for stepping in because I have not seen or heard of any issues in Burbank. I could be totally blind, but thank you for stepping in and talking about it.
Yes, good evening. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Adam Cornell is Deputy Chief for Burbank PD. As far as looting, we have not seen any looting here. We have been out on mutual aid deployments. Mostly in this context, the term looting is referring to people going into closed evacuation areas and committing burglary, thefts there. We don't have any evacuation areas in town here at the time. So we, we aren't experiencing in that context, looting. We, we do have retail centers. We have commercial areas like Magnolia Park, the Empire Center. We have retail theft where there's always risk of burglary activity there and we, we do a lot of patrolling there to suppress that. But no, no looting in the context that you're seeing with the fires.
Thank you, Deputy Chief, and sorry for demoting you there. Congratulations on the recent.
Same guy, new hardware. It's okay. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Well, I guess then the last item, and this was brought to me by a member of the community, offering immediate subsidies for city employees or district employees who are affected by the fire. That would be my only request. If we feel it's urgent to get it out tonight, rather than agendize it and bring it back in two weeks.
Councilor Mullins?
And immediate substance. I think we all received the same email offering city employees a stay at a hotel in the city of Burbank, which I was aware and the city manager and I were in a meeting that some of our employees have actually taken that offer and they're currently staying at that hotel. I'm very confident that our executive team and the staff is probably working with some employees to make sure that we are taking care of the employees in whichever way. So if Mr. City Manager, you want to help us here?
Thank you. Yeah, that, that has been happening. We did get an offer and we have been referring people if necessary. So we have a contact info, so that's going well.
I mean, my only question is, do we know if, if the school district has gotten the same offer? That, that's why I'm kind of putting them together.
I, I do not know, but I could follow up.
Yes, if we could work with them to make sure that offer has been extended to the school district. And, and the only other thing I would add is, is I hear you and I think it's a very, it's a very good cause. It's a very good point to make and to bring up. But the only thing I would say is like, for, for these findings, I think we need data and hard numbers. And, and even of the school board's volition, I've had the chance to talk to their president, to their vice president, their clerk. They don't have hard numbers yet, so we're waiting on, on that data. And, and even if we wanted to do something like a subsidy, I don't know that I could, I have the information to know what dollar amount to put in there, how to support. So I think our best bet at this time is to refer them to that free resource that has been offered to us. And if you're listening, Marriott folks, which I don't think you are, please, please know that we would appreciate that offer extended to our school district employees as well.
That's fine. I mean, I may have tipped my hat to what I put on the agenda at the end of the night, but.
Yeah, so if there's no second, then the motion dies for lack of a second.
All right. I appreciate the discussion. Thank you.
Appreciate you bringing it forward. It's good to talk about. Alrighty, um, now's the time for the consent calendar. It may be enacted in one motion. Madam City Clerk, please read the consent calendar.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have six items tonight on the consent calendar. Item one is approval of the city council minutes of the city council reorganization meeting of December 16th, 2024, the regular meeting of December 17th, 2024, the dark meetings of December 24th and December 31st, 2024, and January 7th, 2025. Item two is approval of the housing authority minutes of the joint meeting of December 10th, 2024. Item three is adoption of resolutions approving the establishment of the salary for the classification of parking permit technician. Establishment of the salary and conflict of interest code designation for the classification of parking services manager and adoption of a resolution approving the citywide salary schedule. Item four is approval to authorize the general manager to negotiate, approve, and execute a system long-term services agreement with Tesla Incorporated for multi-year preventative maintenance services in support of the regional intermodal transportation center battery energy storage system project. Item five is approval of the proposed city council meeting schedule for March 2025 through February 2026. And item six is approval of the city parks master plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Councilor Anthony?
If it's all right, I'd like to pull item number four for a full report. And if it's possible, could we have it after agenda item nine? I believe nine is also the same city staff, if that's okay.
Mr. City Attorney, is that possible? Can we do that?
It's customary to move polled items to the end of the agenda, but the city council, the chairperson, in fact, Madam Mayor, has the prerogative to organize the agenda as you see fit.
Well, I would say that makes more sense so we don't keep our BWP folks here longer than they need to be. All right. Were you also going to make the motion?
So I'll make the motion to move the consent calendar except for item number four.
Second. All right, motion by Rosati, second by Mullins. Take it up. Councilmember Anthony?
Yes on one and two, abstain on three, skipping four. Yes on five and six.
Councilmember Mullins?
Yes.
Councilmember Rosati?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tagahashi?
Yes.
And Mayor Perez?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. That is the consent calendar. We have four reports to council this evening. After the staff's presentation, the city council will proceed with in-person public comment only. Speakers will be allowed to speak on the item at the conclusion of the presentation as long as they have not spoken on this item during general public comment. Please be sure to submit your comment cards now for the agenda items and no more comment cards will be accepted after staff's presentation. The first report to council tonight is the adoption of a resolution approving an amended and restated master loan agreement and related documents with the Burbank Housing Corporation Phase One. I welcome Ms. Marybel Leland, Housing Manager with the Community Development Department, to present the report. Welcome, Ms. Leland. Happy New Year.
Thank you. Happy New Year. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. I'm Marybel Leland, Housing Authority Manager with the Community Development Department. I'm before you this evening to present the consideration of the first set of changes to a master loan agreement with the Burbank Housing Corporation presented to you last year. We initiated this conversation during two study sessions in August and November of 2024, aiming to give the council an overview of the long-term standing partnership with BHC and their goal to expand the organization in order to continue providing affordable housing in the community. The council is being asked tonight to consider approving amendments to the master loan agreement with the city. This is only Phase One with limited and specific terms. There will be future discussions with specifics and details on additional considerations with the council. I'd like to note that in attendance this evening are members of the BHC board, BHC staff, BHC's legal and financial consultant and staff as well. They are here to answer questions and assist staff in providing any additional information the council may need. May I have the presentation, please? Before I get into the proposed changes, I'd like to provide a brief overview of the longtime partnership with BHC for our newest council member, although I know he's very familiar with the work of the Burbank Housing Corporation, and members of the public who may not be aware of BHC's mission and accomplishments. For the last 25 years, the city has utilized restricted housing funds to assist BHC in the creation of the affordable housing in the community with long-term affordability covenants. There was one master loan agreement with cross-collateralization and as each new property or project was added to that agreement, the affordability term on all properties was extended, known as an evergreen provision. This funding structure that was created more than 25 years ago is being revisited as the city no longer receives restricted housing funds such as former redevelopment agency funds and has very limited federal funds. Affordable housing developers must now leverage a combination of local, state, and federal funding, along with private financing to support the development of affordable housing in the community. Additionally, BHC offers a range of programs for residents and the community through four activity centers and family resource centers, along with high-quality accredited childcare at two centers where spaces are reserved for lower-income families. During the study session last year, I introduced BHC's proposal for a new financing structure that would provide them with flexibility, secure future funding, and continue the important work they do in the community. To reiterate, the current financing structure was developed as the city and housing authority provided the primary sources of funds to the, to BHC when first initiated. Those funds were never meant to be paid back and were effectively granted. As money or cash flow was available or is available after approved expenses, including operating and replacement, capital replacement reserves, then a residual receipts payment could be made. However, that has not been the case as BHC does not have the cash flow with the restricted rents we heard about in the presentations last year. BHC's proposal does the following. It would make global accounting and oversight changes to the existing master loan agreement for the properties, giving BHC the flexibility to apply to other financing sources such as state and local tax credits, private funds, and other grants to finance projects. And it also allows the release of properties from this larger agreement for future development opportunities. If the council approves the proposed terms to be highlighted later in the presentation, BHC is committed to keeping the long-term affordability of the units for a minimum of 55 years. In summary, proposed amendments make changes to accounting and other financial terms that will allow BHC to secure new funding sources to continue their mission in the city of creating affordable housing with long-term affordability covenants for a minimum of 55 years. You've seen the slide before and this identifies general categories for BHC's proposal for ease of reference and, and structure. The reality is that all of the proposed terms are financial policy decisions for consideration and they're identified in three different categories, as noted on this slide. This evening, we will go over specific financial terms for consideration of Phase One of the Master Loan Agreement Amendment. As previously discussed during the study sessions, the other proposed terms in BHC's proposal first presented in August will be looked at in future phases later in coming discussions. This slide summarizes BHC's proposed terms for Phase One presented during the November 2024, 2024 study session and staff's response. That includes resetting interest to zero and foregoing all accrued interest, foregoing 1/55 of the principal each year provided BHC is in compliance with agreements, resetting the loan term, the term of the loans to an additional 55 years after approval of the first phase of the proposal, and resetting affordability restrictions to the greatest feasible time, no less than 55 years. The only difference that staff presented back in October, November, pardon me, was to add accrued interest to the note balances as of December 31st, 2024, and that no interest would accrue or be owed after the date. The note amounts with the accrued interest forgiven versus the note balance is approximately $20 million as outlined in Attachment Three of the staff report and presented during our last study session. BHC and their team explained during the study session that forgiving the accrued interest would allow them to have a positive balance sheet to secure new financing and allow the organization to grow, creating more affordable units in the community. City staff stated that as more debt is added, we will likely be asked to subordinate the affordability covenant and may be at greater risk of losing the affordability covenant in the unlikely event of foreclosure. The city's and authorities' primary goals, however, are preservation, maintenance, and expansion of affordable housing opportunities rather than the protection or repayment of note principles and interest. These goals are best assured by enforcing recorded affordability covenants in the regulatory agreements. Approval of the interest terms, term, and all the proposed terms highlighted in the next two slides is a policy decision of the council, one that would enable BHC to grow their organization. For purposes of the discussion this evening, the following slides summarize the proposed terms with forgiving the accrued interest. The first three terms on this slide are, number one, resetting the balance of each loan to the beginning principal amount for both authority and sitting notes, and resetting interest at zero and foregoing all past outstanding and future interest. Number two, forgiving, a forgiveness term for the housing authority note, that is, to forego 1/55 of the principal balance of each loan that used authority funds each year, provided that BHC is in compliance with all agreements, specifically the affordability restrictions of each property. This proposed term also removes the residual receipts payment requirement. For the city note, reset the term of the city notes to the date funds were dispersed until the 15th year as required under home regulations and forgive a portion of the principal amount after that initial 15-year term is met, with one exception described in the next slide on number five. I want to point out, this is a new term not previously presented and it came to the attention as to staff as we were reviewing documentation for this evening that the, that the term of home notes are much shorter and they are 15 years. Therefore, staff took the opportunity to work with BHC team and look at notes that already have met that 15-year term. 10 notes have already met that term and several more to meet that term in the next six years or so. So this is a change than previously presented. Number three on this slide is resetting the term of the housing authority notes to an additional 55 years to correspond to the affordability period. And moving on to the final terms is resetting affordability restrictions, the affordability period, to the greatest time feasible and no less than 15, 5 years on both authority and city loans. The new affordability covenants will terminate on April 1st, 2080 for all of the units. And number five on this slide is specific to property modifications, also not previously presented, but a part of the consideration this evening as BHC has submitted a development proposal for properties on Fairview Street that is currently going through the entitlement process. That proposed project is scheduled to come before the council and Housing Authority Board later this year for financing consideration. In preparation for that consideration, authority and city notes for specific properties shall be modified as already described previously, but not as to forgiveness. Specifically, housing authority notes for three Fairview properties are not forgiven by, by annual payments. Rather, the notes are extended for 55 years and the entire balance is deferred and due at the end of 55 years. City notes are not shortened to reflect the 15-year term. Instead, the notes are extended 55 years. However, if the Fairview properties are not released from the master loan agreement by council action within five years, then the Fairview notes shall be changed administratively to be included in the MLA Phase One terms consistent with everything else presented. To memorialize the proposed MLA Phase One, which. To memorialize the proposed MLA Phase One, which is in and of itself a loan modification, reducing the amount owed by BHC to the authority and to the city, several documents will be amended and restated to reflect new loan terms, extend the affordability covenant for an additional 55 years, and remove the provision of residual receipts payment for the authority notes. Authority notes are proposed to be forgiven 1/55th annually, so long as BHC is in compliance with agreements, and city notes will be reduced to the terms required by home regulations, which is that 15-year term I mentioned, commencing with dispersal of funds. This reduction may allow BHC to address over-income tenant issues without extra home regulations in the future. This slide concludes the summary of proposed terms for the MLA Phase One. Staff recommends the city council and housing authority board approve their respective resolutions authorizing the approval of an amended and restated master loan agreement for Phase One, along with the approval of related documents that include the promissory notes for the authority and city with no interest, amended regulatory agreements as required, an amended and restated deed of trust to reflect the new loan amount for both authority and city notes, and amendments to ground leases for three properties to effectuate the changes. If approved, these changes will allow BHC to have favorable financial records should it desire to work with other agencies or secure additional funding sources for projects that will allow BHC to continue their mission to provide affordable housing in the community. In closing, it is important to note that Phase One of this process will not make BHC solvent in the long term. BHC presented other areas of concern during the November 26, 2024 study session and provided an overview of future discussions. Staff will work closely with BHC to schedule those future master loan agreement discussions and anticipate several different meetings to allow the council ample opportunity to review details and recommendations. This concludes staff's presentation. The BHC team and city staff are happy and ready to answer your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leland, and I see the BHC team here. Thank you for being here tonight. Hope you're all doing well and staying safe from everything happening around us. Thank you for being here, and now we'll move on to questions for either staff or BHC team after. Public comment if we have any. I have not received any cards. Thank you, we do. Alrighty, our first public comment is Sylvia Moreno. I introduced you, followed by Chris Welker. Welcome, Sylvia, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Perez, Vice Mayor Takahashi, members of the city council, Sylvia Moreno, Executive Director of the Burbank Housing Corporation. First, I would like to say that we're very excited to be here tonight, and I want to emphasize why it's so critical for city council to support our debt restructure proposal. For 26 years, BHC has worked hand-in-hand with the city to provide affordable housing and revitalize some of Burbank's most challenged neighborhoods. Together, we have transformed neglected areas, acquired and rehabilitated over 45 buildings, provided safe, affordable housing for nearly 1,000 residents. BHC has been a responsible and committed partner. We've met every financial and regulatory obligation. We have maintained high-quality housing and operated much-needed programs for our community. We are very proud of our affordable housing program and for the services that we provide to our families. Mayor Perez, you asked me at the last study session, what was my vision for BHC? And I responded that BHC wants to pursue larger affordable housing projects, and we want to continue to serve our community. So tonight, your support of our debt restructure proposal puts Burbank Housing Corporation in a financial position to be able to continue to do what we do best. I want to thank CDD staff and the city attorney's office for their time, dedication, and care in collaborating with the BHC team to craft a new affordable housing agreement. Lastly, my team is available to answer any of your questions, but I also want to recognize the attendance of the BHC Board of Directors. We have Chris Welker, our board president here tonight, Alisa Cunningham, our vice president, we have Ruth Martinez, our treasurer, and Brock Collins, our secretary. Thank you.
Thank you, Sylvia. Our next speaker is Chris Welker, followed by David Donahue.
Good evening, Mayor Perez and council members. I'm here this evening to comment on the agenda item that you're going to be hopefully approving this evening, amending our restated master loan agreement with BHC. As your appointee to the BHC board and as board president, I wish to thank you for the time and support that you've shown during the creation of this agreement and ask for your approval. I think it was Councilmember Anthony that mentioned this evening that the quality of life that we have here in Burbank is built on the shoulders of past members of the council. And it was 26 years ago that the council had the foresight to recognize the city's critical need for affordable housing. They formed a partnership with the newly-created BHC, and a collaboration was formed that has forever strengthened our community. Each council since then has continued to support and encourage BHC, allowing it to grow and thrive. It was approximately four years ago, a review of our business model revealed that the market and funding mechanisms for affordable housing development had changed significantly. This realization made it clear that our partnership needed to evolve to ensure its continued success. The council at that time was open to discussion and supportive of this review process, and I'd like to commend those former council members, Jess Telemontis, Bob Frutos, Sharon Springer, and most recently, Nick Schultz, for their willingness to engage, hear our proposals, and provide guidance as we navigated this transition. Though the process has been long, and I mentioned before here, it has reinforced what we all believe, that affordable housing strengthens Burbank, making it a more resilient and inclusive and productive community. All of you here today, the council, has faced the arduous task of carefully reviewing the restated master loan agreement. This has required significant attention, time, and effort, and for that, we are deeply, deeply grateful. On behalf of the BHC Board of Directors, I thank you. I hope you share in the pride that we feel for the work that has been done and the path going forward. Together, we are continuing to change lives and families for the better, today, tomorrow, and for the years to come. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is David Donahue, and that is my last comment card.
Mayor Perez, Vice Mayor Takahashi, council members and staff, my name is David Donahue. I've been in front of you relating to what the BHC is going through and facing, to what the housing providers in Burbank are facing. This is no different. This is the biggest study, the deepest dive into the costs. I was here for the last portion of the presentation for BHC, where they talked about the, I think, the four-time increase in their insurance. They're not unique. Ask yourself the question, is there any separation between the BHC and every housing provider in this great city? What is the thing that they talk about? If you put in hyper rent controls, what is the effect that's going to happen? You're going to stifle growth. What did the BHC just say to you seconds ago? We want to grow our portfolio. It is right in front of you with the reports. I understand, and I hope for you that, Mayor Perez, you'll correct me if I mistake this, but one of the council meetings, when we were deliberating, discussing rent caps, it was brought, say, there needs to be more attention paid to the housing providers. Your comment, I believe, was that we're here for the tenants. Right now, we're trying to deal with the pressures that they're feeling. The pressures and the organization of the Housing Coalition does a little bit of work. The housing providers in that coalition are trying to advocate, and they want to be heard, this moment, this time, where I can say, look at what the BHC has presented to you, look at what the master loan agreements are actually saying, because what is it doing? We have a negative balance, we can't afford to pay them, and unless we have our debt restructured to remove the interest, we cannot go forward. That's what I ask you to look at, when you come, when you're going to have agendas, rent caps, rent control, look at this. Our one of the greatest organizations, and I support the restructure. I support that the portfolio should grow. I support that there should be more affordable housing. But I also urge and ask and plead that you take that same amount of consideration and give it to the Burbank housing providers that are here today, that are having to face, without any help, the massive increase in insurance. And you think it's tough now, just wait in two, or three, or four, or five years. I will be presenting at the Resources for Homeowners at the Downtown Police Department this Friday. I'm a feature speaker, 9, 12, and 3. What am I going to be asked to speak on? Homeowner protections for rebuilding for people who have lost in the fires. As an expert, to be able to say, these are the laws of the state of California for how general contractors can charge you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. There being no further public comment, we now move to questions, for real this time. Who would like to begin? Everyone's so polite today.
I think we've had a lot of questions.
Councilmember Mullins, thank you for braving in.
I don't have any questions. What I want to say, and I know we're going to make our comments, it's, we've heard, we had an opportunity to listen to staff a couple of times, also to the BHC staff and board members, attorneys. In the last couple of months, we've had a lot of information that was given to us and passed on during the session. We asked a lot of great questions. We had extensive amount of questions and dialogue that took place, and I keep on looking at, what is our primary goal as a city? Our primary goal is to focus on housing, affordable housing, and availability of affordable housing. Who does it best but the BHC? Their need in securing future finances, their need in continuing the great work that they do, is for us to take a look, evaluate the loan, and look at the interests and say, you're forgiven, because we need you to go to the drawing table and start working and start building housing, affordable housing. If we don't do this, basically, we're making them handicap, that they can't continue on providing that affordable housing for our people. And so, looking at the staff report, reading all this, and going through the PowerPoint presentation, it's really straightforward to me, because we own these properties, so if they don't follow through what they're doing, if they don't produce what they said they're going to do, we have those properties, we haven't lost anything. So the city is in a great situation. We're in a good place, so the reason I'm saying this, because I personally don't have any questions, but what I have is to say, we need to do this, so we can build more affordable housing, so we can let them loose and go on and do your great job that you do. I want to free them of the restrictions that we have put on them for many years. 55 years is a long time, and I don't think any of us will be here, but I think you guys do a great job, and I'm willing to move forward. I don't think you'll be here in 55 years, Chris. Not sitting on this dais, not sitting on this dais. 55 years is a long time.
I hope you'll be around in 55 years, Chris.
You may be alive and well, but I don't know, serving on council for 55 years, I know I'm not going to be here, so.
I mean, Bob Kramer almost broke that record.
Oh, well, anyway, okay. I'm wrapping it up. I'm glad we got a little laughter out of it, but I am ready personally to move forward without any questions and make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mullins. Boy, you're really reminding us of our ages today.
Madam Mayor, if I could just clarify one of the things that Councilmember Mullins mentioned, it is true that some of the properties are actually owned by the city, and BHC's provision of housing is under a lease. Many of them, most of them, BHC owns, but our loans are secured by deeds of trust. So there is a little bit of nuance.
Thank you, Councilmember Mullins. Councilmember Rizotti.
I do have some questions. I just want, full disclosure, I've been a big supporter of BHC over the years. In 2013, I was on a roof in July. It was 105 degrees out, and I was out there putting on a roof on one of the properties with the Habda humanity. Just for members of the public, you know, I touched on something, actually, Mr. Donahue said, it was said that there was, cash flow was affected. I'd like to have that discussion for members of the public. I dug into some of the numbers. Can you explain what the issues were with the cash flow?
Hello, Mayor, members of the council, Dino Fuentes. I'm a financial consultant, RSG, on behalf of BHC. In the presentation that we had done during the study session, we looked at and utilized the Elmwood properties as, looking at their income and their expenses, and based upon the existing scenario, under the existing terms and conditions, there is a negative position each and every year of the expenses exceeding the revenues, and then on top of that, there's an existing balloon payment that occurs in 2031. And because of the MLA, which is cross-collateralized, when one, if one property goes into default, it affects the entire portfolio, which then the entire portfolio goes into default. So what was proposed is by reducing and eliminating the debt service requirements and removing that balloon payment, and also looking at some of the expenses associated with BHC and absorbing the insurance cost, which was articulated by a previous person, it helps to allow getting back into a positive position. However, there was one issue that was brought up of significance, which is the funding of the activity centers. So what was included in the proposal that was presented is funding the activity center, which was probably about $266,000, if I remember correctly, funding the activity center collectively for the upcoming calendar year in 2025, and as Ms. Leland had indicated, we would be coming back with some additional items on how do we address that in the long term, the need for the activity centers, how to underwrite it, and how to fund it, because that is an important component typically of providing a breadth of affordable housing in helping the families that are living in the surrounding neighborhoods. But overall, from a fiscal position, this would help align getting the position back into a positive cash position.
And some of those expense or insurance, give me some ideas of what other expenses you were facing.
The main one really was the insurance provision, because it went up from, say, about less than $300,000 to close to almost $1.2 million. And before, when we had been working with staff and looking at the restructuring of the MLA, that huge insurance increase, which is true, I mean, that is occurring, and you've probably read even prior to the fire issues that were going on, that private markets were experiencing significant increase in cost and having to absorb that. One of the big differences relative to that is, in a market-rate apartment, yes, you are beholden to what are in the rental protection provisions of the maximum increases, but in affordable housing, you have a much more limited amount of what you can increase rent to be able to increase the revenue to offset the expense, unlike market-rate apartment complexes. And that really puts some strain in relationship to how do you then absorb the main cost. But that really was the most significant impact of tripling of such an expense.
And with affordable housing, give me an idea what increases were possible, if at any.
Typically, it's regulated by the funding source. You're talking about what's the typical rental rent increase that is? It's usually at 4% or 1%. It's usually at 4% or less, depending upon the funding that is invested. And those are, and the rent increases are regulated primarily, a lot of this is home or it was former redevelopment funds. So typically, the rent increases are formulaic, and they are articulated by HUD and/or HCD. And that then is provided to the city. City provides then the maximum amount of rent increases that can occur across the properties. And there's ongoing coordination between city staff and BHC as it relates to the max increases that can occur. But that really is the biggest difference, is that they can't increase to what market will bear based upon the insurance, and they have to do full cost recovery. Where what you're seeing in some of the market rate apartments is they're not necessarily insuring to full cost, they're insuring to lower to try to reduce the rates, knowing what that impact is. In the documents that the city has negotiated, they are required to provide insurance for full cost recovery to protect the city's investment in that asset.
Madam Vice Mayor, if I could, when she makes reference to formulaic, it's specifically tied, because these are affordable units, it's specifically tied, the increases are specifically tied to increases in the defined affordable rent provision, which is tied to the area median income. So as opposed to non-restricted rental properties, it's, the top is restricted. In affordable units, they're restricted to the indexed affordability level of the unit. So if it's an extremely low income, then the increase is indexed to that bracket of the, and it only increases by the area median income. So it's very formulaic, and they, BHC has properties at, I think, all of the different income restriction levels. So every unit has its own restriction tied to the affordable rent for that affordability level of the AMI, so.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Councilmember Takahashi, questions?
Yes, just two quick questions and a comment. One second, where did my thing go? Yes, so if we were to approve this tonight, when would it go into effect? The changes.
The effect would be immediately. We would have to execute documents, record different documents that need to be recorded. So that would be essentially something that would be affected, and that is identified in the documents that it would be effective immediately.
Great. And the next phase of the whole process, when will we see the next phase happen?
Thank you for the question. In one of the terms that we did see is, I mentioned, an upcoming proposal of, BHC has been going through entitlements on a proposed project, and that would be one of the next items that you will see some of these, I would say, Phase Two possibly, of some of the areas that they previously presented, one of them being releasing properties from the bigger master loan agreement, and looking at other areas on specific loans for a development project.
Okay, great. So just a quick comment. I echo a lot of what Councilmember Mullins said and Councilmember Rizotti said about the importance of BHC. So BHC is a provider of essential affordable units in our city, but not just affordable units, but high-quality, well-maintained, highly responsive, supportive, with all, it's a really high-quality service that they provide. And so it's not just the housing, it's all that comes with it as well. And so I think that this change to the contract, this next phase, is the next stage of evolution for BHC to move forward, to do, to support affordable housing, create affordable housing, have it in a way that hasn't been able to be accomplished for a long time. So I think that this is an important step, especially to, Councilmember Mullins mentioned earlier of our goal of our city of creating more affordable housing, which is difficult, very, very difficult to create. So to have an organization that's willing to do that, given the right circumstances, I think we need to provide the right circumstances so that they can't do it.
Councilmember Anthony.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So we have two resolutions. One is from our housing authority and one is from us as the city, so it's like a dual competing.
It's not competing. Two sources of funding. So think of them as sources of funding. So for about 40 years, the city had a redevelopment agency. That redevelopment agency had a steady stream of revenue.
Had its own money separate from the city budget.
Had its own money, 20% of that had to be spent on rehabilitation, preservation, and production of affordable housing. The redevelopment agency was the entity that gave all of those loans. In 2013, redevelopment ended, and the housing authority, which was already in existence, became the successor agency. And all of those assets were transferred. Separately, the city, as a recipient of federal HUD funds, gave federal money, not local tax increment under redevelopment, for housing projects, different strings, different conduits. And so that's why there are multiple exhibits. If you look at the very last exhibit in the packet, attachment 9-1 and 9-2, 9-1 is a roster of all of the authority notes which originated from 20% set aside funds, which the housing authority is the successor agency, who is the custodian of all those notes and the obligations. The second page are the city notes. These are all the federal funds that pass through the city, different terms, and as Ms. Leland indicated in her presentation, some of the terms on those could have been as short as 15 years. On the redevelopment agency funds, which are the authority notes now, for rental properties, they were a minimum 55-year covenant. And so the documents are broken up into two sets, primarily based upon funding source and covenant durations. And the federal funds were forgivable, and the local funds could have been straight-out grants. They weren't, so we're kind of converting them.
Okay.
For the benefit of covenants that run all the way to 2080 now.
Excellent. On attachment 1-2 and 2-2, letter G, they're, from what I can tell, identical, because we're doing the same thing for both. If you go about a third of the way down, it says, with certain exceptions, "To make the annual authority loan payment forgivable after the completion of each year of the affordability covenant." Is that the 155 forgivable?
Yes, so each year of performance of the affordable housing obligation, the note's forgiven.
Okay.
So that by the time they get to the end.
It's all gone.
It's all gone.
Okay.
Which, they were all balloon payments before.
Right.
Without sufficient cash flow to ever pay it off. Because we didn't originally have to make them pay it off.
Right, no, I know.
But that's how we structured it.
Yeah. I had, the last time we, when we were here in November, I had asked, I had asked you guys, you were here. I had asked if council would be interested in putting in achievable goalposts to see, you know, because it says in compliance. And I remember that we didn't want to do that, but we wanted to do more forgiveness, I thought, instead of?
Well, so the achievable goalposts, if you're talking about metrics.
Right.
Were put in place the day the original grants were approved. And that is maintaining specific number of affordable units at specific affordability levels for the term, and operating an eligibility list and screening. So there are each of these criteria, and there are more. There's budgeting and oversight, many of which will come to you in a later phase. But the metrics are in place, what they are supposed to do for each year.
Okay, but then it says, back on page four of the staff report, it talks about the MLA amendment phase, there's something, we're doing different with Fairview. Is that right? So what are we doing with Fairview that's different than all of the rest 155th?
Thank you, Councilmember, for the question. For the Fairview properties, there are a couple of properties that are part of a development proposal that the council will be seeing at a later date. And because those properties right now are part of the master loan agreement, we are, we had to, we looked at those documents, determined that there are two, there are some, some properties that are combined, and so we needed to separate out a couple of those city notes. And one property was on Fairview, one was on Catalina, that's one example. However, in addition, the Fairview notes, except for the provision on the forgiveness, those will not be applied to three Fairview properties so that it's in preparation for this future development proposal that will be coming before the city council. All the other terms of the master loan agreement will apply, except for the forgiveness provision for now. And so if they are released, if this request in a future date to release them for the master loan agreement and to have specific terms for those, you will see additional information at that time. That's why I was mentioning to the vice mayor, I would maybe look at that as Phase Two. However, down the line, there'll be several other discussions for the master loan agreement for future phases.
And the reason is because while we were looking at the overall structure, Fairview was already shaping up to be submitted as a tax credit project with layered funds. And the city is only two of those layers, one or two of those layers of funds. And so that proposal has different terms, only because it's already shaping up, and they already know what they want those terms to be. So to Ms. Leland's point, if for some reason they're not awarded those tax credits, we're going to make the terms all match. But that project is already launching.
I see, so we're keeping it separate so they can go after that? Okay.
Because it's already, the perform is already created for it. They already know how the points tally up, and if we change the terms, they're not going to get the same award points. So it has nothing to do with the structure and the cash flow, it has to do with that specific project, which by the way, is a model for how they may, in the future, also increase density within the existing portfolio and create more housing.
So they've submitted it, we don't know?
Well, they're working on it. So the entitlement process won't come to council because it doesn't require council approval. That can be approved at a lower level. What's coming to council is the request for additional funding, which we still have a small pot, which we will contribute to this project to produce an additional 144 units on real property that we've already funded the acquisition and rehab of.
Okay. My last question here is, and please forgive me, I had some major surgery done from the last time we talked about this. When we had our meeting in November, we, the council had discussed a complete loan forgiveness separate from the 155th action. Is what we're doing today the quickest and easiest way to get this thing moving forward? And are we going to hear about a full loan forgiveness coming later, or is that not?
No, so the issue that was up for question in November was whether we forgive the approximately $20 million of accrued interest upfront, or whether we add it. So if you look at that, it's a different exhibit, I think it's the first attachment.
Yeah.
Is a schedule of all the notes plus interest. The notes plus interest is $80 million.
Right.
So the question was, do we take $80 million and divide it up into 155ths? Or do we take, look at the left column, I'm referring to.
Just the principal.
Attachment 3-1 is, sorry, they're really small numbers, $59,902,000, whether we divide that number up into 155ths. And with much discussion here in both the city and BHC's financial consultants and lawyers, council gave us direction, we prefer the upfront forgiveness of the $20 million of accrued interest because it improves BHC's books not to have that interest on there for when they want to bring forward future projects and seek funding. So that attachment 3-1 shows both, and the package before you is the $59,902, not the $80 million. So we brought the proposal with the upfront forgiveness of the accrued interest, and what you have is 155th forgiveness of the original principal amounts.
Okay, excluding Fairview.
Excluding Fairview.
My last question is for Ms. Moreno. Moreno, Ms. Moreno, could I ask you just one quick question? Sorry to make you come back up here again. Are you good with this?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Anthony. Sorry, he made you come all the way back here for that. All righty, any other questions from my colleagues? No? Okay. So I will just say, thank you for all the work that you have done, and like Vice Mayor Takahashi very well put and very well pointed out, what differentiates BHC from other providers, from other nonprofits in our city, is that you are 100% dedicated to affordable housing and to providing affordable housing that also serves people, childcare, activities, and as many needs as you can fit at the time being, and I know you're always looking for more. So you're much more than just affordable housing, you're a community, and you're something we desperately need to maintain in our city. Thank you for being incredibly unique, and I can't say anything more than your service is invaluable, and it's time. So let this council continue to work on the historic work that other councils have done. Who would like to make the motion? Councilmember Mullins?
I'm eager to do this. Yes, so we have two items that, one is adopt a resolution of the housing authority of the city of Burbank approving an amendment and restated master loan agreement, Phase One, and related agreements among the city of Burbank, the housing authority of the city of Burbank, and the Burbank Housing Corporation, and determining the project to be exempt under California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA. Item two is adopt a resolution of the city council of city of Burbank approving and amended and restate master loan agreement, Phase One, and related agreement among the city of Burbank, the housing authority of the city of Burbank, and the Burbank Housing Corporation, and determining the project to be exempt under SEQA. And that is it, the two resolutions.
Second. All right. Motion by Mullins, second by Takahashi. Madam City Clerk, let's take the roll. Councilmember Anthony.
Yes.
Councilmember Mullins.
Yes.
Councilmember Rizotti.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Takahashi.
Yes.
And Mayor Perez.
Yes.
Thank you. All righty, thank you all so much, and congratulations, BHC. We can't wait to see what you do next. Thank you, everybody. All right. Our next report to council is the appointment to fill vacancies on the Planning Commission and the Infrastructure Oversight Board for unexpired terms. I welcome Madam City Clerk, Kimberly Clark, to present the report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Kimberly Clark, City Clerk. Tonight I will be presenting item number eight. On November 27, 2024, the city clerk's office began advertising and accepting applications for one vacancy on the Planning Commission created by the resignation of Christopher Rizotti, who was elected to city council, congratulations again, and one vacancy on the Infrastructure Oversight Board created by the council decision to remove members the Infrastructure Oversight Board created by the council decision to remove Member Shont Cote Verdiyan from the board. Both vacancies are for unexpired terms, ending July 31st, 2025. To obtain qualified candidates, a notice of vacancy was advertised through the following: the city's website, city council meeting announcements, all social media platforms managed by the City Clerk's Office, press releases sent to the LA Times, the Burbank Leader, and my Burbank.com, notices posted on the City Hall Bulletin Board, community groups and organizations, and through a constant contact email notification. The deadline to submit applications to the City Clerk's Office was Friday, December 27th, 2024, at 5:00 PM. The City Clerk's Office received five applications for the Planning Commission. Matthew Nelson, Alan Rajicik, Mike Van Gorder, Abraham Atukanyan, and Terry Norton, I apologize if I mispronounced anyone's name. The City Clerk's Office received one application for the Infrastructure Oversight Board, Christopher DeSaw. The applications are listed in the order in which they were received. At this time, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. We will now move to public comment. My first speaker is Mr. Terry Norton, followed by Mike Van Gorder, and you will all have
Good evening, council members. My name is Terry Norton, and I'm applying for a position on the Planning Commission. Most recent fire events present us with more than just an opportunity, but the necessity to review lessons learned for all departments within the city, and especially the Planning Commission. To that end, Burbank needs members on committees that have boots-on-the-ground technical experience in many fields. I have worked for LA DWP, Glendale DWP, and LA County Fire Department. For LA County Fire Department, I've worked with the brush fire lines, providing critical service for encampments. With hands-on experience, I know the shortcomings of planning in many of the infrastructure disciplines. I have hands-on experience working with codes, ordinances, and government agencies at all levels. I have worked directly with the United States Justice Department. I've been a committee member for the State of California Code Authorities, National Standards Authorities, and many others. I presented ADA code regulation enforcement seminars to areas having jurisdiction, as well as at numerous ADA conventions regarding codes and equipment available for disabled. I have in-depth experiences, meeting with officials, developers, and the public regarding development plans and land use. I have, in my business experience, gathered and analyzed data from market research, census, and economic studies. I have years of experience and knowledge of plan making and project evaluation. I am PMI, PMP, LEED AP, State of California, C-10, C-11, Gordian JAC certified, LAUSD Facilities Division, Advanced Maintenance and Construction Planner, and many others too numerous to state here. All of this training and experience gives me knowledge of urban spatial structure, physical design, and the way in which cities work. I have the ability to analyze demographic information to discern trends in population, employment, and health, knowledge of plan making and project evaluation, mastery of techniques for involving a wide range of people in the decision-making process. I am uniquely qualified. I practice the five Ps. Proper planning prevents poor performance. It is time to make responsible decisions to plan for the future of Burbank. I will provide my communication skills, my decision-making skills, my leadership skills, and experiences to the Planning Commission in furtherance of the goals established for Burbank. I thank you for your vote.
Thank you for your comment, Terry. Our next speaker is Mike Van Gorder, followed by David Donahue.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, members of the council. I first want to note, forgive me if I seem exhausted, I spent my day at the San Antonio Racetrack volunteering. It is a wonderful volunteering opportunity. The operation is massive, the need is massive, and we had to wait in lines to volunteer. That's how big the public response has been to these wildfires. It's really incredible. So there were 60 new housing bills passed in the state of California that have been, now gone into effect as of the first of the year. Familiar, familiarity with state housing law is literally my job. I'm a state housing policy analyst, and I'm going to take great pains not to identify the specific department or my actual team to prevent a conflict of interest. But my job is land use and local government relations. I provide technical assistance to planners, to city councils, and to planning commissions. I've performed housing element reviews, which is an extremely short timeframe. It's kind of terrifying. There's only 60 days to get these things through, but we, that's part of my job. I'm a state subject matter expert on SB9 law, ADU law, state and city bonus law, Housing Accountability Act, and many others. My job is analysis, but it's also conversations with local officials, with a significant degree of messaging discipline. And what does that mean? Listening, suspending judgment, talking to these officials, talking to members of the public, talking to developers, understanding an issue before we make any action at all. We want a complete picture of what's happening before we speak as, speak as a, as a state agency. We listen, we suspend judgment, we ask questions, we collect data, and our responses are always based on data. I'm the most qualified person in terms of both technical understanding, but in terms of temperament, I got, I got my graduate degree in 2021, which I like to think makes my education the most state-of-the-art. But I was also hired immediately out of grad school, and I've been working at that same state, state agency ever since. I'm not a YIMBY, I'm not a YIMBY. My job, my, my work requires that I act in a completely non-ideological way, and that's what I want to bring to the Planning Commission. I love this city. I want to defend what makes it beautiful. I want my kids to be able to one day choose to live independently here. And we have major challenges, and they're only getting bigger. But what I can offer is analysis, foresight, and a unique perspective to meet our city's needs and protect our city's goals. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is David Donahue.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. My name is David Donahue, and I'm here to speak on behalf of Upper Ham Adakanian. He has been a planning commissioner for nine years. It's been before you, and people have been calling and talking about experience, can't it get any better than nine years on the Planning Commission? He's been there and he's done that. The opportunity to reinstall somebody who's been there can actually bring a lot of maturity and experience to that position. Council member Anthony, I followed the campaign at this city council as council election as close as anybody, I think. I will not go into the specifics of what was said at many of these meetings, particularly the Masonic Lodge, where you and Mr. Van Gorder made certain public comments. To the council members who were not there, if you were not aware, there is a certain co-governance theme that I have brought before you and has been before you before. I do not doubt that other people who are putting in their resumes to be nominated to the Planning Commission are sincere. I would ask that there was the only clear choice for a very unpolitical, unaligned position is Mr. Adakanian. So I urge you to reappoint him. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And then my last card is for Mr. Pimanta, who is not speaking, but is in support of Mr. Van Gorder. And that is all I have. You are Madam City Clerk, let us move forward.
We'll do a round, oh, I think, council members. Sorry, Councilman Mullins.
Thank you. I, I just wanted to acknowledge everyone who applied for the Planning Board Commission position, and also for the IOB. There's one position on each, so thank you for coming down, thank you for sending us emails. So we're ready to take the vote. I just wanted to acknowledge them because there's only one position on each, so it's difficult to make a choice. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mullins. All right. Councilwoman Rizotti?
I just wanted to take a moment to just, to liberate a little bit. I've been on the planning board for 12 years. We've had a tremendous amount of turnover. We have a very new board, young board. I, I really think it'd be important to have someone that is seasoned, qualified. And I do say qualified, I served with Mr. Adakanian for a long period of time. He was an excellent, excellent board member. And then also, many members of the Armenian community have reached out to me, saying that they want to see that representation. And I, I always start with qualifications first, and second, I think diversity is, is something that's important, especially in our community where we have a lot of Armenian I, I think it would be important to have someone that could step into that seat immediately and be able to, to contribute. Not everything on the planning board, especially now that you've got SB 35 and, and all these other SB9s where those, those housing issues have been taken away from the planning board. But there's a lot of other things that go on where I think having a steady hand and someone who's an attorney has helped in the past. So I just wanted to state that.
Thank you. Any other comments, deliberation, thoughts, anything? Councilor Anthony?
Good luck to Chris, that's all.
My gosh, I thought, it was like, what? He means Chris, who is applying for the one position and is the only person on the IOB. Madam City Clerk, let us proceed with the vote.
Sorry, thank you. We'll do this by a show of hands. I'll read the names. Matthew Nelson, Alan Rajicik, Mike Van Gorder, Abraham Atukanyan.
Councilor Anthony, would you like to switch our votes to make it unanimous?
Uh, yeah, sure. For, yeah, he served before.
So we can have a 5-0. All right, that is that one. And I will just say to all of the folks who applied, Terry, thank you for continuing to apply. This is never an easy choice. You've applied so many times, I, I want to put you on a commission. And Mike, I encourage you to apply because of your dedication and want to serve our community and your experience at the state. I know it would have been invaluable, so thank you both. You both bring a lot of experience to the table, and like Mr. Rizotti said, we have somebody seasoned on the board, and I hope you will be able to join them eventually. Thank you, and thank you for continuing to apply, and thank you for being here. You both clearly care about the city very much. Thank you. Councilor Anthony?
Um, I did make a joke earlier about this next vacancy. I do want to point out, council does have authority to not appoint. However, we've had discussions about this before. In previous councils, it's always been, are the applicants qualified or not? Personally, I went through the resume. Mr. DeSaw seems perfectly qualified to serve on this board, so I'm comfortable taking a vote at this time.
Oh, there you go. I thought we lost the city clerk for a second.
May I make a comment?
Vice Mayor Takahashi?
Thank you for mentioning that. I am concerned about, not just that we have one applicant, but me personally, I don't, I don't know anything about this applicant, other than what's on paper, which is fine. I appreciate the, the very thorough background, but I just, for me personally, I would like to either know them personally, met them, seen them speak, know somebody who knows them. And so I just didn't get any of that connection. So while I, I totally okay with if you all want to keep the vote, but if we do end up voting, I might abstain, I probably will abstain, because I just don't feel comfortable personally voting for someone I don't know anything about, other than a piece of paper.
Councilwoman Rizotti?
I concur. I was just disappointed that the applicant didn't reach out in an email, just an email or something, set up a, a phone call. I don't feel comfortable. Yeah, the resume looks great, but I don't know this person. There's been no reference in any way, so I don't feel comfortable voting.
That's very fair, and, and thank you, Councilor Anthony, for bringing up that, that clause that exists, because it's, it's very true. And I'll let Councilwoman Mullins share a couple of comments, and then I'll share why, why I agree with all of you.
Yeah, no, I, I concur. I mean, that was something earlier, Councilmember Anthony, I kind of looked at each other. Have you talked to him? Have you heard anything? I would have loved to have met him, had him come introduce himself at the meeting, even had a phone call, just to have that connection. The resume looks great, but it helps to have, have that connection and know, you know, what qualification, how he can do, how, kind of get an idea of who he is. So I, I want to, you know, just put it out there. I think maybe as a suggestion, we can ask that he would show up at the next council meeting or contact us or something.
So what, what I would say are two things, because I also, you know, when we see limited, limited applications for a position that has generally received a good amount of applications, it draws things into question. I did ask our city manager and their team what the window was to apply, and it was essentially the month of the holidays. So that's concerning to me, because I know we can't control when somebody leaves IOB or, or what that looks like, and this was a special case, where we actually chose to take somebody off of the, the board because they were not fulfilling their duties. And so I would like to propose that, if possible, we open this back up and come back, now that we are in the new year, at a time when folks are paying attention, can apply, and we're not basically asking them to apply right when Christmas shopping starts, and it ends right after Christmas.
We can reopen it, if you like.
Oh, and, and not to say that they're not qualified, they're clearly qualified on paper, but I agree, and to keep the standard that we have had, all the applicants for planning board, we've at least had a conversation, or I know Mr. Ektonian emailed, so we, we had the chance to have discourse with them.
I, I totally understand the reasoning and the thinking here, and I'm, you know, I'm, I'm not opposed to it. I do want to point out, we always have the authority to remove people, for, for any reason, really. There is a code of conduct, but in reality, this body can at any time remove somebody from a commission with a three-fifths vote. In addition, according to our guidelines, they are not required to do the things that we like them to do. The emails, the showing up, that is not part of the application process. There was a 30-day window. Mr. DeSaw followed the rules as they were presented. Yes, it was during the holidays. I feel it's unfair to somebody who did everything required of him with a pretty decent resume. I got to be honest. I have seen in the past, previous councils, push off the people who have applied for personal or political reasons. I believe that is not the case here. But I, I just feel like if we do this now, then there's always going to be another reason. So I, I don't know. I, I would, I don't think I would support moving it off. I would, I would rather, for me personally, appoint the one applicant, and if he doesn't do a good job, remove it.
I, I hear you, Councilor Anthony, but I'm, as you mentioned, as you brought up, it is the prerogative of the council to do this. So just, just for the public, I want to be clear and explain that this is not a, a decision we're now coming up with, a suggestion we decided to make on the fly. This is actually a prerogative reserved to the city council if we receive limited applications, because it has been the, one of the goals of council, to receive more applications for our boards and commissions, to diversify the opportunities that are on our boards and commissions, the folks applying. And it's also a goal of the City Clerk's Office to increase our, our applicants. Mr., I forgot his last name, Christopher, is, is welcome to apply again, and, and with the same exact application, and be considered amongst his peers who apply, so that, like, you know, I want to make sure.
I would move, I would like, if, sorry to interrupt, I would like to automatically apply his application.
They do.
Oh, okay, great.
Yeah, so like, he's, he's still in the pool. So just to say, like, I, what I'm trying to say is, he is not, suddenly not considered, or he doesn't get penalized for us reopening the process for more applicants, very much like job opportunities. This happens frequently, this is a common practice. If you apply to the city and we don't get enough applicants, we may extend that application window until we get a substantial candidate. window until we get a substantial candidate pool. Councilor Mullins?
Yeah, just speaking from both previous experience and knowing this can happen sometime where some candidates or some applicants, they don't know the proceed, well, it's kind of an unwritten procedure that they need to contact us, they believe once they submit their information online, the application, it speaks for itself. I know in the past, we used to encourage, and I know the city clerk does that as well, encourage to contact council, send an email, show up and speak. So, and we have had in the past also one applicant on some boards and commissions. It is a little tough, and I understand what you're saying, because my first reaction, yes, one applicant automatically gets appointed, but I would have loved to hear from him and get to know what he's going to do on this important, you know, committee that he's going to be serving on, so.
But for only six months, it's only six months.
Right. And this is the reason I wanted to go instead of, because it does take time to go back and post it. It's going to take some work on the city clerk's part to put it out, receive applications, advertise all over again, so it does take time. The other concern I have, are they able to meet if they don't have a quorum? For example, somebody's missing. So my suggestion was going to be is, we appoint him tonight, but we ask that he contact us or even show up in the council meeting, introduce himself or something, so we know who he is. As Councilmember Anthony stated, we have the prerogative to say, you know, we're not happy, or we can delay the appointment till the end of the month, until we have a chance to meet with him. We wouldn't have to make the appointment today.
Mr. City Manager, I think you had it, let me see.
Oh, just.
Go to Councilor.
As far as the current setup of the board, we do have six active members, according to our public works director, so as far as, if you did want to delay it, that's okay.
Councilor.
I would go with that suggestion. I'd like to delay it, so we can at least have a reach out and talk, and then.
Bring it back in two weeks?
Yeah, absolutely.
Same guy?
Same guy, yeah. I agree. That's fine.
Yeah, either one is okay with me. I, you know, just wanted to put it out there for me, that I understand if folks are okay with voting in somebody they haven't met, that's totally fine with me. But for me personally, because having been on three different commissions and other boards and other bodies that have to work together, is that it's not just for me about the qualifications. That's important. But a lot of it for me too, is the way that the person works with other people, the way that they present themselves, the way they are, their demeanor, and you can't know that on a piece of paper. So what if they end up being a very argumentative person, or they're, you know, always going on a tangent, or they, you know, so there's just like, I feel like there's some amount of information we get by meeting them to know whether they're a good fit for that particular group of people. And so that's part of it, this is part of the equation for me, that's why it's important. But I totally understand if it's not part of the equation of the other council members, so if, you know, but I just want to let you know that for me, that's part of it for me, so I do want to meet them.
Yeah, absolutely. I think it's been an equation for all of us, but in fairness, right, it's not a written rule, and you only know if you're in the know. But for me, I think when I saw just one applicant, this is a very important board. It is, you know, they overlook at, they overlook a lot of, or they look over a lot of our items that then come to council for review. As somebody who's had the chance to sit in at their meetings and watch the work they conduct, it's not dissimilar to a lot of the things that we are looking at infrastructurally. And it's helpful to have people who have this experience and also this passion for it. And generally, in the past, when we receive applications for IOB, it's a good chunk of folks. We've received 10, you know, seven applicants, and that's why I had no issue with proceeding with planning tonight, because we had substantial interest. But with the IOB, I personally would have liked to open it up, to receive more applicants, and maybe we would have appointed Christopher, but maybe it would have given somebody else a chance to apply, and we would have had that healthy competition. So, I don't know, I know.
I can go either way with it, Madam Mayor.
I would love to just come back in two weeks, same appointment, have us time to reach out, his phone number's in the resume, I'll definitely give him a call tomorrow, and maybe have him come down and do a little three minutes, and then if at that point, we're like, eh, then we move on, get somebody else. Right?
He's the only applicant we're going to go eh.
But that's what I'm saying. Madam City Clerk?
Thank you. I just wanted to say that Councilmember Tagahashi had asked us a while back if we could add some language to the initial email, and we have that in there now. We tell them when the meeting will be, we tell them, though it's not mandatory, you're encouraged to come down and introduce yourself. We also give them the option of calling in to speak during public comment, or emailing the council at citycouncil@burbankca.gov. So that's the second line of the email that went out, just so everybody knows, we are doing that, and people who call in, we tell them that.
That's really important information, and Councilor Anthony, I respect you, appreciate it, I'm going to stick to my guns on this one. I think, I think it should be opened up, if you want to propose otherwise.
He comes back in two weeks and says he's dealing with, like, family that's dealing with the fires, I'll be like.
Then he's still in the pool, he's right there. He, nothing has changed, it just has given others the opportunity to have healthy competition. So when and if he gets appointed, he knows he did it on his own merit. But that's just my opinion. If anybody would like to make a different motion, I see different, I see consensus from you all for both ideas, so.
Now that I've, thank you for coming, because we talked about it, but I don't know if we ever, like, circled back. So now that I've heard that, I do feel like I would like to open it up, because they got, Christopher got plenty of information on how to contact us, and it wasn't like we were hiding it, and we're very approachable. So I think I would lean more towards opening it up at this point.
Okay, then, I'm going to be bad cop. I would like to open up the process, I'm going to make a motion to reopen up the application process for IOB.
Would we have the standard 30 days? Because I don't think we can bring it back in two weeks, I don't think there's enough time to turn it around.
If my colleagues are amenable, I think standard 30 days is fine, given that they have six members that are perfectly functional.
And I will reach out to Mr. DeSau personally and tell him what happened and that we're progressing.
Hasn't happened yet, there's no second.
Oh, sorry.
I'll second, I'll second.
And if it passes, please let him know, Ms. Clark, that also, it's on the, he's welcome to watch the meeting, and it's on the basis of folks haven't heard from him, and also from at least the mayor's opinion. It is the fact that there is a small candidate pool, it's nothing personal, we'd like to see more applicants, and we think we can get some more in the next few months, or the next month. All right, let's go for a vote.
Councilmember Anthony?
I'm going to vote no.
Councilmember Mullins?
I'll just go with it, yes, okay.
Councilmember Razadi?
Oh geez, yes.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tagahashi?
I'm yapping me for my name, yes.
And Mayor Perez?
Yes, thank you for the enthusiasm, everybody. Thank you for the enthusiasm in the back of the room. Appreciate you all.
If I may, I want to add this, that hopefully whoever is watching and want to apply in the future for boards and commissions to know the drill of reaching out, contacting council, because to be fair, some of the individuals who applied for the planning commission didn't even reach, didn't even email us. The ones that did, obviously, we interviewed them, we talked to them, we've met them before, but there were some on here I don't even know, because they didn't reach out. So it's going to take some time to get people to get into the habit of contacting us.
Definitely, and thank you, Vice Mayor Tagahashi, for suggesting that we include that language in the email that goes out to folks, you know? They receive that notice, please take it seriously, we like to hear from you here, and many of us really just consider you if you're qualified and if we hear from you.
Madam Mayor, reach out to council members if you choose to do so individually, and do not share.
Yes, do not.
Impressions and thoughts, so as to comply.
Do not reach out to all of us at once, do not violate the Brown Act, reach out to individually, although we do get emails that go entirely to council just introducing themselves.
One-way communications are okay.
Thank you. Alrighty. The third report to council tonight is the approval of Burbank Water and Power's solar net billing program. I welcome Drew Johnston, Sustainability Officer with Burbank Water and Power, to present the report. Welcome, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. I'm Drew Johnston, I'm your Sustainability Officer at Burbank Water and Power, and I'm joined tonight by Drew Kidd, who's an Electrical Engineer and Marketing Associate in our Sustainability Division. We're both clean energy supporters, so it's really exciting for us to come tonight to talk about BWP's proposal for a update to our customer solar program. It's a legacy program, it's been in place for about 30 years with little to no modification, and the proposed program tonight, we feel really aligns with the utility's strategic mission to provide reliable, affordable, and sustainable utility services. So we're coming to you tonight because we've actually reached a milestone. The last few months, we now have over 1,800 solar systems on customer properties that are interconnected to BWP's grid, and cumulatively, that represents over 16 megawatts of power. And that also equates to just over 5% of the utility's peak demand. And that 5% is an important threshold, because the state regulation that requires utilities to implement a solar net metering program back in 1995, also had provisions in it that said utilities could eliminate their solar net metering program or update it after that 5% threshold. We don't want to eliminate our solar program, we want to update it with something that represents the energy market of today. So we'll be requesting that the council approve the transition from our current solar net energy metering program to what's called a solar net billing program. We're going to ask you to approve the methodology for determining the value of customers' solar energy when it's exported to the grid, and allow the Burbank Water and Power General Manager to make administrative changes to that methodology over time. So if you can please pull up the slideshow, thank you. So let's talk about solar net energy metering. This is a policy that I mentioned has been in place since 1995. It basically allows our customers to install solar, have it interconnect both to their property and the grid. Energy from that system is either used onsite, or it's sent back to the BWP grid, and if the customer needs energy from the grid, it is available as well. So there's this ebb and flow of electricity, and it's metered, and customers are billed monthly for the net energy that they use, or if they've generated more electricity over the course of that month, then they'll be, they'll be shown energy credits on their account, and those credits can be banked and rolled over month to month. The value of that electricity to the customer is Burbank Water Power's retail rate. You'll see in the upcoming slides about 14 to 22 cents, and it's that value, whether it's imported or exported, it's the same under NEM 1.0. And so the law, which is SB 656, back in 1995, it was written to have utilities pay a premium to encourage private investment in solar and spur the renewable energy industry. It enabled solar customers to send that power that they didn't immediately use onto the grid, and in exchange, utilities were required to provide those customers with bill credits at the full retail rate, at least until customer solar interconnections reached a cap of 5% of the utility's peak demand. Our neighbors in Southern California Edison Territory, SCE, they reached their cap of 5% back in 2016, so they've been on NEM 2.0, now they're on a NEM 3.0. Our peers in Riverside Public Utilities, they've also transitioned to this new net metering program. Pasadena is looking into it right now, and Glendale remains on NEM 1.0 for now. So we want to ensure existing customers that have solar, that for most intents and purposes, our proposal tonight won't affect them. Existing solar systems that have been interconnected would be grandfathered under today's net metering program. And, you know, we understand that folks invested a lot of money at the time with certain assumptions based on, a set of assumptions at the time, so our plan is to grandfather existing customers into the existing rate for 20 years past the launch of a new program. So let's talk about the priorities for this new solar net billing program, as we're calling it. It'll be similar to NEM 3.0 and other utility territories, but there'll be efficiencies to our process and rates that are specific to Burbank. First and foremost, our top priority is to compensate for solar export to the grid at a fair rate. As a municipal utility, we are committed to aligning rates that cover costs and are fair to all ratepayers. And in today's energy market, NEM 1.0 is outdated. The existing rate structure has B2P compensating solar export of the grid at a value that's greater than what the energy is worth to Burbank Water and Power. So a change to how B2P compensates is necessary. And if we can achieve that first goal, then we can increase the size caps for solar. Customers will then enjoy more flexibility for sizing their solar systems and the ability to maximize their rooftops, if that's their desire. We will also simplify our design review process, saving our customers and the installers time at the start of their journey. We'll talk about the, like, review process for any systems under 10 KW will be streamlined and approved much more quickly. The average solar system installed in Burbank is around 6 KW, so we think this streamline for under 10 KW will be a big benefit. And third, the new program will introduce time of use rates to our solar customers. The value of solar when it's exported to the grid is different at different times of day, so the new rate will compensate for excess generation export of the grid at a rate that reflects the value to Burbank Water and Power at the time it's exported. So the design of the proposed rate includes time of use periods with rates that vary on the value of electricity throughout the time of day and season, and B2P will monitor and update the rate over time, as we do with all of our rates, hence the request to have our general manager be allowed to do administrative updates to the rate. So what prompts enrollment in the new program? Well, new programs expected to launch at earliest July of 2025, but more realistically, it's looking like January of 2026, and this is due to, due to some technology improvements that we're implementing at the utility that are taking time. So after that point, new solar customers after that launch would be enrolled. Another trigger for the new program enrollment is if an existing program enlarges their system, adds panels, which would require a new interconnection agreement, therefore triggering enrollment. General maintenance of a system or replacing inverters or non-working panels wouldn't trigger a new interconnection agreement. All right, I'm now going to pass it over to Drew Kidd to take over the remainder of the presentation and discuss the program in more detail, including the methodology. Thanks.
Thank you, Drew. So what's different with solar net billing? As part of the new rate, Burbank Water and Power will get rid of the concept of netting energy and the kilowatt hour solar credit for these new customers. Instead, the program will compensate customers in a dollar amount on each bill for the energy that they send back to the grid. This energy sent back to the grid will be compensated in what we call the avoided cost of energy, or ACOE, which reflects the value of that energy to Burbank Water and Power at the time it is sent to Burbank Water and Power. The avoided cost of energy, as I mentioned, is the value of customer solar generation to Burbank Water and Power, and it's made up of two parts, the avoided generation and the renewable attribute. The avoided generation refers to energy generation the utility doesn't have to pay for, which is instead provided by the customer's solar system, and at this time, it's worth between 5.96 and 10.86 cents, depending on the time of day and season. The renewable attribute refers to the extra value of renewable energy, which solar energy is considered, which is currently worth one cent. An important note is that these numbers are not static, they are the results of applying a methodology to current market price curves. This means these costs will be evaluated and updated as needed as market conditions change, so if energy and renewable energy credits become more costly to the utility, the financial benefit to solars will increase as well, not just by offsetting their costs, but also through our compensation. The avoided cost of energy is less than the retail rate. This is because the energy sent to the grid by solar customers doesn't carry all the other costs it serves that the utility does. Our retail rates have to cover all the operating costs necessary to serve its customers, grid maintenance, reliability, billing, and customer service. When a customer sends solar energy to the grid, it doesn't eliminate those additional costs to the utility. So Burbank Water and Power will only compensate customers for the costs that have been saved, which is the cost of the energy itself. On this slide, we compare the existing tiered residential rate on the left to the new proposed solar rate on the right. The tiered rate on the left varies based on how much energy a customer uses. When a customer uses more than 300 kilowatt hours in a month, they pay tier-two prices. The new solar rate. tier-two prices. The new solar rate that is being proposed is a time-of-use rate with two parts: the retail rate the customer pays Burbank Water and Power for the energy they take from the grid, and the avoided cost of energy compensation rate that customers are given for solar energy sent to the grid. So peak periods are times when demands on their grid are highest, and when energy costs to the utility are most expensive, largely from air conditioning during the summer. The 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. peak also coincides with the time of day when solar begins to generate less as the sun goes down. So our proposed rates take into account the different costs of energy for the time of day and season. The retail rates are less expensive during non-peak periods, and the export rate is less valuable during non-peak periods, which mirrors market costs and encourages customers to use more energy during those times. The retail rate gets more expensive during peak periods, and the export rate is also higher during peak periods, which discourages customers from using energy during that time and encourages more solar export at that time to support the grid. And this also encourages, it provides a greater incentive for battery storage, as this would allow for more solar energy to offset use during the peak period. As a reminder, under NEM 1.0, our current system, solar credits can offset any kilowatt-hour of energy, meaning the solar credit's value is the same as the retail rate, making it worth between 14 and 22 cents for current residential tiered solar customers. Looking at our new rate, our export rate is worth between 7 and 12 cents, which is based, again, on that calculated avoided cost of energy. For our average residential customers with maximum allowable size systems between the two different programs, it means a difference of about $9 a month on their total bills, and a change in payback period from about six years to 10 years, which is within the 25-year useful life of a solar system. This slide shows a side-by-side comparison of some of the other elements of the two different programs. One thing that's staying the same between NEM 1.0 and the new program are annual checks for any excess credits. Customers can request that we provide them annual check for excess credits currently at what we call our net surplus compensation rate, which is 4 and 1/2 cents. Or, under the new program, it would just be whatever dollar amount that they have continued to roll over to the end of the year. Another requirement that's staying the same is the requirement for a performance meter. This is a separate meter that measures the solar generation specifically. It's useful for our system planning, and it's also useful for customers to track their solar production. One major difference is what we mentioned, that this new program is a time-of-use rate instead of a tiered rate. Another large difference is that, under our current program, we have a 1-megawatt size limit for large commercial solar, and we are proposing increasing it to 5 megawatts under this system. We do have some customers that would be able to take advantage of that. They currently have roof space and have maxed out close to the 1-megawatt limit that we currently have. Another large thing, another large difference between this program and the old program is allowing for oversizing. Our new program, our current program, only allows for customers to install solar systems up to 100% of annual use. This new program would allow installing systems up to 150% of their annual energy use, based on their last 12 months of bills. And this helps customers look to the future and prepare for electrification with electric vehicles or other household appliances. Drew mentioned this earlier, but we also propose a limited size review for systems under 10 KW. Over 90% of the systems that we review would fit this, and so this means removing probably at least two weeks of the review process from all these systems coming in at under that size. And then finally, we propose simplifying the interconnection agreement. It's currently a 12-page document, and we want to reduce it to a 1 to 2-page document by moving some sections back into the rules and regulations and just simplifying some of the language. So with that, Burbank Water and Power requests that Burbank City Council approve the transition from the current NEM 1.0 solar program to the solar net billing program, and the approval of the methodology for determining the avoided cost of energy, and to allow the General Manager to make administrative changes to the methodology. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the presentation. We appreciate it. And before we go to council questions and deliberations, we have two public comments this evening on this item. Mr. David Donahue, followed by Mr. Ron Backs.
Mayor Perez, Vice Mayor Takahashi, council members and staff, my name is David Donahue. For those of you, well, all of you know that I follow Burbank Water and Power extremely closely. When I first came in this chamber and I heard IRP didn't know what it was, I do now. Here's another one I'm going to throw at you that I love to be able to understand: the GG RP. Heard that said once, I'm like, what are those four letters? Greenhouse Gas Reduction Plan. Holy cow. So a little bit of background. This is the third presentation, but then I've heard from the two Drews, and they continue to do a fantastic job. They also presented, the last time I saw them was at the Burbank Association of Realtors, where they were in front of a group of people that are like, well, you're going to do what? So one thing that triggers, another thing that I'm not sure was mentioned, if I missed it, I apologize, is if you sell your house, you then are also going to have to go to the change. So this is a cost issue. I'm in construction. ADUs. ADUs are required to have them unless they're factory-built. You don't have, you have an exception. It's a cost issue. The greenhouse gas reduction plan, and I thank Burbank Water and Power for being able to preside this number, and I'll say it again, is $2 billion. The city, $2 billion. The very good people of the Burbank Tenants Union, I believe members of them, were advocating for, "Let's Go Green Sooner." Holy cow. Do you know what that's going to do to people? That's going to put a whole lot more cost on. We're not, we're just talking about one component. Ms. Samra was brilliant when she'd be able to say, "I can only pick a point in time and give you some cost estimates." She did that with the IRP. This is just a point in time. There are 20,000 things that are affecting the cost. I just got to grab one, and I'm going to try to say, "This is the percentage that's going to go up." Oh my gosh, that's complicated. The most complicated agency this city has, as I see it, is Burbank Water and Power. How it affects how we're going to do the GG RP, the IRP, and do all these net metering comes to you to understand. And the cost to the Burbank residents is critical. And understanding it is the most vital thing you can do. These people are brilliant. They'll give you all the information more than you're going to be able to digest. It takes time. Take them up on it. Study it, and how it's going to affect the ratepayers in this city. So thank you for your consideration. Please be mindful. Yes, it has to happen to change. The cost is, I agree, everything that the proposal says, it is. But I'm the rare person that understands just what they said. Most of Burbank is going to go, "What the hell just happened?" So just be ready, and I do support it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Mr. Backs?
Good evening again, council. The humor at the back of the room was the city attorney doing a straight man. Thank you. Let's go, let's look at the presentation. First thing I saw was Slide number three, grandfathered up to 20 years. Does that mean I'll wake up tomorrow and it's one year? Thank you. Fairly compensate for solar exported to the grid? I think the following pages belie that. Adding panels? Okay. My system was sized for 100%. I checked. The last time I checked, I'm only getting 75%, okay? Panels were 280 watts when I put them in. They soon went up to 300. I don't know what they're at now. What if I change the panels? Or better yet, what I just heard here, what if they hit the end of life on my panels and I have to change them? Do I suddenly go from a net-metered customer? I forgot to mention that part. I am a net-metered customer. Okay? And I had no problem with Slide number six until I got farther in here onto Slide nine. And what did I put an asterisk over here for? Oh, probably because I think presently, you separate the cost of the energy from the infrastructure costs. I don't understand why they feel that we solar people are getting an advantage over the non-solar people. Let's look at Slide nine, like I said. The off-peak time from 10 o'clock at night to 8:00 in the morning, 75%. Well, the way I read it, you're going to pay a 7 cents a kilowatt-hour for that energy, and you're going to sell it for nearly 12 cents. Well, my panels don't work very well from moon glow, okay? From 11 o'clock at night till 8:00 in the morning, there's not much energy being developed. Then, when you come down here to the off-peak, I'm sorry, the mid-peak time, which is the majority of the time, you're going to pay 7 cents and sell it for 21? That's a 200% profit. In the peak, it's only 166% profit when air conditioning's being run. Now, as far as the cost, I think on here on, small print, you're right, whoever said this, small print, where it says the time-use rate, it should be a time-use credit. If I give you a kilowatt-hour in a peak time, you should be able to compensate me for it in a peak time when I need it, okay? And an off-peak time, et cetera, et cetera. And, oh, oversized allowed? Yeah, like I said, I was not allowed to oversize mine. In fact, that was a pitched battle of trying to get my meter put on my garage. And since I only have 18 seconds, and with the power loss we had here, I've always wondered why the city meter disconnects when the grid goes down to protect the grid. Why can't, I'm sorry, my panels disconnect, microinverse, why can't the city meter disconnect when it goes down? So when we lost power here, I had the expectation, when the same sun came up, my refrigerators would run.
Thank you for your comment. All right. Any response from our BWP staff?
I took notes, and I hope Drew will back me up if I miss anything from the last comments. First, to Mr. Backs's comments about Slide three, about saying up to 20 years, what we're referring to in that case of up to is just there are those cases where the grandfathering could end that we outlined. So it would be 20 years if you do not upgrade your system or if it changes hands or any of those other reasons that we outlined why the grandfathering might end. But it would be 20 years if you don't, if none of those happen. And then adding panels, he mentioned some of the reasons why you might add panels, and some of them are mentioned about being towards the end of life. Well, if that's the case, then, as we understand it, the solar system should have paid itself off by that time. We think if you're adding panels, then you're making a new investment, and you would be going into investment with the knowledge of our current rates that we will make public to everybody. Drew, do you have any more comments? Okay. And then, there are a few comments on the rate itself. I want to, there are a couple of things I keyed into there personally. One was about the 11.78 cents versus, a lot of it's about the comparison between what our retail rate is and the avoided cost of energy. And again, as we said, this isn't about profit. It isn't selling the energy back at a profit. It's about the cost the utility has when we deliver energy to a customer, which, again, is that customer service, the maintenance, all those things. And again, the customer not having those same costs when they provide energy back to us. That's the reason for the difference between those rates. And I did want to point out, too, that these off-peak rates in winter and summer, the 11.78 cents, that is less than the tier-one rate, too. So there are some advantages to this rate. And again, a lot of the reason for the structure of these time-of-use rates have to do with encouraging behavior that models how our market prices on the grid.
All right. Thank you so much for that response. Council, questions? Councilor Mullins?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, and a lot of information. And I think in my discussion with staff, I said I had to read this report a couple of times to go over and highlight certain areas in regards to solar. So there is an interesting concept of, one is, we need to allow for 150% for the consumers to be able to install panels up to 150%, to allow them for future use, buying an electric car, electrification in their units or in their house that they were not counting on for the use from last year, for example. That is, I think, it's a good thing that we're doing because a lot of customers that wanted to install and expand, looking forward to having an electric car, or two, weren't allowed to do under the current system because you only allowed them to do it at 100% based on their usage from the prior year. So I think this is a good step moving forward, that we're allowing that to happen. Also, I know that we are jumping to NEM 3, where I looked at other cities, and, for example, Glendale and Pasadena are still at 2, based on the 2016 requirement. So I know that we're ahead of the game, and we're trying to be more proactive. But I do have concerns, to what extent do we want to encourage people to go green? So I want to hear from you, you know, I don't know if you guys are aware of the new laws that just passed, SB 25, SB 234, AB 332, all these new laws that just passed in California, which actually advance our energy, the green energy, from 2045 to 2030, which allow the carbon neutrality goals to be advanced in 2035. There is also new laws that have been put in place to do more EV chargers, especially in neighborhoods, you know, unserved neighborhoods. So there's been a lot of push from the state to go greener, faster. And so are we doing disservice to our community by putting a lot more restrictions on them installing solar because of the new billing system of how they're going to net their billing? And then, actually, they're not going to benefit of 150% unless they really get a battery. I know we're not requiring them to get a battery, but the battery costs $12,000 to store that extra energy to be able to use it at a future date. So I'm looking at a lot, I'm throwing all these things out there because there's so much going on with the solar, so much going on with this program, that some of it concerns me because I don't want to make it a disadvantage for our residents to install solars. I want them to be able to do it because of all the requirements that we're pushing ahead, not us, the city, the state is pushing, for our residents to comply, for the city to comply. So I gave you a lot of information. I want to hear, why is it, you know, why are we making it almost difficult for them to be able to cash in on their investment? It's a lot of money to install solar. So what is our goal? To encourage people to do it or discourage them to do it?
Yeah, well, I'd say first priority is for BWP to pay equitable and fair rates for the electricity that's being sent back to us. I think this new rate proposal encourages self-consumption. So the solar you install, we encourage you to use that energy most effectively during the solar production hours. If you can shift that usage of your heat pumps to the middle of the day, that'd be a great way to utilize that solar. But when you send electricity back to the grid, we feel it's most fair, as a nonprofit municipal utility, to pay our avoided cost of energy and not to overpay. If we can buy energy, even renewable energy, on the market for 7 to 12 cents, paying 22 cents means that we're losing money on every solar customer. That said, it's still a good investment, I would say, as a customer, to go solar, even with this new program proposal. It encourages self-consumption. It encourages battery storage. It encourages behavior shifting usage to the middle of the day or overnight when electricity is less expensive, even less expensive than current tiered rates. So I think people will really like the time-of-use rate once they figure that out. And then, also, when it comes to like payback period, I think we've done modeling, and under the new program, it's around 10 years, which I think, you know, and solar lasts for 20, 25 years. So it should pay for itself more than twice over the life of the system. And because if we're paying fair rates for it, we'll allow that oversizing, as you mentioned, up to 150%. So I feel like first priority, fair rates, then we can oversize, and we can also simplify. We don't want to make it difficult for our customers to go solar. We're talking about simplifying a lot of the processes with this new program as well, with the interconnection agreement, streamlined reviews, because we want to speed up the process.
Well, there is a difference, and I appreciate speeding the process because it's very complicated. And we get emails, and help me because I need to get my permit processed, and I'm losing time here. So we've seen those emails. So I appreciate that. I appreciate that you're expanding the actual size of the system. But I also don't want to mislead anybody that you, people don't receive checks back from the city, that they can use those credits applying for future that they can use those credits applying for future billing in the event your system doesn't produce enough kilowatt based on the sun, of course. So on the gloomy days, you don't really produce that much energy. And so therefore you use your credit towards paying your bills. So you're not issuing a check. I don't want, I think it's important to be realistic that we're not writing checks at the end of every year saying, here's $3,000 back to you, because that's not really how it works.
If I could supplement the answer, there's a legal issue in here. And that is that if BWP credits you an amount that's more than the energy costs and they apply that credit to full-cost power that you need on a cloudy day, the other rate payers are subsidizing your distribution costs. And they, BWP has to be very careful. All of our enterprise funds have to be very careful to avoid setting up a system where one class of customers is subsidizing the service of another class of customer. Now, this is kind of a complicated situation. It's not a direct subsidy, but they're discounting the distribution services, which are actually quite expensive and require, you know, constant maintenance. And they also have other costs like ECC costs for programming the electricity so that that rate that they charge for electricity is the rate they charge for everything. And if they give you a credit just for the solar you don't need and you get to use that for everything else, you're not paying all of those bundled services that you're getting, the distribution, the maintenance, the energy scheduling and everything else that most people pay that aren't getting a credit for solar at a retail rate.
And thank you for the explanation. And but we also have to understand that that consumer who has solar are not pulling energy from the grid. They're pulling directly from the credit they have, assume they have that credit or because of the production in their solar. So unless I'm mistaken, it really isn't our benefit to make sure that the load is not all coming from water and power, that those are extra energy units that have been stored for us. So if you can explain, maybe I don't understand it correctly. So if you can explain that to me.
Are you asking to explain the credit system and how that works after you accrue credits?
So if someone has the production, let's say the sun, beautiful day, sunny, whatever, so we got a hundred kilowatt hour. Not, you don't get that much, I know that, it's like minimal. But you're using that electricity throughout the day. Would you be pulling that electricity directly from water and power or is it coming from the solar through the meter that you have installed in your property? Where is that coming from?
Yeah, so if it's during the day, your solar system's generating, that's going to be offsetting the usage at your property first. If you need electricity beyond what your solar system is providing, then of course you can pull from the grid.
Okay, so that is helpful, right? Because then we're not using the grid, we're not putting the, we're not putting that pressure on our grid pulling that electricity.
You still would. You're still relying on BWP's grid for excess energy at night.
Excess energy, anything exceeding to what already you can get.
Part of the problem is, let's say you're on vacation and your system is generating electricity and it's putting all that electricity onto the grid and you're getting a credit at a full retail bundled rate, but the commodity is only worth four cents or six cents and they're paying you fourteen. You're getting a credit and then when you need energy, you're getting more expensive energy, but you only gave a benefit of about four cents and they're having to give you a credit of fourteen. So they're losing ten cents on every kilowatt. When it's cloudy or you're, you know, you come back from vacation after dark and you're not generating electricity, the credit costs them more than the benefit your solar system gave them when you weren't using it. In other words, the other rate payers are having to make up ten cents theoretically. Is that right?
This is Mondi, General Manager of Burbank Water and Power. One of the things I'll add to that wasn't mentioned in this presentation is during the day, we actually suffer a lot of negative pricing where we're actually told to take solar off the grid because there's too much solar from the grid. And sometimes it's worth negative, like we will get paid if we don't take it off. Like we will get charged. So in this case, when it is produced, it is at the lowest value of energy during the day. And when we need the energy when it's not being produced, we're buying it at the retail rate, sometimes at a hundred, a hundred and fifty dollars a megawatt hour, significantly more during the summertime. So it doesn't get stored, it's used the second it's produced. And then when it's not produced, we do have to rely on BWP to provide that energy. So at night, on cloudy days, on super peak, six to eight, four to nine sometimes, we do supply that energy at a higher cost.
Thank you. So what is the advantage of us encouraging going solar, going greener? Because obviously it's a catch-22. We want people to do it because we're trying to go green. There's more laws that have taken effect as of January. And so I, if somebody is listening to this discussion right now, they're going to say, well, I don't know, is it worth it to spend twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars to install solar on my property? Is it worth it? Because obviously it's not worth it for the city because it impacts us with our rates, but is it even worth it to a customer to do that?
No, I mean, it's a win-win for everyone when people install solar on their properties. And it's an investment decision that proprietors are going to have to make for them. Because you're right, it is a big upfront investment. There is a federal tax credit right now of thirty percent, so do get that. And we are going to be launching a battery energy storage incentive this summer, which will help with the upfront cost of batteries. But the more people that install solar, that's, it does reduce the amount of renewables that we have to procure with those state mandates called the Renewable Portfolio Standard. It does help the utility in that aspect, so we don't procure as much renewables. So that's why we, when it comes to our avoided cost of energy, we are paying our customers our avoided cost of energy plus the renewable attribute. So that's like another like cent or so adder. And that's like the renewable attribute that's added to the avoided energy cost. So, but then, yeah, when it comes to what the return on, rate of return is on investing in solar, that's something that we encourage folks to get multiple bids from local installers to see what the costs are, what size system. And because we're, we'd be converting everyone over to a time-of-use rate, I'd want to look at when people use energy. And so it'll have to be modeled, the return investment and payback, and it'll be unique to every customer.
Thank you. I have a couple more questions regarding. So I want to move on to existing customers. As Mr. Bax also indicated, I know it's kind of misleading when you first look at the presentation. It says that continue support your grandfather for twenty years, but then reading the fine line, reading, knowing that it says if you increase the size, what happens, like Mr. Bax said, your panel breaks and it does happen or it stops for lack of production, something goes wrong with it. And you're still the same owner, you haven't changed, but you need to change the panel. You need to, now you purchased two electric vehicles and you need to upgrade the electric vehicles. What we're saying is we're automatically going to take you out of the current system and put you into the new system, even though you've already made your investment and you already have your solar system in place.
What we're proposing is that if your system needs general maintenance, like if you're just replacing panels like-for-like or an inverter goes out after ten years, which is common, inverters last ten years, and you've replaced that, that wouldn't trigger moving over to the new system. But if you're going to be adding onto the system, making it larger, that would trigger moving over to the new system. That's how it's proposed right now.
So even though you have all your panels, but like I said, you bought two electric vehicles, which we're, obviously the law is saying right now, more and more. You got to go buy those electric vehicles. And we know we don't have enough infrastructure for EV chargers here in the city of Burbank. I mean, we have some, but we don't have enough for everybody. So that triggers an increase in going at really the contract you originally signed with the city saying now you have to pay. And I think that's what Mr. Bax was referring to. Is anything that you're going to change to upgrade your system? So I'm hearing you first, you say if you have to replace it because it's broken or anything is wrong. If you change your name, somebody in the household no longer lives there. Does that trigger a new rate increase? Let's say, God forbid, somebody passes away and it was under somebody's name and now you're changing, adding your name on it. And it's the same household, it's same last name, but that person doesn't live there anymore. Does that trigger a new rate increase or a different rate?
That is a unique circumstance. We didn't talk about a death in the family and moving that over.
Well, death, divorce, marriage, there's a lot of things that can happen.
We didn't write in the staff report and the proposal that if the home changes hands to a new owner, that's a new customer for BWP, that would require a new interconnection agreement and that would trigger it.
But if it's, if it's a circumstance that happened in the household. I mean, it does happen. People pass on or get divorced or get married and they have to change names. I mean, I think we need to take a look at these situations because what if it happens and you're saying just because you're changing the name, it's the same family member, that means the house is not being sold?
We can provide reasonable exceptions. You know, we are able to review these case-by-case issues and provide reasonable exceptions if that comes to pass. These are things we do with a lot of our programs.
Counselor Mullins, if I might, I think, I was going to bring this up later when we came back full circle, but since we're discussing it now for the sake of the discussion. When Mr. Donahue brought that up, that did get me thinking about the change in homeownership. I understand if you sell your house, it's a new BWP customer, but what happens if you inherit that house? What happens if you, you know, those things? There's already so much that goes into inherited property. I would hate to add another layer for folks who did not go into this contract knowingly in the way a homeowner who is purchasing for the first time would. So we have not considered that yet. If counsel's amenable, I would like for the consideration to be that those things don't apply your grandfathered in. Counselor Mullins, are you still?
I'm still, but I, I.
If it's on this follow-up?
Okay, if you're done, when you're done, I'll come back to this. It's part of something I wanted to ask.
Okay.
And that is, the whole grandfather, I understand, selling the house, even when you make an investment and you're selling the house, I think it's still, you're selling the house with the hope that you're going to cash on your investment. But a lot of situation happens within the same family, within the same household, whether you change your name, somebody passes away, somebody gets married, somebody gets divorced, you inherit the house from your parents. I don't believe that we need to make it that complicated and I guess it's the council's decision to force really people to change the current contract that they have. Now, going in and putting a whole brand-new system in there or buying a house and knowing, okay, I'm buying a house, I'm going to have to be responsible for a new billing, that's understandable. But I think we need to be also fair for those who made the investment in their homes and situations that come up that we just have to understand making a policy that we need to be fair for those who already signed a contract, who already have, they have one system or another.
And I'll just provide some commentary here. On a case-by-case basis, the general manager does get situations like this. So we do need to hear from customers when this happens. We do listen, we do follow through. We can't list every single exception on a contract, but we do follow through, listen and make some exceptions. And I think you bring up very valid places where exceptions are necessary. And I think that should be something that could be covered under, I think, the GM's authority. City attorney, please comment if you disagree, but I believe we do have authority here, here and there to do that.
Yes, there are many, there's innumerable connections, connection charges. You know, during the pandemic, we had all kinds of administrative decisions that had to be made about bills and bill collections. So there is ample authority to do that. But the question is whether counsel is comfortable with that or wants something else.
I am personally not comfortable because we've seen people come and go and it's just a fact of life. And, you know, working in government thirty-seven years, we're all running around looking for that document. Where did it say that? Do you remember seeing it? I like to see things black and white.
I thought you were supposed to keep it as the former city clerk.
Yeah, I did, but even that, we have to look for it in boxes and boxes. So thank you for reminding me. But I think it's important to be clear, black and white. So anybody walks in that door, they know exactly what we have, what policy we have. We don't need to be searching for something that council approved ten, fifteen years ago. Thank you.
To Counselor Mullins's point, if, you know, I hear you and then I share a lot of those thoughts. I think it's important to have, you know, at the discretion of the general manager in there because there are going to be extenuating circumstances that we can't foresee. But inheritance and divorce are very common. And I think including at least inheritance in there. It's something that happens very commonly and we are not blind to the fact that there are already many issues with folks who inherit homes and their property taxes and all of those things that come down. That's a simple one, that happens a lot, especially in the city. And we could already include that specifically.
I think, yeah, anything that generates, you know, not selling of a home, because it's very easy to know if the house has been sold, right? You just look at the records and know that the house has been sold. But if it's within the same, you know, inheritance, death, marriage, divorces, anything like that, as long as it did not generate a sale of a house, I think we should be honoring our grandfather system in there, not putting them in a new billing.
Whatever the legal term for that was, Joe.
I think, you know.
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't use grandfathering necessarily. I mean, that's a kind of a colloquial term. Legal nonconforming is what complies, is what applies in the land use context. In this case, the question is whether a, an existing interconnection agreement can be assumed or can be amended under certain circumstances. So an interconnection agreement shall remain valid with changes in the household that don't result in, you know, changing the title and the property or something like that. That's something that's pretty clear and should be easy to implement. That's different, you know, accounting for household changes, right? There can be many names to what the household changes, additions, subtractions. Versus real property transfers, but inheritance versus a sale. You know, I mean, so, but those can be identified, right? Different, so that's the question. We can put words to it.
That's why I pay you the big bucks. Counselor Anthony?
Thank you. So I'm going to ask a series of questions. And I'm hopeful that through these series of questions, my colleagues will understand that we actually should get rid of the grandfather clause completely and move everybody to the new billing immediately. All right.
Maybe you should have gone first so you know what you had in mind.
No sleight of hand.
No sleight of hand, watch, there'll be some magic. Watch this. So, under the current system, every resident, solar or non-solar, every commercial, solar or non-solar, the airport, the school district, they're all on tiered metering, everybody in the city.
Residential customers.
Residential customers.
All business customers are on time-of-use rates.
When did that change?
Time-of-use has been around a long time. No, commercial.
Commercial?
Okay, early 2010s.
And we talked about this earlier, why haven't we switched residential over?
Yeah, that is definitely in the short-term plan to convert residential time-of-use rates. We're waiting on some technology improvements and meter replacements throughout the city before we can do that. But looking like late 2026 or 2027 is our target date.
So theoretically, if we go forward with it and counsel approves it, residential customers will be on the time-of-use by when, the next ten years?
Yeah, hopefully within three.
Right, so if you have a grandfather clause in for twenty- Right, so if you have a grandfathered clause in for twenty years, that means you've got a subset of people who simply because we voted on it tonight, get an extra ten years on the old plan. Now that means tiered use. A residential customer, the first three hundred kilowatts they use in a month, we bill them at fourteen cents, point seven two. And then any kilowatt after the first three hundred in that month, we bill them at twenty-two forty-nine. So basically, somebody who's an over user gets charged more. Or a big time user will charge more. That does not take into account sunny days, cloudy days, peak period, off-peak period, at all. So right now I could run my lights all day long, uh, I can run from five PM to seven PM and get charged the same rate as I would early in the morning, middle of the night, late in the afternoon. What that means is, to the city attorney's point, there are people who are at work and they've got their solar running, they've got all the lights off, they got the air conditioning off, and they're generating solar and they're selling it to us at their tiered rate, fourteen cents. Or twenty-two if they, wait, so they start off at twenty-two?
No, it'd start at fourteen.
Starts at fourteen, but if they generate enough, how would they get twenty-two? If they give us more than three hundred?
By kilowatt right now? So it's unit for unit, but the value is when you use it, right?
So if they go over their three hundred use, they actually get twenty-two cents back?
It's a kilowatt hour credit.
Right, to the twenty.
The, the value could be fourteen or twenty-two.
Wow, so someone could sit at home all day long and generate a bunch of tier-one energy and then go home and turn their lights on for hours and hours and hours, break over that three hundred, and now they've got credits and credits at the twenty-two cent rate? Back to them if they go over, if they're a heavy user?
That's a tricky hypothetical. I think they're thinking that it doesn't work that way.
What, what, what is fair to say is that it could, at, you know, if the solar system, it could potentially offset a twenty-two cent. Uh, yeah, but it.
Right, okay, so then let me ask you this. We generate power at Magnolia Power Plan. But we also purchase power from a number of other, uh, uh, open market utilities and then a couple of utilities that we are also partners in. Now, all of those cost different amounts. They're different prices and when there's a lot of demand, prices go up on the market when we're purchasing. So at any given time, and depending on peak, because a lot of places charge us when we purchase on the market for peak, that price could be much higher, the cost of that energy much higher than the fourteen cents that they're giving us. So even today, whether or not we change over to a, a, the solar net billing or anything, there are offsets and deficits occurring, and I think earlier, uh, we had talked the amount per year is something like seven hundred fifty thousand dollars that we're basically subsidizing people. Now this system was put in place years ago, decades ago, and we are only now able to change it because we've hit five percent. And we can basically change it to whatever we want. Uh, that's my understanding. Like they said, once you're five percent, go for it, whatever you want. My issue here is that the ACOE compensation rate seems low. And that if we, as a body, found a compensation rate that worked, there would be no reason to grandfather anyone in. Because everyone would want to pay a fair price and not be subsidized by the city and be getting fourteen cents back and for something that charged twenty or twenty-two or thirty-two. And everyone's on the level playing field, and that as we're moving forward by twenty-six, twenty-seven, we're moving all the residential customers over to this time of use rate anyways. And for me, I know people out there are like, wait, but I'm getting a huge deal on this. Well, yes, you are, because we're subsidizing it. It, it, it's basically what was implemented decades ago without any understanding of peak or off-peak or how solar works or the lack of battery storage or when people use it. So we're on a really old system and people take advantage of that old system. So we have an opportunity now to change it. So, the questions I'm asking are basically, can we set up a payback rate based on the peak hour rate that is just a simple, flat eighty percent of retail? Or eighty percent of our cost? Like, I mean, that would be a little different because you're factoring in all the different power plants in the generation. But simply saying, hey, when you generate, when you use it, you get charged this much. If you give it back to us, we take a little bit of, we take twenty percent off the top. Like, to me, that would be very simple for everybody so that they know, ooh, I get the most money back if I'm summer on peak, turn off my lights, save some money. Like, to me, simplifying it that way for everybody would be the easiest. Is that possible?
So, so I'm gonna add one thing here. The, these numbers are gonna be subject to change, right? So we have that one cent um, for the renewable energy credit, right? So it's equivalent to ten dollars a megawatt hour. It could go up or down. It really depends on the renewable market. As the market's getting tight, chances are it'll probably go up. Right? So that value, there's a probability it'll go up. And in terms of a cost of energy, that's all we've been seeing is that it will probably go up. So we do plan to look at this annually, so these numbers will be adjusted. And the reason we said it's subject to general manager's authority or, uh, it's because it will get adjusted annually and we do look at it with our chief financial officer on an annual basis. Chances are it'll go up, most likely. I can't guarantee that, I just don't know where the market's gonna go, but if you look at the last four years, that's where the market's gone.
And I'm fine with that. It's just the numbers that we're seeing here, especially on slide nine.
It's a snapshot in time.
Uh, and I get that, but so much, like, everything on the right, it's less than fifty percent of the number. Like, that, that seems, that seems a little too much. I know we're getting a bad deal currently, that's seven hundred fifty thousand, but I don't think it needs to swing all the way here. And so, so that's what I, I'm in favor of the, the overbuild, the, the oversizing, um, increasing the megawatt size limit to five, I think all of that is great. But if we have some people grandfathered and some people not, and we don't address the actual compensation rate for future, uh, uh, solar, you're gonna get people who won't want to build or won't want to do anything new so that they could stay in the grandfather and you're gonna cool construction, you're gonna slow down solar. So I'd say just rip off the Band-Aid, get everybody onto the new system and make sure the compensation rate is adequate at the time so that nobody's upset.
Can I ask one follow-up to that? Do we know about how many customers would be grandfathered in?
We have about eighteen hundred.
Thank you. Um, who wants to go next?
Vice Mayor Takashi. All right, this, uh, there's a lot of moving parts in this. And I think that we're seeing that in the discussion tonight, that even, we're having a little bit of a challenge wrapping our head around, around this. And so I'm trying to, I was trying to kind of formulate in my head kind of the different pieces that we're trying to put together. And this is what I see is kind of the four major pieces to this, this puzzle. One, the first piece is the cost to BWP, the rates and the subsidy kind of, how much we subsidize and how much or we don't. That's the first piece. The second piece is, um, the intention to increase solar usage and how do we make sure that that happens? The third piece is the user experience. The user experience of whether they have solar now, they get solar later, understanding the rates, all this, all that, the user experience. And the fourth piece is putting that all together into a smooth transition to the new way that's gonna, the rates, I mean, everything that's gonna change, right? And I think that each piece has its own part and they all work together. But each time we adjust a piece, it like kind of like makes an imbalance and that's, that's the tough thing I think we're, we're struggling with tonight is how do we put all those pieces together in such a way that it all works? I'm not quite there whether I think we have, but I do feel like that's the kind of puzzle we're trying to put together. So I have a few questions, um, that might help, at least, I don't know, folks will help make the puzzle pieces easier, but um, I think that one of the key things that, um, our community will want the most is the third part, the community, the user experience. That's ultimately what they see, feel, hear, experience. And our role is to understand all the other details behind it, but there, that's what they're ultimately gonna experience. If we have a smooth transition, their experience will be good. If, um, it's clear how we're helping solar get increased, their experience will be good. If, um, the rates are fair and we're not subsidizing, but we're also allowing people to return on investment, then their, their experience will be good. So it kind of all ties into that. So to that point, what I would love to see, and I may, my question is this. Um, as, as proposed, imagine somebody is, you know, basically, one of the speakers came up and said he was concerned, like, what is it gonna be like from the user's experience? Uh, both somebody who already has a solar and somebody who's gonna install it, like, how is it gonna, and, and then knowing the transition, like, can we see it from their perspective? I love a little story maybe of how that user's experience would be. Um, a little bit more of that and less of like the backend and the backup house. Could you kind of frame that a little bit for us?
Sure, so like the story of an existing solar customer.
Yeah.
Their journey. So typically when you get solar installed, um, you have an expectation that that system's gonna last for twenty years. That's usually what the warranty is on the system. Um, so it's a really long-term thing and it's very rare that we have a customer come to us to add a couple panels or a few panels. It's just not very cost-effective to get a contractor to come out, add more racking, just for a few, few panels, upgrade your inverter. The cost per watt would be pretty exorbitant. It's, it's very rare that we get people to add on to their systems unless they plan for it ahead of time, like pre-plan, like add the racking upfront or oversize their inverter at the beginning. So, to that point, um, yeah, customers get solar thinking it's gonna be a long-term, twenty-year investment. You kind of set it and forget it in a way. It's, it's up there with no moving parts. It's quiet. It's just gonna generate day in, day out with very little maintenance, you know, just cleaning occasionally and every once in a while a panel might fail or your inverter might go after ten years. And that's a, a project you'd need to work with a licensed contractor to do. And then, you know, after twenty years, um, if that homeowner is still in that home, um, they might want to upgrade their system. You know, the technology had probably come quite a ways. In twenty years, you'll get more watts per square foot of panels. You'd upgrade to the latest system and you would, um, you would participate in whatever the utility rules are at the time. Um, utilities update their rates regularly, you know, throughout the, across the country. It, that's pretty regular and same with solar policies. They, they get updated from time to time. We haven't in thirty years. Um, it's, it's time for us to, to do that, so we're here with this proposal. Um, so yeah, the, the customer journey when it comes to solar, I'd say is, is pretty hands-off for the most part. It's, it's rare that they get upgraded, but we want to support it, like if something happens, like a break or something, if you're just replacing like-for-like, we don't want that to trigger, but if there's gonna be significant add-ons to the system, getting much larger, that's where, you know, we, we strongly feel that they should be moved, moved over to the new system. And of course, we have our customer service staff and our sustainability staff to, to walk people through that process that they need it. We also want to work with our local contractor community because they're sort of boots on the ground. They're either sitting at kitchen tables or talking with folks about solar and we want to educate them on, on our policies. So we'll, we'll make sure to do that outreach to the contractor community and also train our customer service staff who answer calls in the, in this new, um, program and process because it, it would be new. Describing time of use rates and the new solar billing, so we'll make sure to do that training, you know, at least a month before launch so that they're ready to answer questions.
Madam Mayor, there's an aspect to this scenario you're asking. Do you see them changing or are you trying to influence their time of use? Like today, does the solar influence when they use power and are we trying to affect that?
Yeah, we are. With, when, for tiered customers, they don't really, there's no price signal to shift usage in the middle of the day when solar's operating, but on time of use rate, there is that price signal because solar is a lot less expensive in the middle of the day or in the middle of the night. It's just that, you know, that four to seven window, that's really expensive. So we think this time of use rate's a great price signal to change behavior in a positive way, um, for, for how to use energy and the most sustainable way to, the, the greenest energies is the energy that's either not used or is generated with onsite renewables. Pulling from the grid for four to seven can typically be the, the most emission intense energy uh, from peak or plants or fossil fuel generation, because that's when solar stops working.
Right, so that's actually the fifth point then, is trying to also influence change in behavior. Okay. That's a lot to try to do in all in one package, right? Curiosity, has, have you put this in front of the Sustainability Commission as-is? What was their response?
Um, it was mixed. They, they understood, um, the reason why we do it, especially when it comes to like the, the rate equity, um, portion. Other, other members thought we shouldn't do it because, um, it, it did affect the return on investment. So it was, it was kind of mixed in the room. We did present to our board, of course, um, had, you know, really good discussion with our board members. We met with all of our board members and, um, they decided, you know, voted unanimously to, to approve their recommendation.
Then I'll just add too, there were a couple workshops. They went out to the community as well to talk about this program. I'm sorry, and then they received the feedback and the feedback is what you see right here.
Yeah.
The, on the grandfathering, on the battery storage not impacting, um, a change in the interconnection agreement. So a lot of the insight that both crews received from the public were incorporated. So I do not want to lose that point in terms of how much time they spent.
Yeah.
And having worked at, this is my fourth utility, I believe, every time someone's brought this up. It is one of the most convoluted documents and I brought over the IRP. It's because you're talking about something thirty years old where there were state mandates to do solar and now things have changed. A lot of other things have changed too, is the cost of energy has gone up, right? It just hasn't gone down. And secondly, just, we didn't bring this up, we, our rates are not as high as some of our neighbors, so their payback is quicker. So even the six to ten years, it's pretty, it sounds pretty good. It's a little quicker as some other utilities because their rates are sometimes twice what ours are.
Yeah, all good points. Um, so, given that this is somewhat of a complicated process and document and, um, and there are a lot of moving parts, um, does this approach have some level of flexibility? That if later on, let's just say we, for the sake of argument, for simplicity sake of, of, of moving forward in the, with the question, that we approved it as-is tonight? That, um, if there was some indication, let's say that people stopped buying solar or that the prices were not working as-is for some reason, or, um, people were confused and upset or something like that, you know? Is there flexibility kind of built in, uh, in the process that we could adjust to address those issues as they come up?
Yeah, thank you for that question. I think we could, I think the rate design is really important. I think how we have it presented tonight is correct in my opinion. I think there are other levers that we can pull to spur more investment in renewables locally such as rebates. Um, we have public benefits funds that we plan to use for this battery storage rebate. We could introduce a solar incentive as well to help reduce the payback and that would be, um, a, a lever that we could, could pull or a tool we could use to decrease the payback, at least, uh, maybe in, in the short term as we sort of ramp this new program, um, into the community.
Okay. And, and then the, um, community workshops or input sessions you had, how many folks did attend at those, just out of curiosity?
About sixty-eight each. Uh, one was virtual and in-person and one was in-person only.
Did you say sixty each?
Sixty, the virtual and in, and in-person one, and I, I think it was still close to, it was.
Yeah, sixty, seventy, something like that. It was one of the best attended, uh, public workshops we've had. It was.
Lot of feedback.
Okay, um, yeah, so the reason why I ask is because, you know, as you know, these community workshops, they're self-selecting folks who come to them. And so they're gonna be folks who probably already have at least some level of knowledge or familiarity or they've been thinking about it, right? And so part of it to, for me too, is I'm wondering as we're moving forward with this, is we're not just appealing or talking to the folks who attended it and have some level of understanding, but the whole, like, broad community. So that's also something for me to, you know, I'm thinking about how do we roll this out in a way that the entire community can understand? Because ultimately, at least for me, I feel like, and it sounds like for you too, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the intention is that this is to serve the entire community, not just a really small subset who happen to be very environmentally focused, but like the whole community, right? So I think it's important to roll it out that way. So I think it's important to roll it out that way. Let's see. The last question I have is just gonna confirm. Did you say that, right now, if someone were to buy into solar for their home, that it would take about five years to recoup their costs? And then with the proposed system, it would take 10? Is that what I heard?
More like seven right now.
Seven, okay.
And maybe go to 10.
Got it. Right.
Which 10-year payback was very common just a few years ago. Yeah.
Okay, great. So that's the end of my questions. Yes?
I wanted to perhaps shed some light on your question in regards to the broader community making to understand. The solar, when somebody decides to get solar, there's a lot of homework that goes into it. It's not something, oh, yeah, let me just call a contractor. There's a lot of calculations. There's a lot, you have to see if it's even worth it for you, because the payback on your investment, it takes 10 years, you know, depends on how much you paid for. So it's not gonna be appealing to the majority of the community, because if they don't care about solar, they're not gonna install it. They can't, they don't have the money to do it. They're not interested. This is not something they're gonna go after. And I wanna address something that you mentioned, because that was something in my thought that I wanna see what would happen within a year from implementing, once this is looked at, approved, and we know which direction we're going. I really, I'm interested to hear back from staff under our new program. Have our numbers went up? Have they gone down? Especially with all these demands, I was surprised, like, three different bills effective January all evolves around the greener energy, doing it faster than we expected, more EVs. And so I wanna, I'm interested to know if people are gonna rush out and, you know, think this is exciting, or all of a sudden, we see a slow in our market, and it's not attractive to our residents to install solar. So, good point that, you know, as we always do, come back to us and let us know. Give us the numbers in a year.
Sure.
Thank you.
Councilmember, any questions? No? Any more questions? Mayor, questions?
All right. So, let's see, questions? You all answered a lot of the questions I had, but I think one of the main questions I had was kind of what Vice Mayor Takahashi went through. God, tonight is just not my night for that. What Vice Mayor Takahashi went through, really talking about what our goal is here, right? What is our primary goal? And so my question is, when we're looking at this, obviously, you saw council had a hard time with it and had to go through a lot of iterations and explanations. And if one of our goals really is user-friendliness and user simplification, is there a way to explain this change in the terms that Councilman Anthony put in percentages? I know there's a flux in what it costs today, but it just feels like an easier way to explain it to the customer.
Talk about a percentage of, like, the retail rate that we would offer as an avoided cost of energy? That's tough, because we utilize our financial team. We've got a rates manager, and they did actual modeling to determine what the ACOE is instead of just making an assumption about a percentage. So we're using actual figures from energy procurement that BWP does. So we feel like it's a good method to stick to versus a almost arbitrary percentage. But we could, I'm not sure what else, like, maybe we could do.
Can I ask a follow-up to that real quick? So they did all these calculations, but like you said, this is just a static point in time. So our customer retail rate, that's set by us. And every couple of years, you come back to us and say, hey, sometimes we need to change it. But you're telling us that the ACOE compensation rate, that's gonna change daily?
No, we would do it, like, bi-annually, like, our rates.
So every six months? Wait, will you come to us to change the compensation rate? Or give that authority to the BWP managers?
So the authority is to the BWP general manager, but it is through the data that our financial, our CFO puts together. And we do have past historical data. We do plan to look at 12 months of past historical data to see what that data is and what it would be for the future. So it's gonna change every year. I had mentioned earlier, it'll most likely go up with the renewable one. It's 10 cents right now. It's only driving up, so that's gonna go up. And energy costs are only driving up as well. That 10.86 cents or the 11 cents that we saw, snapshot in time, based on historical 12 months of data.
So then a second follow-up is, how come, then why don't our retail rates change based on that?
So that is done through our ratemaking process. You'll see that when we do our rates. We do that, we're doing it right now. You'll do it for the two-year cycle. We don't change it, right? We do it for two years based on future costs.
So why are we okay charging that static number every two years to all the other customers? And then the payback has to fluctuate every six months? To the mayor's point, making it simple for the customer, here's what we pay, here's what you pay. We're gonna do a percentage.
So what BWP collects revenue for is more than just the commodity. They're doing capital projects. They're funding reserves. I mean...
No, I know that. And we come back every two years speculating out, okay, this is the set price for the next two years to compensate the fluctuating changes in, you know, cost of goods and, you know...
So that methodology can change. So the feedback I'm getting here, that's the authority you would give me. So if you wanna match it to that, we can match it to that.
Because then we're all, it's all bundled together.
If it's the same, we can do that, right? We do that right now with our rates, and we have an energy charge. What we provided in here was kind of a backcast of what we saw, right? What we saw over the last 12 years. Not 12 years, 12 months. But the change can be through the general manager's authorization for how the avoided cost of energy is determined. It could match that. We could use those forecasted prices that we're using to set the rates to do this, because we look at the energy component. That would be like-for-like. So that is, that is an option on the table. That's not an option. That's not on the table. It's presented through the authority represented through the general manager.
That feels like it makes more turt- for tat sense, the way I'm looking at it, right? And again, for the sake of simplification, we're avoiding the explanation of like, well, you're on this system and you're on this other system, and we're doing the math. And we just more align, because that is another one of the goals that Vice Mayor mentioned. We're trying to get an alignment here, so that no one customer is on a different system, and that is the eventual goal, right?
I'm missing something completely. At first, I was lost with Councilmember Anthony's whole explanation. So I'm not understanding everything you have talked about. Am I hearing, then, what we're seeing is we don't even grandfather customers in? And we just make everybody on the same, put them under the NIM 3 system off the bat? Is that what I'm hearing? Because I'm not still getting what you were saying.
Oh, I haven't even started there yet.
No, 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 I'm talking about...
I'm not saying NIM 3. NIM 3 is not what we're, we're creating our own system, our own price point. This, right here, slide nine. If you wanna go to slide nine.
Well, I've seen slide nine, like, several times.
To be clear, there's no motion on the table.
Right.
There's a staff recommendation.
Yeah. So we're not doing a pre-conceived NIM 3 thing that's been given to us. We're crafting it right here completely.
You're sitting here crafting new rates that have not been proposed or talked about to everyone that they met with, the staff.
Correct.
That, all the meetings that have taken place, and we're creating our own rates. For what reason?
Yes.
I don't understand for what reason.
Well, I think, well, sorry to keep going, but to Councilmember Takahashi's point, I think there's a bunch of stuff, the, oh, my god. To your point, there's a bunch of targets that we're trying to hit. And I don't wanna jump the gun here, but I think this is not going to be the last discussion on this. So I think what we're proposing are potential rates that we would like to see come back, because, like you said, none of this stuff that we're coming up with now has been out to the stakeholders or Sustainability or BWP Board, any of that stuff. We're just going through a bunch of different scenarios, trying to make it easier. And then I'll stop talking, because the mayor is in the middle of her questions.
And something that sounds to Councilwoman Anthony, more comparable, like, not even talking about the grandfathering at this point, just rates that sound more comparable and are reevaluated at the same time. Because right now, folks with solar are on a whole different track than our normal ratepayers.
Yeah, that's what I was hearing, is that we have our two-year rate-setting process. And what you see in front of you, next to that, is our avoided cost of energy rate, which is a snapshot in time, looking back 12 months from when we developed that slide. And we were planning on updating the ACOE annually, actually, more frequently than the two-year rating process. But it sounds, what I'm hearing is that you're recommending we do it every two years in alignment with our standard ratemaking process. Is that what I'm understanding? Versus every year?
Essentially...
We could do that.
So what, if I may, Madam Mayor, what's before us tonight are really two, in my opinion, two, they're two separate things and very simple. Saying, our current system that we have, we only allowed the resident or whoever wants to install the solar, up to 100% of their previous usage. And they have to, they're on a certain fixed rate, and it goes up and down. And I think it's a misperception for, you know, Councilmember Anthony, saying, oh, yeah, you're turning off your lights all day long, and then you go at night and you turn it on, and it doesn't matter what time you turn it on, because no matter what, there's things plugged in your wall. There's refrigerators. There's everything that's plugged into your wall that's using part of that solar you're generating. And then now that we have an opportunity to create a new separate system, we're actually helping giving 150% instead of only 100% because of expansion for future use, because of the requirement that's been put on us for more electrification. However, those individuals are gonna be under a new billing system, which is based on the day and time of the usage. So they are gonna get billed based on the time and day of usage. So if you turn on your air conditioning peak hours, you're gonna be charged more. It's more of the credit that you generate is gonna be used a lot faster. Then you have to pay the rate for whatever other time you use. So I'm looking at them at two separate things. So let's create the new system that we need to create, which allowing the customer to expand their unit or their solar system 150%. Put him under even higher than what Glendale and Pasadena are using right now, because looking at their system, they're under NIM 2, not even 3. So we're creating a new program for ourselves, for the city of Burbank, at a higher rate and then also billing them at the time of use. The second issue we have is the grandfather. For those who already made an investment, didn't know that we're gonna be discussing this today. And so if we wanna separate them, so I don't, when you talked about these rates, I don't know if you're talking about under the NIM 3 or the current system? Or do we wanna create all new rates that don't exist right now?
Can I follow up on my line of questioning? So, in, I don't wanna reinvent the wheel for you all. We were just trying to think about what may sound easier and more explainable to the ratepayer. Like, if I'm a solar customer and I get these rates, which aren't good for me anymore, I'd start asking questions about why. And one of the reasons, and one of the ways to explain it, might be, from what we were suggesting, going on that same two-year track as other folks. But does that create a hindrance for all of you in calculations? Is it worse for us?
It does not. So we actually have the energy cost that is incorporated in the entire retail rate when we do our forecast for our rates. So it doesn't. It's already been developed. It's probably be a week from development. So we'll have that number, and it's using our forecasted costs that we're seeing for contracts. So we have that. We have that ready for our rate discussion when we come back to city council as well. So it does not create a hindrance.
Okay, so that would be my only suggestion. I'm okay with everything else going on here. I feel like we are trying to encourage folks to, it's hard for folks, right? Because it's not the same, the same return investment. But also, I think people need to understand that we, as the utility, we are not gonna pay you back for the services that you are not utilizing when you're generating your own power, right? And I think putting that in plain English on a potential Q and A would be helpful. Going on the same frequency of rate changes would also be helpful, because you're not seeing differentials between yourself and your neighbor who doesn't have solar. It's, your rates are changing at the same time. And then for the grandfather, that's a whole separate issue. I still agree with you on that one.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, we might have to do an 11 o'clock.
Yes. That's what you were talking about. Okay, thank you.
I move to expand to 11. Continue. Oh, no, you have to ask the city manager.
Very good, go ahead.
Would you like me to give a 30-minute report on what is left in the meeting?
30-minute?
So what I would recommend, it looks like that hopefully you'll be able to wrap up deliberations soon on this item. We have two additional items. One was the pulled item, which I'm hoping there's not too much. And then we really do need to get to the appointments of the liaisons and committees. That'll take maybe 20 minutes. So I would recommend that we continue and move on, wrap this up and move on with the other two items.
Can I ask a quick question? Would it be totally inappropriate to do the liaisons at our goal-setting meeting?
I would like to start scheduling subcommittee meetings and other appointments. So you're gonna miss a whole, I think we could run through it pretty quick if you're okay with it.
Yes. Okay, so now that that's said and done, who, somebody had a question after that?
We had a motion, but no second?
I'll second and move past 11.
All right, motion and second, show of hands. Okay, we keep going. Thank you, Mr. Bax. All righty, so Councilwoman Walens, I believe you had a follow-up question.
Yes, and in regards to the rate structure, the point that I think, Madam Mayor, you were making earlier about, it's not, I don't know if you said fair, forgive me if I'm using the wrong word, but, you know, you have a solar, my next-door neighbor doesn't have a solar, and our rates are different. We have to, I think, take a look at, solar is an investment that people make and pay a lot of money for. And do we wanna, and this is why I started early with my question, do we wanna encourage people to make that investment? Because they're not using our grid, because we need greener air energy. There's a lot of mandates, so solar is in our best interest to have. So the question is, do we encourage people to do it or not? It's not about my next-door neighbor, when my next-door neighbor might have not paid $20,000, $30,000 for the system.
Actually, like, the rate, or, how do I put this? What we are proposing has kind of nothing to do with that, with the cost itself. It's more the schedule on which folks have their rates increased. Having the schedule at which I have a rates increased match the same timeline as when, say, Councilmember Takahashi, who has solar, has her rates changed or increased. Because right now, on the system that BWP is proposing, they would not match in timeline. So let's say if my bill changes, and I don't have solar, and it goes up or down or whatever because of the change in cost of energy. And my next-door neighbor who has solar, nothing happens, but then a year later, they get a change. That gets confusing for our customers. So the only thing I was proposing, I'm not talking about changing the exact cost, it is matching the timeline, so that those rate changes are happening at the same time.
Again, I'm gonna blame him, because he confused me.
I think we were both trying to explain that in, like, different ways. We're not you guys.
And I think that the authority is granted when it says a general manager has that authority, and this is what we'll take into consideration. So that number that we provided was a backcast. We'll adjust that, right? So, and we have, this program's not gonna be implemented until we have a date. So it's not gonna probably be implemented for, like, a year from now anyways, so we can still have some additional discussion during the rate discussion.
Thank you. And I'll pass the floor to you in a second. But the only other thing I would suggest is, if you have five councilmembers who have seen this before, you're having some trouble with it, having questions, I would please ask that when it... you're having some trouble with it, having questions, I would please ask that when it is starting to be implemented, Q and A page would be the best thing possible. And I think the first thing on that page should be the explanation. And if we want to include with line items, an explanation of why you're receiving less of a return and, and saying, you know, cost of maintenance, cost of this, cost of that. So people understand why. Because at first glance, I look at this and I'm like, oh, that sucks. But if, if I'm a reasonable person and I start to see, oh, wow, I'm not, you know, when I generate my own power, I'm not paying for the, or I'm not utilizing the maintenance, not utilizing the customer service line. I'm not utilizing the myriad of other things that go into the service you provide because we folks are not charged just for the energy. They pay for the energy. We are charged for the energy, the maintenance, the work orders, the customer service phone line we call, the programs that happen, all of those things are what we're paying in our bill. So I think that should be the first question that is answered on a Q and A page. Because folks do deserve to understand why, why the rates are changing. And then you can go from there. And, and definitely a consideration to those rebates for the battery storage. I think that'd be great.
Awesome. And Madam Mayor, good points because that process goes on when you apply for a permit for solar. There's a lot of time spent and invested, you invest in spending process and understanding what you're installing and giving it to that would definitely be more helpful.
And I know you all said it eventually pays for itself. There were a lot of explanations. I think, again, put that in the, in a chart, put, show that in numerical value. I think that would be much more helpful. Councilor Anthony?
I just want to say one last thing. By tying the compensation rate to the retail rate every two years, you give more predictability to the customer. Because the last thing they want is a month or two later, a huge spike in their bill, like what happened? What changed? So I, I think it's just easier on everybody.
And, and that's what I meant with comparability. Really, we're, we're making it more comparable for the folks who have solar to be on the same schedule as those who, who do not, rather than having more uncertainty.
One thing I wanted to address, oh, sorry, quickly, is that we do actually already have an FAQ up from the, from the public meetings we had. And I believe you've actually already addressed some of the things you've mentioned, but we'll take another look at it and update it, definitely based on the discussions we've had for today.
Thank you, and I appreciate you all always being ahead of the curve. If we need to add a little more comprehension, some more charts for folks who ask similar questions to what we've asked tonight, I think you've got a little bit of direction there. Vice Mayor Takahashi?
Thank you. So I, I, you know, after this discussion and talking with staff and hearing from the community, I, I feel relatively comfortable with the proposal. However, I do have concerns that I would like to have noted as we're moving forward. So, and to Councilmember Anthony's point is that there is a concern that if we adopt this, people will stop doing solar. And so I really want to make sure that if we, if we, even when we move forward, that we keep a track of the, I believe the, you know, we had discussed a little bit about the natural lull that might happen after it's implemented, after a surge of, potentially a surge of adoption of the previous version, a lull after it's changed and then it starts to pick up again. Keeping an eye on that to see it actually does pick up. And if it doesn't pick up within a reasonable timeframe, I don't know what those benchmarks would be, but to have preset benchmarks, to note when we expect them to tick up and if they don't, to make adjustments, adjustments to increase encouragement for people to adopt. So I think that that way it kind of addresses kind of the concerns that the natural potential decrease in adoption. If we keep an eye on it, we know it might be possible so that we're not, you know, that, that way we know it's being looked at. I'm also concerned, as mentioned before, about the user experience. And I think that was being, what we were being addressed here. So just, I think people want to make sure it's clear. It feels fair. You may not be like technically exactly fair, but it feels fair on their end. And then it's how, they want, they want to probably, they want to understand how it's good for them in some shape or form, right? So, and if it's not good, at least how it can be eased, the transition can be eased for them. So it's not a lot of pain points. So I think that's a really important thing for me. And so as this, this happens, just to kind of keep an eye, and we'll hear it, I'm sure, if there is an issue with not experiencing it well. But also just as you're rolling it out, to keep an eye on that. And then lastly, one of the intentions was to influence behavior, to shift the usage of, of power, right? So to keep track, have benchmarks for that too. And to see if folks really are changing their behavior. And if not, like for example, if not enough folks are adopting the new solar system, there's not going to be as much influence to change behavior because they're not in the new system. So just kind of keeping track of how that's changing to, to see if this is really achieving the goals that we want to achieve. But I mean, otherwise, I feel like, and it's not, there's a part of me that feels like it's not perfect. It's not like there's something quite, a little bit not quite perfect, but it's good enough. And I don't want the perfect to get in the way of the good. So I'm moving forward, good enough.
Very much agreed, Vice Mayor Takahashi. And one thing I would add to, to what Vice Mayor just said is even to the folks who are grandfathered in, assuming that is how we pass it, even to folks who are grandfathered in, I think it's worth having the discussion with them. Maybe it's a letter, maybe it's a, however we're presenting it to folks, of letting them know that one of our main reasons for doing this is to encourage that different behavior in their time usage. Maybe folks will do it out of wanting to help out. I mean, maybe folks who are not doing it right now, it, it's not so much, it's not out of malice. It's out of like convenience, right? But perhaps I, I would like to think that the same folks who have installed solar panels and taken the painstaking time, money and energy to do that is because they want to not only save some money, but help the environment. So if they, if we could also let them know the reason we're going down this path, the time usage that would really help us as a utility, the lack of fair return on our, on our, on our sales that we're getting, and, and explain that to them. And also like in the same gracious letter, letting them know they're being grandfathered in. I, I think that would make a difference too. I think people, people are conscientious in the city. Councilwoman Rosati?
I was just, you know, just listening. My only concern is just the point of sale. I think if you transfer your property to a trust or a family member or you're divorced and have to transfer to the other spouse, I don't think that should trigger. And then the grandfathering, I think if somebody wanted to add a panel or two to upgrade and they, and they spent the money and made the investment, but they need, they bought another car and they need to, I know you said it was rare that it happens, but I would like to see that, that was still state grandfathered.
So if people go with the oversize, it would, it would still grandfather it? I will say this, at some point, and I'm, I'm fine, I'm not a stickler for the grandfathering. I don't, I don't want it at all, but I'm okay. But at some point, we're going to have the rest of the residential customers on this new system and then we're going to have another, you know, five or 10 years of solar folks who are grandfathered in. So we're going to have a discussion at that point saying, do we switch them over now? Or we should at least put in some caveat saying, like when we say up to 20 years, maybe it ends once we do a citywide, you know, rate change over. Because I think at that point, it's, it's.
And I believe that's in line with our discussion about wanting, as Vice Mayor mentioned, wanting information back, right? We want to see if it's working. If it's not working, we can reopen this at any time and have a discussion.
Did want to clarify, for customers that have been grandfathered, oversizing isn't, isn't allowed in our proposal. It's just, you know, grandfathering would remain only for maintenance of the system, replacing like-for-like panels or inverters.
Right, I think he's suggesting we change it. So we allow oversizing and you get the grandfather.
So I, I will share my opinion, I actually disagree with that just because that does make changes to the rate and the payback and it's a significant net loss for, for us as a utility. It, it does affect our bottom line and I see our general manager nodding along to that. And, and changes for maintenance, like if a panel breaks or if you need to fix something, that, that shouldn't trigger something like that. But if you're oversizing, that is going to change your output and the cost and what you're receiving back. And, and right now, from what I understand in the numbers, it's a significant change. And a lot of people are not doing it for that reason because it's a significant cost for them to do that for minor work. But it is also a significant cost for us to continue to pay them at the same rate. So the grandfathering is really for what I would call extenuating circumstances.
So again, I think grandfathering is a misleading term. The question is whether they're allowed to operate under the existing interconnection agreement or whether they have to enter into a new interconnection agreement under which the new terms attach to the new agreement. So what we would say, and this would be put in the interconnection agreement, and we can figure out where else the guidance needs to be. It could be under the rules and regulations. It would say, an amendment or interconnection, interconnection agreement shall remain valid for however we, we characterize those transfers, right? What are they called? Non, there's a name for them and we'll put it in there. Well, it's, anyway. No, to, to and from family trusts, changes in household, aside from, you know, sale of the asset. But we're not talking about grandfathering in the sense that most people think about grandfathering. We're talking about whether, and BWP can correct me if I'm wrong, we're talking about whether the interconnection agreement gets replaced or amended, in which case the terms are upgraded. Because by and large, people are not grandfathered to old rate structures. When the rate structure change, changes, everyone pays the new rate. Because we're not, we're not grandfathering people to the rate they paid when they first moved into Burbank. Everyone pays the new rate.
Right, which is why I, I was sharing, you know, to Councilwoman Rosati, do disagree with the point of, of maintaining that for folks who, who make up significant upgrades. The only reason I agree with Councilwoman Mullins on keeping it for folks who maybe inherit a property or are in a divorce is because essentially, nothing, nothing has changed there, right? In, 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 in the property. They have not changed their structure. They have not changed, really in ownership even. I mean, if you get a divorce, it's, it's not a huge change when it comes to, to what we're talking about here. While a sale of a home, that's a brand-new customer. Adding the upgrade, you are essentially at a different tier of customer. So that, that's where I was heading with that. I'm sorry, I believe you wanted to share some, some thoughts with us? Okay, we scared you away? But that, that's my thoughts of that and I'd love to hear from my colleagues.
Madam Mayor, if I may, what I'm hearing you say, if I understand you correctly, is that when there's no change to the system, that, and then the system itself stays the same and then somebody within the family or within inherits it or their family changes somehow, the contract doesn't change. But if the system is upgraded or there's a sale to a brand-new owner or it's outside the family or completely different transfer of sale, then that's when it would, contract would upgrade, a, a, a change to the new system. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, which is essentially what BWP is suggesting, except Councilwoman Mullins and I suggested the inheritance and like divorce and other situations.
Got it, okay, thank you.
And, and the one thing to add to Council, Vice Mayor Takahashi, you almost made me do that. It's okay, it's all right. It's, it's, it's an honor being a council member. Is also in the event that you have to change a panel or any broken panels. So that's another component too. So the only thing really that we generate that change in the event of sales or if you want to upgrade your system. Otherwise, it stays the same throughout. I mean, it's very clear, if you, if you exclude these two, then everything else stays the same.
And just to add, we have one, we're not implementing it today, right? So people will have some time to install solar if they want to. It'll probably be implemented in a year, so we have a lot of time.
If it's really draconian, you'll get a rush of implementations in the next 12 months.
All right, all right. It's 11:17 PM and I'm hearing consensus. Can I get a motion?
I move to make a motion to approve Burbank Water and Power's solar net billing program, including the proposed rate structure and determination of the avoided cost of energy and allow the general manager of Burbank Water and Power to make administrative change, changes to the ACOE methodology.
Second.
Question?
Yes.
Provided as amended.
And so you, everybody can hear me.
And exceptions to new interconnection agreements.
Second.
So yes, as amended. All right, Madam City Clerk? Councilmember Anthony?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mullins?
Yes.
Councilmember Rosati? Vice Mayor Takahashi?
Yes.
And Mayor Bruce?
Yes.
Thank you. Consensus. Alrighty, now I'm supposed to say the fourth and final report to council, but no, folks. The next report to council is item four from our agenda. The approval to authorize the general manager to negotiate, approve and execute a system-long-term services agreement with Tesla Inc. for multi-year preventative maintenance services in support of the Regional Intermodal Transportation Center Battery Energy Storage System Project. Burbank Water and Power Department, welcome. Thank you for sticking around with us tonight. Please introduce yourself and share your report.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Michael Wang. I'm the project manager for the Regional Intermodal Transportation Center Solar and Battery Storage Project. The consent calendar item that we brought tonight was the approval for us to enter with Tesla into a warranty agreement for the battery that we are installing at the RITSI structure. On January 23rd and on July 30th, council meetings last year, we were approved to execute contracts with Baker Electric to install solar and battery at the RITSI. Part of the battery contract included a warranty agreement with Tesla that was to be provided to us from Baker. The consent calendar item tonight was mainly to allow us to execute directly with Tesla instead of having Baker do it for us, in which case we'd be saving 15% on the warranty cost and saving us a lot of time after the fact, having to transfer the warranty agreement to us after the project is completed and in service. So that's what was on the calendar tonight.
Thank you so much for your report. And I, I would go on to questions, but I think I'm going to ask Councilwoman Anthony to start us off since this was your poll from the consent calendar.
So, all right, who built the battery?
Who, who built the battery?
Who built the battery?
The battery is manufactured by Tesla, but Baker Electric chose the battery, according to our detailed spec.
Oh, so we hired, was Baker just the interim firm to build the, the whole best or?
Yes, for a lot of these larger projects, we hire design with contractors. They take care of the design and also the construction of the asset, the.
Okay, so Baker is a design contractor?
They're a design-build contractor.
Gotcha. So we hired them or?
We selected Baker based on a competitive bidding process, yes.
Okay, so they came forward and part of the whole design-build, and it's much more than just the battery, but part of it was to include this battery. And they decided on using a Tesla battery?
That's correct.
And they purchased a warranty from Tesla that we're now buying off of Baker?
They will purchase a warranty when they purchase, when they complete the purchase of the battery. So they've already, they're already in the queue for the battery. We are well along in our detailed design for the project.
Baker's ordered the battery, they haven't purchased it yet?
They are in the, the queue for production of the battery. So they're, it's like, sometimes you want to slice it.
Do they pay for it upfront or is it like a, like how did, so Tesla's going to build the battery?
Tesla has been.
Baker's put in the order, but they haven't delivered the battery, they haven't paid for it yet. They put like what, a downtime or something?
The battery is not delivered yet. We are expecting to complete construction end of the year.
Okay, so how do we save 15% on the warranty? Explain that to me, because didn't we do this project completely with Baker already? So are they, they're, they're allowed to, are we buying them out of the warranty?
We, we gave ourselves the option to contract directly in the design-build contract language. So we, we knew there might be possibility for savings here. And so we included some language that gave us an option to go directly with Tesla to contract.
Okay. Is it too late to get a different battery?
Yeah, we're almost at 100% design completion. We're already in queue for the Tesla battery. We are, we are, we're already in queue for most of the major equipment, which requires very long lead times, so.
And we're under contract.
And we are under contract.
We have a signed executed contract for Baker to deliver and this would change material elements of that contract.
That's upsetting. I pulled this item because of sort of recent changes to the third-party company that is building this battery. that is building this battery. And in our past, the city of Burbank has sought to not do business with certain companies that did not live up to our expectations of what a, you know, reputable company would be. I wanted to go through all of the process here, because I have had people ask me why the city is paying money to this company. And it is unfortunate that we, you know, are dealing with extenuating circumstances, but at the same time, financially and being fiscally responsible, it is pretty much impossible for us to get out of this contract right now. So I just wanted to be able to walk through this and talk to you folks and to the general public to understand why. This contract was done over a year ago, right? This was last January, so. Sorry to make you wait so long, but thank you for walking it through. If anyone else has any questions, you can see, obviously, why I wanted to pull it. There are, you know, reasons, and unfortunately, I don't think there's much we can do at this point, so I'm comfortable moving to a vote unless there's any other discussion.
Unless anybody has any other questions or comments, and I would beg you to look at the late hour, so we can let these folks go home. Can we take a vote? Thank you.
I'll move to approve item number four on the agenda.
Second.
Aye.
Councilmember Anthony?
Yes.
Councilmember Mullins?
Yes.
Councilmember Rosati?
Aye, yea.
Vice Mayor Takahashi?
Yes.
Mayor Perez?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for walking through that with me.
Thank you all. All right, now, our final report to council tonight is the appointment of city council members to committee and liaison roles for the 2025 calendar year. I welcome Ms. Catherine Lebrado, Assistant to the City Manager, to present this report. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Perez, Vice Mayor Takahashi, and members of the council. Catherine Lebrado, Assistant to the City Manager and the City Manager's Office. I'm here tonight to present a report to appoint city council members to 33 boards and commissions listed on Attachment One as part of your staff report. As you guys are aware, on an annual basis, after the reorganization meeting in December, city council updates these assignments. To ensure consistency in council appointments throughout the year, members of city council are appointed to participate in a variety of organizations, serving as members or liaisons to represent the city's interests, and report on activities of various entities to city council and the public. As noted on the list, certain committee and liaison appointments are predetermined pursuant to the BMC. So, for example, the BMC stipulates that the mayor shall be the chairman of the Disaster Council, and there are some other assignments that are traditionally assigned to the mayor and the vice mayor, which I'll note as we go through the list. A few others that are noted on the list are existing assignments that are already in place. Number nine is the American Public Power Association Policymakers Council. In December 2024, Mayor Perez was selected through, to serve a three-year term by the association's Board of Directors through a nomination process. Number 11 on the list is the Burbank-Glendale-Pacadena Regional Housing Trust. Council appointed Mayor Perez to this Board of Directors in spring of 2023, and that's for a two-year term, with Councilmember Mullins serving as the alternate. Number 17 on your list is the San Fernando Valley Service Sector Governance Council, which is Metro. So former Mayor Jess Telamontes was serving on that. He completed his term of service on June 30th, 2024, and we currently don't have a seat available, as we have two seats that rotate between Burbank, San Fernando, and Glendale. So every now and then, it comes around that we don't have an open seat there. So staff will come back to council when we do have a seat available for that one. And then number 18, the Southern California Association of Governments, which is referred to normally as SCAG, our District 42 representative. Mayor Perez is currently serving as our representative on that board, and her term goes through May of 2026. So this concludes my report, and if you'd like, I can answer any questions, or we can go through the list, assuming that we don't have any public comment. We can go through the list and do the assignments together.
Thank you for the presentation, Ms. Lebrado. Do we have any, I'm seeing no for public comment. All right, let's move on.
Sure, so we'll start with our council subcommittees. The first one is the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. Last year was Mayor Nikki Perez and Vice Mayor Tamela Takahashi.
I would personally like to continue serving, if the vice mayor's amenable, to continue serving as well.
That one will remain. The next one is the Airport Ad Hoc Committee, and this one traditionally is the mayor and the vice mayor, so that will remain the same. Next would be the Audit Committee, which last year was Councilmember Mullins and Mayor Perez.
Happy to continue serving, but if one of my other colleagues would like?
I'm happy to continue as well, unless some, somebody else, okay?
Okay, so none?
Next on our list is the Burbank Unified School District City Council Committee, so that one traditionally is mayor and vice mayor. We'll keep that one the same. Next is the Economic Development Subcommittee. Last year was former Mayor Schultz and Vice Mayor Takahashi.
Did you want to serve on it, or I'm happy to do it as well?
Okay, so...
So it looks like Councilwoman Mullins and Councilmember Rosati.
Okay. The next one, number six, is Fiscal and Treasurers Review Group. Last year was Councilmember Anthony and Councilmember Mullins.
Continue on it.
Looks like both members want to continue on.
Okay. The next one is the Public Information Office Advisory Committee. This traditionally has been the mayor and the vice mayor.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll keep that. Next, number eight, is the Racial Equity and Diversity Subcommittee, which last year was Mayor Perez and Councilmember Mullins.
Continue.
I would like to continue as well, yeah.
Okay. So our external committees. Number nine, we talked about, we'll keep that as Mayor Perez. Number 10, the Arroyo Verdugo Community Subregion Joint Powers Authority. Last year was former Mayor Schultz and Councilmember Mullins as an alternate.
So I'd like to be the primary on that. It's, instead of former mayor Nick Schultz.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense.
Okay, number 11 is already appointed. We'll keep that one the same. Number 12, the Disaster Council, will be mayor and vice mayor, per the BMC. Number 13 is the Domestic Violence Task Force. Last year, this was council members Anthony and Mullins.
Okay, we'll continue.
Okay. Number 14 is CalCities Annual Statewide Voting Delegate. This traditionally has been the mayor, followed by the vice mayor as the alternate, and then the council members are the second alternate after that.
Yes.
Okay. Number 15 for CalCities, the Los Angeles Division. This traditionally would be mayor and vice mayor. Number 16, the San Fernando Valley Council of Governments. Last year was former Mayor Schultz and Councilmember Takahashi as the alternate.
I think that's great, and I would love to be your alternate if possible.
Okay. So number 17, as I mentioned, we don't have a seat available on that one. Number 18 for the SCAG District 42 representative, we have Mayor Perez as the representative. Number 19 would generally be the mayor and vice mayor for the Southern California Association of Governments. And lastly, in this category, is the Valley Economic Alliance Board of Directors, which last year had Mayor Perez and Vice Mayor Takahashi.
Yeah, and we were sworn in already, because it's on a different calendar. So it's something I shared with staff, and they said next year, it would be something they'd look at in advance, just because we're in a different timeline. December, so remember during the TVA, like, All Cities meeting? Yeah, so it all is from December of 2024 to December of 2025, so we should retouch base in December.
Correct, yeah. So that one I'm gonna follow up with and just solidify the terms, so we have some better, a better understanding for next year. So moving on to our city boards and commissions, the first one is the Board of Library Trustees.
I'm happy to stay on if no one wants to. Yay.
So last year, council really decided that you guys wanted to have alternates. You can do alternates. If you see just one listed here on the spreadsheet, that means that the BMC only calls for one representative. So per the BMC, you have to do a council liaison. If as a body you guys would like to appoint somebody as the alternate, you can do that.
Anybody want to be the alternate? No? Last time, they called me a nerd when I like jumped up to be like, "I want to do this one."
Sure, so we'll leave this one with one.
Great.
Okay. So the Burbank Cultural Arts Commission?
And I'd like to be an alternate on that, please.
Okay.
Great.
The next one, number 23, is the Infrastructure Oversight Board. This traditionally is mayor and vice mayor. Number 24 is the Parks and Recreation Board, which we had last year, Councilmember Anthony and former Mayor Schultz serving as the alternate.
I can stay on. It's different. Oh, wait. Oh, that's the same as the Cultural Arts Commission? Oh, oh, it is? Oh, that's fine. Okay, I can do that.
They are the same day of the month, but different times.
What time is the Parks and Rec Board usually?
Parks and Rec Board is at 6:00.
6:00? Okay. Yeah, that's fine. Unless somebody else wants to do parks.
Would anybody like to be the alternate?
We can both go, right? Because it's not, yeah.
Okay, so we'll add Councilmember Rosati as an alternate for Parks and Recreation Board. Number 25 is the Planning Commission. So this is a new one that you guys haven't seen. I think Planning Commission used to have someone, and it may have dropped off, so we're gonna add a representative on planning board.
Just when you thought you were out.
Pulls you back in.
Next, number 26 is the Police Commission.
I'll continue on it. Do you want to?
No, no.
Okay. And that, there is primary alternate here, or just doesn't matter, I guess?
This one would be primary and alternate. So we'll have Councilmember Mullins as the primary, and then Councilmember Rosati as the alternate. Great. For number 27, this is our Senior Citizen Board.
I'm happy to stay on, but if somebody else wants to jump in, that's, sometimes it's difficult to work to go on.
Yeah, I, it's fine. I'll continue, but if somebody else wants to jump in, so, primary alternate.
Who's the primary?
I guess technically I am, but it's tough to say that there, so it's hit or miss.
I'm always there, so I thought I was.
Do you want to be the primary?
Be the primary.
I assumed I was, but...
When does that meet?
Fourth Wednesday. Yeah.
During prime work hours.
Wednesdays are tough for me during the day.
You know, I can do Wednesdays at 1:00. I can't do Wednesdays in the evening very often, but...
Primary alternate?
Is that the same day? Second Thursday.
Do you want to be the primary then? I'm happy to.
For seniors, sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
So Councilmember Anthony primaries, is that his alter, so I still remain an alternate, even though in my mind I thought I was primary and I was showing up.
I thought you were the primary.
Just be the primary. You've been on the board long.
Yeah, I thought we like...
Just as long as we...
You be the primary.
As long as one of us shows up. I thought I was, but it's okay.
Put her as the primary.
It's no big deal.
So just for clarification, there really is not actually an alternate?
Put her as the primary.
Per the BMC.
Because he doesn't want to show up.
This is designated by council that you're deciding that you want to have an alternate. So Councilmember Mullins will be the alternate for Senior Citizen Board.
No, the other way around.
No, the primary. Okay.
And for clarification, I'll make a brief interlude while Catherine notes this down. We did, it was one of the questions I did ask during our check-in meeting, because, you know, sometimes with competing job responsibilities, Councilwoman Takahashi and I, or Vice Mayor Takah, well, Councilwoman Takahashi and I, at the time, were discussing about, you know, "Oh, are you going to sustainability? Oh, I can't. Oh, who's the primary? Who's the alternate?" We were both in the same setting. It is a lot easier for us to alternate, given our work schedules, and in talking with Catherine, the city manager, there's no issue with alternating. So it's something to think about if you're serving in that role, and there's some conflict, or you'd like to balance out your month.
Yeah, and I think it's important that we communicate with each other when you have two people. And it's also important to inform staff, whoever's staffing that committee or board, because the members always assume, if they don't see you and they see somebody else, that you're missing and you're absent, you're not attending, but we need to make sure to let them know that either one of us can attend. We don't both have to be there. If we're both there, that's great, but if we're not, we don't have to be there together.
As a general practice, if I miss, I will let the staff member and the chair of the board know, so they're both aware. Alrighty, let's move on.
Okay, so number 28, the Sustainable Burbank Commission?
Yeah, I'm happy to stay on.
Keep that the same. Number 29 is the Transportation Commission?
So that moved to Wednesdays. I can't do that anymore. I have to let that one go.
Councilmember Rosati?
Do I have something on my Wednesday?
Yeah, it's like at 5:00 on Wednesdays, or?
Yes, it is, and it's not on the same night as the police.
It's the fourth Wednesday.
Yeah, the police, this is on the fourth, and the police is on the first.
Do you want to stay on?
I'll stay on, but...
What time does that meet?
Five?
Okay.
So Councilmember Rosati will be an alternate?
Happy to pass on the primary if he wants. Negotiate.
All right, Youth Board.
Lastly, Youth Board, number 30. Just one thing to note on this one is that it isn't exactly the same time and date as the Domestic Violence Task Force. Right. We're always competing for the same room with Youth Board and, it's in the evening.
What time is it at?
6:00 or 6:30?
Oh, okay.
Six, maybe 6:00?
I'm happy to do that one, in the spirit of being the youngest mayor.
Aren't you on the board, Youth Board?
Oh, very funny.
I had to, I had to.
You know, I'm at the prime age where I love those comments, when people are like, "Aren't you like 21?" I'm like, "Yes, keep that energy. We love to hear that."
Okay, our last few, the Burbank Association of Realtors.
I'd like to stay on that. Don't jump in slowly.
I'm there. I'm there anyways.
Be there officially.
And it's really, it's as requested, as needed, so you're going to be there, I'm not going to be there, so it's...
I love that. That was a very sly, uh, you're the primary, not me.
Number thirty-two is the Burbank Chamber of Commerce, which traditionally would be the mayor. And lastly, the Upper Los Angeles River and Tributaries Working Group.
Uh, they never call us.
They never request. You know, one time they did, and then they canceled, and I was really disappointed because I was like, we're finally going to see what happens there.
That was like over the summer, right?
Yeah, yeah. Well, I'd be happy to stay on and see if they call us.
We'll keep this one the same.
I'll stay.
I think that's the end of our list.
Okay, okay.
Alrighty.
So we probably need an official motion.
I'll make a motion to approve our twenty-twenty-five council liaison appointments.
I'll second.
All right, can we get the roll? Council member Anthony?
Yes.
Council member Mullins?
Yes.
Council member Rosati?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Takahashi? And Mayor Perez? Yes. Thank you. All right, now we will hear council comments, including reporting on council committee assignments, attendance at conferences, regional meetings, and community events. Council member Anthony, you are ready to go.
Thank you. Uh, for most of this time, I was stuck at home with my foot up on the couch, but I did make it, uh, with many of my colleagues to the Grand Hanukkah Festival and the menorah lighting ceremony. Uh, that was a project of Shabbat of Burbank. It was at the Yumi Parking Lot. Uh, they normally do it here at Palm, but it was such a nice location. They opened the place up. They had, it was a full-on festival, music and food and dancing. Um, it was really fantastic. Uh, attended a court of honor, um, for an Eagle Scout on Saturday the fourth, and that was basically it, yeah. And the rest of the time I was dealing with my foot.
Great, uh, councilor Rosati.
Uh, I too attended the Grand Hanukkah Festival with menorah lighting and reunited with, um, my longtime, uh, neighbor, Mrs. Sherman. Hundred and four years old, so if I did go another fifty years, I could get there, council member Mullins. I also met with members of the Police Commission, um, attended the Rose Parade float send-off, the retirement party for deputy fire chief, and then, um, also attended a couple of holiday parties, one for the, uh, Burbank Police Office Association and the Fire Fighters Association.
Great, thank you. Vice Mayor Takahashi.
All right, so on the nineteenth, December nineteenth, way back many weeks ago, I attended the Chamber of Commerce Holiday Open House, um, and that was nice at the Chamber. And then on the twentieth, I attended the Armed Forces North Recruiting Company Change of Command at the Elks Lodge, which was kind of fun to meet those folks. And then that evening, I went to the Burbank Philharmonic, which was amazing performance, beautiful, beautiful, beautiful. And that was at the Alex Theater in Glendale, but it was our Burbank Philharmonic. And then on the thirty-first, I was also at the Rose Float and got to see them roll it out. I missed the Hanukkah Festival. I was so bummed because it was on the first, which is the same day as our family, big family celebration, and then it turned out that we were all sick, so we couldn't even go to that, so... But I saw the pictures and it looked great. And then on the fifth, um, I attended a one-hundredth birthday party, um, for Marshall Drucker, who, um, was in World War One. And so that family invited, uh, us, you know, one of us to attend, so I did, and it was just kind of cute to have them all there, and we presented them with him, with a certificate. So lots of folks, um, turning a hundred and being a hun... being a hundred in our city. On January ninth, went to the Cultural Arts Commission meeting in the morning. And then on the eleventh, um, with the mayor, um, I went to the Burbank Masonics Lodge, annual installation of officers, and it was the first time I've ever been to Masonic Lodge. I've never seen one of those ceremonies. It was quite the thing. So I felt very educated afterwards and met a lot of wonderful people. Then on the thirteenth, uh, which was, I guess, yesterday, um, I went to the San Fernando Valley Cog Board meeting in the morning, and then in the afternoon, went to the ribbon cutting for the New Castle and Crown Kids Play and Party Business. Very cute, with a, um, Sleeping Beauty, um, uh, what do you call it? Carriage and a pirate ship. Super cool. And then on the fourteenth, uh, today, met with David Kriski earlier about the parking permitting and asking much questions, and also had a meeting, a pre-meeting with the Community Services, uh, team for Cal Cities in preparation for next week's meeting for the Community Services Subcommittee for Cal Cities.
Great, thank you, Vice Mayor. Um, councilor Mullins.
Thank you. Um, I had a meeting with Mr. Van Gorder regarding the Planning Commission, uh, position. I attended also on the first, the Hanukkah Festival. Again, it was spectacular. I was there with these two gentlemen, and I attended, um, let's see, grand opening, the Rose Float Judging on the thirty-first, and met with, um, a community member, um, to discuss some concerns, and that was it.
Thank you. Alrighty, um, on December eighteenth, I attended a California incentive statewide stakeholder meeting between unions, uh, that work in the industry, representatives from Warner Brothers, Disney, um, other stakeholders. We were talking about the California Film Tax Credit, which is something our city should be very invested in. I know we are invested in it, and, um, we discussed what was upcoming, what was proposed, and we were looking forward to meeting once again after the budget is presented, which it now is. So we will be meeting up again, and I'm happy to report back when that time comes. On Friday, December twentieth, I attended a Sensia's Homeless Person's Memorial Service. If you haven't been, it's incredibly impactful. They, uh, it's a memorial for all those who are unhoused that have died in that previous year, and they do it as a traditional, um, celebration of life or funeral that one might attend, including any religious aspect that would be included. And then I think it's, it really humanizes the experience, and had the pleasure of attending that with, with, um, Mayor Satri and Assemblymember Schultz and, um, different, different, um, community members. So it's, if you haven't been, again, it's very impactful. Folks, folks are crying. So it's, I think it's a great event because as a provider, it's helpful when unhoused folks are humanized to the community. On December twenty-sixth, along with the Vice Mayor, attended the Valley Economic Alliance Board of Directors meeting at eight AM. Um, and we will get to continue doing that all next year, or this year. On December thirty-first, along with my colleagues, I attended the Rose Float Judging, very intense. They come in very quickly. They changed the hour on us and showed up an hour later. They were in and out really quickly and then went on to see another thirty-eight floats. Um, we did really well. Congratulations to, um, our BTR, like, we won the animations trophy, which is a really big deal. And I know we'll be shouting them out at a future meeting, but I'm incredibly proud, and it was a pleasure to be part of taking down the float. On January first, I also attended the Grand Hanukkah Festival menorah lighting ceremony, had a chance to speak to all of the attendants. It was a large crowd, and I hope that, um, they continue to host it in, in the, um, Yumi Credit Union Parking Lot. It's a good space for that event, very secure. And that was the coolest menorah I've ever seen. It was huge. It was huge, and you could feel the pyrotechnic fire heat from where the three of us were sitting in the front row, so, you know. Councilmembers Rosati, Constantine, and I almost burned our eyebrows off. Alrighty, on Saturday, January fourth, I attended the Eagle Court of Honor for William John Arms. Congratulations, and thank you for joining the ranks of the Eagle Scouts. We have a lot of Eagle Scouts this year, and every time I love to tell them, I'm really glad that there's many and more of you because that means more service projects for us. That same day, I got to attend the Experimental Aircraft Association Chapter Forty Youth Build Program. Really quick, they are an aviation group that is dedicated to teaching students from the local school districts about how to, the mechanics of building an aircraft. It's incredibly interesting, incredibly niche, and if you or somebody is interested, I will be posting about it soon on social media and sharing more information with our school district. It's a really great experience. On January eighth, uh, the morning after, we had the strong winds and, and some severe weather conditions. I had an interview on KNX to share with our residents, um, you know, the necessary precautions they should be taking, conditions from the storm, and, um, the numbers that they could reach us at if they needed tree, uh, tree removals from public property, um, if they had a power outage or if there were downed power lines. And once again, those numbers and all that information is still on our city website, burbankca.gov. Friday, January tenth, I did a lot, y'all. I was at the There Will Be Color Art Exhibit Reception and Grand Opening. It's beautiful. If you have a chance to go see, it's a very colorful exhibit. And it was, I believe, the first time we gave certificates to the artists, and I'd like to continue that tradition because they were very grateful, and they had their families. It was very nice. Um, Saturday, January eleventh, I attended the Eagle Scout Court of Honor for Ben Kaufman. So another Eagle Scout, another project, and his was actually a travel town, which is very sweet. I also attended the Burbank Masonic Lodge's Hundred and Sixteenth Annual Installation of Officers. Very cool ceremony, um, very nice dinner afterwards, and congratulations to them, and thank you for all you do for our community. And then on Monday, January thirteenth, I also attended the grand opening of Castle and Crown. It's very cute. If you have little ones that are interested in fantasy, princesses, all things magic, I suggest you look them up. And that was my two pages long worth of the last week. All right, now is the time for the introduction of additional agenda items. Do the members of council have any additional items? Councilor Mullins?
I actually do. Um, usually I don't give any extra assignments, but tonight I have a few things going on. So one, um, unrelated to fire, um, provide staff report with information on all new laws that enacted in twenty twenty-five. There's quite a bit of laws that, um, have been, um, adopted or approved. I think it would be helpful to hear or see how are they going to affect our community and affects us here in the city, so if we can have that.
If I could just clarify, so you would like a memo related to laws, new laws pertaining to the city of Burbank?
Yes.
That may with, that's relevant to residents and community members.
Correct. Like I mentioned today, there were three different laws that would affect us here with green energy and all that stuff, so it'd be helpful to have that. And, and I guess when you send us the memo, but I don't know if there is a possibility to put those laws on our website somehow, um, if it pertains to us, because there's, sometime there's confusion, is this, something was passed here in the city? Is it affecting us? I don't know. Something maybe think about and when you, when it's put together to see if we can put it on our website.
Yeah, we'll consider the staff report, maybe translate that into a one-pager summary.
Yeah, if it makes sense to make it available. Thank you. The other thing I wanted to add, well, three, three things, and maybe we can combine them, but, um, the idea of having, and Mr. City Attorney, allow me, please, an explanation, otherwise the city manager is not going to know what I'm talking about.
You just have to be careful not to advocate for items. You're just requesting items to be on future agenda.
So I think with the recent fire, uh, what I'd like to see is we have a community safety workshop, uh, that would aim to evaluating our current preparation, our response to emergencies such as wind, fire, uh, and the goal of the shop is to gather community members, local leaders, emergency response.
So this would have to be a first-step report because we can't get work direction from a single council member.
Sure.
A community workshop could be a very big event, so we need a majority direction on that.
And, and I think we, we can either maybe discuss whether it's a study session or a workshop to answer a lot of the concerns out in the community or maybe educate. The second item is a report on our fuel management program, and that's for fire department, to see, um, if in fact are we continuing to do fuel management, we haven't been doing it? Are we thinking about doing it?
When you say fuel management?
It's for, for the fire.
Okay.
For the hills.
Like brush clearance or?
Yeah, so it's a whole management program. It's typically referred to as fuel management.
Okay.
Thank you. Lastly, I promise, it's, um, at a certain point, maybe during budget discussion, staffing level for fire, um, in the, in the sense of how many firefighters, uh, we are required to have, and can we expand that from the three that we currently have to four? So it's something that we can take a look at during our budget discussion. Thank you.
All right, anybody else? Councilor Anthony?
I'd like a first-step report on the approximate number of city or, or school district employees that are displaced by the fire, and make it real approximate. It doesn't have to be exact. I'd really love to see if we can get that back in two weeks. Just a super simple, hey, we have this many people.
Can we just send you an email?
Yeah?
Yeah.
Well, because what I'd like to do is... I'd like to have a discussion about a possible motel subsidy, but you know what?
Okay, so that, that's a first-step report.
That'd be a first.
And probably a budget item. I, I, I won't speak for the city manager.
Right, no, I understand.
Why don't we start with getting you the information?
Give me the info. Give me the info first. Yeah, just send me a memo.
And not to discuss the item, but just, it would also be contingent on when the school district can get you that information.
Right, okay, yeah, good point. Thank you.
Okay, no one else. I have one item, Mr. City Manager. I would like, when possible and when, when it's reasonable, a complete analysis on the damage to, to the city from the recent weather events. Complete number of trees down, that were down, downed power lines, power outages, and a cost analysis of the damage, and anything else you feel is pertinent for us to know in hindsight. What FEMA aid are we applying to? What else is going on? I would, I would love a complete analysis. I think that's also going to inform us as we prepare for future, um, potential situations. Anything else? No. Okay. City manager is begging us to, to cut the line here. All right, everybody. Now we adjourn the meeting and note that council will have a special meeting on Thursday, January twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, at two PM in the Community Services Building for a goal-setting meeting. The next regularly scheduled joint council meeting will be on Tuesday, January twenty-eighth, in the Council Chamber, two seven five East Olive Avenue, second floor. Thank you and good morning, Burbank.